Good morning. Want to call into session the October 25th, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and we want to thank all who've joined us this morning. I know we have a number of speakers, both those who've signed up off agenda and also to address some of the items on the agenda. But before we get into that, we're going to make some announcements and call the roll, establish a quorum, do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Flo will read some announcements into the record, and then we'll go into our morning hearing. So with that, Flo, interview.
Hey, good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U First Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 28th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask or shield, is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters. When the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your public comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item, and you may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo. With that, Supervisor Kennedy, would you please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we do have a number of off-agenda speakers. Flo, you want to kind of help walk through this. I know we had a request to actually do an off-agenda presentation. I think we do have some folks in chambers that have signed up, so we'll take, except we'll take those first, and then we'll go to the presentation that was made a request that's on the agenda.
That sounds good.
All right. Okay, so with that, I'm going to take these in the order they were handed to me, and these are off-agenda requests to speak. And so first I have Ryan Harris, followed by Lee Carror, and then Sharon Duchessy. Good morning, Ryan.
Hello, good morning. I had taken some time off for my birthday, so I'm back.
Happy birthday.
Hey, thank you. And actually, since you said happy birthday, you know I've been here in the past, right?
Yeah.
I've been here because Ann Edwards disciplined me for foolish things such as saying happy birthday. She said that was not work-related to do so, and she disciplined me for saying happy birthday. And here you're doing it during county time, and I was a Sacramento County employee. When I brought it up to her and my coworkers, that I apologize for if I did get them in trouble, they said, "That's ridiculous," because Ann Edwards sent them a happy birthday email, and they brought it to me and showed me. Ann Edwards then disciplined me again when I brought that up to her, asking why, and was told, "Don't worry about it." And Ann Edwards was now promoted to this position over here. You'll see her name. So it must be really serious not to tell people happy birthday during county time, because I was disciplined two times for it as a county employee. Yet you guys are up here as county employees telling me happy birthday, which I'm grateful for, don't get me wrong, because the joy that that word or two words bring to people can change their day at times. But it now hurts my day because I'm torn between enjoying that comment and being told that I shouldn't have never said that comment, and you guys are doing that to me. Nonetheless, we don't have, we have a lot of people in here, so I don't know if I can turn all the way around, but I'm going to step over here to talk to you guys a bit. I don't have much time. My name is Ryan. I'm so glad that you guys are here. I'm glad you guys are in this community. I come here almost every meeting that they have. I didn't miss a couple because of my birthday, but I do come here almost every meeting that they had. I encourage you guys to continue to come because this is where a lot of decisions are made that impact our community, impact our kids, impact our future generations, such as military weapons. I don't know if you guys heard about those being approved, but the military weapons were approved to use. Now, I was here in the meeting when they first requested it, and he requested it and said, "I don't know how to use them. I don't know why we use them. I don't understand how to use them." So I don't understand how you could request for a weapon and not know how to use it. Now, they did approve the weapon. The Board said they don't know about them either. This is a little off agenda. I didn't plan on this, but since there are a lot of people in here, there rarely is nobody in here, which is why these things are able to get approved. But again, I'm just thinking, because they did approve it, it's been about six months. The Board said that they don't know about the military weapons. Sheriff's Department said they don't know. So my question is, in six months, how did you both educate yourself enough about weapons? I could see you educating yourself to know, but then how did they also educate theirself to know and to use in that same amount of time? That just doesn't add up to me. That doesn't make sense to me at all. And maybe they'll have some answers for you. I'm out of time. They're pretty strict on that. Have a good one, you guys.
Okay, next, Lee. Is it Lecardio? L-E-C-A-R-R-O-R-E-B? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
It's not just for occasion.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to say, I don't know who this is, the math thing or the social distancing, but I think it should be in effect until at least 2024. And out on the streets is very hard for people. You can see a fight go on. Nobody reports it. It's very bad out there. Very bad. And me, myself, and I, I kind of went out there just to see what's out there. It's bad. Back years today, no schooling, this thing with the COVID, had relaxed law, schooling from kindergarten on up, a lot of youth, black, white, Hispanic, Chinese, all of them, they don't know how to read, write, or rhythm take. And it's bad. And what they don't have is going to cost us, as a cashier, it's going to cost us as a storeperson or owner of the store. It's going to cost us in the long run. It's also going to cost us also to what they don't have, they're going to steal. They're a five finger discount, either from the store or somebody outside that store, or from a car, parking lot, or that where cars or guns. Now, these gentlemen that own stores, people that are walking on the streets, even people that are driving, they'll see the crime happen, but they won't report it. And when they do, it's usually too late. You just cornered the office. I don't have anything I can say. It's our responsibility here, now, and forever, and the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you for being here. Thanks for coming this morning.
It is our job.
Okay. All right, next Sharon, and Sharon be followed by Brenda Garner. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having us here today. I really appreciate it. My name is Sharon Duchessy. I'm an E-Board member for SEIU 2015, and I'm also a home care provider since 2009. My story is pretty much similar to a lot of us. I, previously before I was a home care worker, I was a loan processor, and I was making almost $6,000 a month. At that time, I had to make the decision on whether or not I wanted to take care of my significant other or leave him and keep on with my career. I decided I didn't want to do that. I did not want him to be on his own and not have anybody to help take care of him. Since then, I have been taking care of him. We've been through a long process. He just had a major back surgery, so he's relearning how to walk, which he would not have been able to do if I wasn't here or there wasn't someone else that was here to take care of him. I do appreciate the state, the county, and the federal government paying us to help take care of these individuals so we can keep them out of facilities and keep costs down, which is what we do. But also, as a home care worker, we provide income to our counties. We provide a lot of income to our counties, because there's almost 5,000, I'm sorry, 6,000?
27,000.
27,000, sorry. I'm new to Sacramento County. 27,000 members in, home care workers in Sacramento County. We are going to be going into bargaining this December. We're asking for your support in getting the increases that we need and that we really need right now, especially with the way inflation's affecting us. I wanted to put a couple of costs out there for cost of living. Right now, we all know, gas, $5 to $6 a gallon. Two things that are in season right now that I would love to buy, that I can't afford to buy right now: apples, $2 each. Mandarins, $6 for a small bag. These are things I can get periodically. I cannot afford to get it all the time. Toilet paper, almost $20. Iceberg lettuce, just one head of lettuce, is $2.69. And these are all things I just pulled up this morning to make sure that my costs were the same. Bread, $5 a loaf. Milk, $5 a gallon. With these costs increased and what we're paid, it's really difficult to buy fresh fruits and vegetables, especially for those of us that live with our provider, with our recipients, because we have to be mindful of their diet. My client has very specific dietary needs, and it's very difficult to buy fresh fruits and vegetables. I'm having to really look at alternatives slash frozen foods, frozen foods or canned foods, which are not good for them. And I do speak to nutritionists often, at least twice a year, on alternatives that we can do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, next Brenda Garner, followed by Andrea Noble, followed by Jesus Figueroa Cocho.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Brenda Garner, VP for Region 4. I'm an executive board member and also a home care provider. I come here this morning to talk about the poverty that home care providers are. Can I please pull this down?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
I come here this morning to, thank you. I come here this morning to talk about the poverty for home care providers. It's time now for, to take a look at the wage increase for home care providers. As my co-member said, everything is getting totally expensive, and just living off of $16 is not going to do it. Right now, I am forced to take public transportation due to the fact that my vehicle is broken down. But nevertheless, $20 an hour would just about lift us out of poverty. And so I come here to say, protect us, pay us, and respect us as home care providers. And I just want to leave a little note with each and every one of you all, the Board of Supervisors. As you go into the supermarket, think about us, for as our vegetables, for as our personal hygiene, for as our personal meats, produce. Think how we feel as home care providers. We are barely sustaining. We need $20 and a livable wage. And I want to say that I am a home care provider, and I'm proud to represent over 30,000 home care providers. Let me get the numbers straight. Over 40,000 home care providers here in Sacramento and all across California. And my voice is for them to say, respect us, protect us, and pay us. And I want to say happy holidays to each and every one of you all. We will be back. We will be back, and bargaining is coming up, and we want a fair contract, and we deserve it. And each and one of you all know that each time you go to the pump, think about us as home care providers. Thank you very much, and happy holiday.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, next Andrea, followed by Jesus. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Andrea Noble. I'm an IHSS provider. I've been taking care of an elderly woman for, she's 83. I've been taking care of her for the last 14 years. She has diabetes, depression, overweight, and high blood pressure. In March of this year, she fell and broke a part of a bone in her foot. She had to go to the hospital because I could not lift her. She had to be there for a week, and then after that, three weeks at the nursing home. Well, finally, she got her cast on, and then after they put her cast on, they said, "Oh, well, Saturday she's going to be at your house." I said, "Why?" The doctor said that she was supposed to be staying there for another three weeks until the cast was off. Well, her insurance ran out, and so now we're dealing with it. She's better. She's walking. We had to have people come and help her because I was trying my best. And then the next thing you know, she's getting older, her strength's going. She's losing her eyesight in the last year. She's legally blind. It's harder for her because she was able to do things, get around on her scooter, dress herself, do other things. Now I'm doing all that. And this is taking, and then the last couple of years of COVID and being stuck in the house has taken a toll on all of us, and not knowing what was going on, what was happening. Now here comes inflation. Everything's going up, your rent, your food, definitely gas. You, you, you go to the store to buy something that you normally would do, and now you have to pay more. You pay $1, $2 more, sometimes $3. Everything's going up. This is ridiculous. And how are we supposed to take care of these elderly people and children and not survive ourselves? Plus, how is fast food workers making more money than we are when we're taking care of elderly and people? This is wrong. This is wrong for just fast food workers to make more than us, and we're keeping the state not paying for all these nursing homes where these people could be going into. Thank you.
Thank you. So Jesus, then followed by Rachel Gonzalez, followed by Alicia Lee.
Good morning. My name is Jesus Figueroa Cocho. Thank you very much for all the body for Sacramento County Board for giving us this opportunity here. So my name is Jesus. I'm a steward for my, I'm a nursing home worker. Before, I used to be an IHSS worker also. So I'm a steward in my facility, and I'm also in, I'm an E-Board for Region 4. So all our, all of us, we're here today talking about that we need more wage, okay? California's, the living is just outrageous. For, everybody's talking about gas, but I'm going to touch about rent. For our income, okay, I have to work sometime. I have to take care of 30 patients a night. Do you mind taking care of 30 patients a night? That when they are on the lights, they will be falling. You know, in the middle of the pandemic, that was the most difficult moment, but we stood there because the love for these people, because we take care of them, because we there for them. But we want to be compensated for our work, because your mind and soul and spirit is all together for the love for the patients. If you have, if you rent an apartment complex nowadays in California and Sacramento, they expect you to pay the three times the amount of your rent. Say, if we don't, we don't get a higher wage, so we, we are mandated to go to work eight hours or 16 hours or live under the breach, because our income, it cannot come with a three times the amount of rent for two-bedroom apartments. I'm a mother, and I'm an auntie, I'm a wife. My son isn't in school. I have to work 16 hours every day, and then plus, I have to do second job in order to pay for my rent and pay for my shower rent and school, because half of the application applied for, they say, "No, he does not qualify for that because you make too much money." When you put the money together, no, I'm not. Half of the time, I have to borrow money to pay for my gas to get to work. I work in Auburn, living in California, Sacramento. So please, respect us, pay us. Please think about the wages, because we need to give a quality care for our patients. And thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next Rachel Gonzalez, and then Alicia Lee, and then Alvinia Scott. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Gonzalez. I am also on the E-Board at SEIU Local 2015. I am an IHSS care provider, and I want to start by saying what I'm grateful for first. What I'm grateful for is the fact that California is one of three states in the Union that offers me, as a parent, the opportunity to care for my disabled daughter. My daughter has Down Syndrome. If she were born in the 50s or the 40s or the 30s, I would have been told to institutionalize her and walk away. But today, because of this program, I'm allowed to stay home and care for my daughter. She has my love, and that, to me, is a great blessing. However, the drawbacks of that are that I'm saving you all money, but you're not helping me. And I have lived my life for the last 30 years voting for people like you all, who have not had my best interests at heart. I've watched our political system side with corporation over individual. And at this level of politics, I feel that you are all obligated to work for me. You represent me. You represent my community, and in my community, we have tents on the streets. In my community, we have tents on the streets. Everywhere we look, tents on the streets, because people cannot afford to pay rent. They're not not trying. We're not lazy. Productivity has grown 3.5 times that wages have increased. 3.5 times. A butcher in 1978 made $27 an hour. A butcher in 2022 makes $27 an hour. There's a problem there. Corporate profits are at an all-time high right now. They're making money off of us paying $400 to drive my daughter to and from school because she has social anxiety and can't take the school bus. So I have to drive her. $400 used to be a car payment. I paid my car off. I should catch a break. I'm still paying my car off. And we're asking for your help. We're asking for your help. We're asking for you to do for us what we cannot do for ourselves, advocate for us, fight for us, give us a quality of life. We'll give back to you. It's been proven time and time again. The middle class is what makes this country strong, and we're decimating it. We're going to crack under that pressure, ladies and gentlemen. We've got to do something. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
My name is Alicia Lee. I'm here from SEIU. I am also a part of the Electoral Board on SEIU, and I've heard all my fellow sisters and brothers speak this morning. I just want to say that I hope you guys have an open ear and you're actually really listening, because it is very hard out here to survive. Like you say, you know, orange is the new black, you know, rent, gas is the new rent, and it's very, very hard. Now, I am a professional that had to quit my job to take care of my client. So I took a very big hit, just like Sharon DeGussi. We took hits, you know, and I still perform all those duties with my client that I am being underpaid for. I'm not asking for a miracle today, but I am asking you guys to open your hearts and understand what we are going through. Fast food workers should definitely not be getting paid more money to handle food when we are handling lives. So today, I come here with a very generous heart, just, you know, want to come before we start the bargaining and ask that you guys understand our struggle. I would really appreciate that, and so would all of my fellow brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay, Alvinia, then she's followed by Reverend Dr. Pamela Anderson, and then LaJoyce Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Alvinia Scott, and today I just want to speak on behalf of my sister, who I am a home caregiver for. You need to understand, when you're taking care of a client, family members, it's more than eight hours. My life is generated completely around her. She had a stroke, many, four or five heart attacks. She's young. I'm constantly at the doctors, week after week. It's not just periodically. I'm constantly running behind her. We need to understand, we need more benefits that's been provided to us. It's more than $20 we really need. 20 is just probably going to help a little bit, but you guys understand, the cost of living is ridiculous now. The cost of food, everything around us is more than what we can manage. We need to get more. We need to have retirement. We need to have better benefits, you know, regardless if it's a client or a loved one. It's a lot of work. I always say, in my case, it's mental and physical. Where is my need? Who's thinking about me? No one seems to be thinking about us, but you expect us to go out here and help take care of others. We do it out of love. Certainly, I do. I do it out of love. But we need to understand, what we're asking for is really very minimal. We need much more, and we need to be thought about. That's all I want to say today. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good morning. Thank you for being here and for listening. We really appreciate it. My name is Reverend Dr. Pamela Anderson, and I am with the Poor People's Campaign for the State of California and for here in Sacramento. One of the things that happened with the pandemic, when we really think about it, is that it really lifted the reality of what's going on, because we would call people low-wage workers, and then we just shifted that language to essential workers. These are still low-wage workers, also in, really in poverty. We talk about how unemployment is up, but the question is, is it a living wage? It is $15 federal minimum wage, and so $15 can go way farther in Kansas, but it cannot in the state of California. In California, in 2019, really, the minimum wage needed to be $30.68. That was in 2019, but it is different today, especially with gas being close to $7 a gallon. And here we have $16 an hour. So let's just do the math. It's real simple. That comes out to $2,560. Like, seriously, can anybody live on $2,560 a month unless, somebody wants to correct me on my math. And so when I looked at, here in Sacramento, it is minimally $1,600 for a one-bedroom apartment. So that means less than $1,000 to live on. So if that's just one person, imagine if you have children, family. As some of our colleagues have said, some of that might have disabilities or health issues, and just the price of everything going up. So I've met people in this campaign who've needed to make, have two to three jobs in order just to survive. That's just morally wrong. We really need to think about this. And so one of the things that we really need to look at is, there is no lack. There is enough. There really is enough. The question is, where it really comes down to, is that the only thing that's lacking is political will. So we're asking for you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Reverend Anderson. Okay, so next is LaJoyce, right? Okay. And then the last one I have under this is... And then the last one I have under this would be Sherri Raines. If there are others here on SEIU who want to speak on this particular item, please make sure that Lydia gets a copy of the speaker request form. Good morning.
Okay. Good morning, you guys. My name is LaJoyce Smith. I want to start off by saying, this is my first year actually doing IHSS, but before that, I've been in the nursing field for some years now. I've worked in facilities, home care, rehab. I have the passion in the heart. It's a shame that we would even have to be here asking for a higher pay. It's just common sense knowing that we put up with a lot and we do a lot for these patients. As I always say, as I was asked, why do I like doing this type of work? I love it, I enjoy it. When we come in this world, we come in this world as babies and unfortunately, that's just how we leave. Pretty soon, we are all getting up there in age and we're going to be taking care of you guys. I've seen a lot, even working in facilities, having these older people there where they'll have their lights on for a long time, nobody's coming to them, they're getting abused versus in home care, you know what I'm saying? Like we're really, we can take our time with them. Like I said, I love what we do. I feel like we should get paid more, $20, just like my fellow colleague said, with the rent, the gas, it's ridiculous. I am CNA certified, CPR certified, but I am working in this industry because it is different from working in facilities. Again, like I said, I love what I do. Pretty soon here, I will see you guys, you know what I'm saying? And I will be taking care of you guys. And just, and I want you guys to think of this. You guys probably have grandmas, mothers, aunties, sisters that's in those facilities or even in home care. I know you guys will want people like us where we showing them love, nurturing, cherishing them, all that. That matters. I want you guys to really think about that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, LaJoyce.
Okay. So Sherri's the last one. I've signed up under the IHSS items, so if there are others that wish to address it, this would be the time to get your speaker form and otherwise Sherri, you'll be the closer this morning.
Thank you. I didn't even know this was on topic today or being talked about. I just happened to be here for something else. So I actually want to speak to the other side of the issue. I have, my sister is an adult developmentally disabled person and we've used IHSS services in the past and we just couldn't find anybody to do that work. I called many, many people and the bottom line was, their answer was, it's just not worth it. For the amount of work that they had to do, the type of work, it just wasn't worth it. They could make more money elsewhere. And so what we ended up doing is we had to put her in a facility, we had to put her in a care home, not a facility. It's a beautiful home, but that wasn't our choice. We had to do that because there wasn't another option. We couldn't find people that were willing to do the work. This work is so important. Caring for our loved ones is what it's all about. It's tender work. We need compassionate, qualified people. We need to honor the work that they do. We need to honor our family members, our loved ones, and we need to pay them what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Okay. Thank you to certainly all of our IHSS workers for your comments this morning. And with that, we're going to continue with our off agendas speakers. We do have a presentation in off agenda and again, you're welcome to stay with us and again, thank you for your, for your work and efforts and for your messages this morning. All right. So we do have on off agenda, we have a presentation that was requested, so we, I'll get 15 minutes on the clock. Patrick, Supervisor Kennedy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before, I take it this is about voting?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. You know, it was interesting, the, the timing, that there was a story on NPR this morning about the harassment that voting officials are facing throughout the country and to the point where they feel completely demoralized doing what's essentially very, very important work for our democracy. And by continuing to perpetuate myths and conspiracies, we just continue to undermine what I think that everybody up here would agree is, is good of a voter registrar's office staff, I put them up against anybody in the nation. And, and we've seen it, it hasn't always been that way. But, but I just feel like having a presentation like this at this time is unfortunate and I do have another matter I need to attend to and I will return.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay. So with that, we're going to go ahead and, okay, please. All right. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and Deborah Caparasso was the party who requested the 15 minutes, actually requested more than that, but 15 minutes is our board rule, so I got that up on the, on the screen. I know you sent some, and Deborah, you did send some information to us in advance, so we do have that and I'll let you go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll start the clock. So are you going to be the only presenter or are there others that are going to present?
There are other presenters, but they're off agenda. They're going to just...
Oh, okay. On item 16, is that where they signed up for? Right, speakers on item 16? Or they're off agenda, they've signed up?
They're, right. I, I think I'm the only one that's signed up and you put me on the agenda.
Yeah, to do the presentation, that's fine. Okay. Because again, I would just, I would, you know, you're able to do that if there were others, but okay. So with that then, Deborah, I'll let you introduce yourself and, and I'll start the clock.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Deborah Caparasso and I'm here to talk to you about election integrity. So the topic agendas is going to be the Dominion hardware and software, the DMV process for voter registration, California voting laws and California's privacy. So I want to preface this by saying, this is nonpartisan. This is telling, asking you to understand that every vote needs to count, whether they're Republican, doesn't matter. It applies to everyone, all of your constituents. And I think everybody would agree that we want our vote to count. So over the last two years, there have been quite a lot of forensic audits throughout the US and the Dominion system are, as with any other computer system, they are very open to hackability and it has been proven that within minutes, the Dominion system can be hacked. Not only that, that when the machines are not connected to the local networks, they can be hacked wirelessly. And the Secretary of State and the vendors have the passwords to the Dominion system. The Dominion system also allows non-standard paper to be used. So I have actually witnessed on TV, somebody taking ballots and just running them through and then when that stack was done, they took the same stack and ran them through again. There's no way to stop that from happening. So USB drives are also, you can easily put a USB drive in and do whatever you want. So the bottom line on the Dominion system is, I understand that the contract was up in August, is that accurate? That's what the agenda said.
Okay. So you're talking about item 16, so we can, I think folks have, we'll pull that off the consent calendar here in a moment, Deborah, so if that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah. So we can get to that. I've got to, you posed a question, we certainly can respond, but I think we'll go ahead and let you make your presentation and...
Okay. Okay. So the bottom line is, we want to eliminate the fraud that is made available via the computer, which is the Dominion system, computer and software, the hardware and software. So the voting process includes multiple vulnerabilities and it doesn't just stop at the Dominion systems, the computer hackable. The DMV process for voter registration, so we, as a result of a FOIA letter to the DMV, we asked if they validate whether a person coming to the DMV and getting a driver's license or a vote, a regular ID, California ID, and they basically said, there is no requirement for the department to collect birthplace information or transmit such data to the California Secretary of State and it does not do so. So it's very clear and DMV doesn't validate whether a person is registering to vote, is a US citizen. So when you go to the US, I'm sorry, when you go to the Secretary of State's website, it says eligible California residents will be able to use the website to complete and an online voter registration application, just as they can today. As part of the voter registration process, VoteCal will take the information submitted and conduct a check to see if the applicant has a signature on file at the DMV. That's beyond me. How do you validate that a person can register to vote and that they're a citizen by going to the DMV to verify they have a signature on file? You know, I've been in high tech for 20 years. My job was operations, building programs, the process part of a successful program and this just sent up red flags. So it really told me that there is no validation whether a person is a US citizen. So I take it to the next, so it's federal and state law that you must be a US citizen to vote and yet we don't verify citizenship. There is no accountability, there is no validation and basically the Secretary of State's website says, the person registering to vote is not liable. The secretary, and the Secretary of State takes no responsibility for validating whether a person is a US citizen. So I go to 2107, Section 2, standards of proof of residency or identity when proof is required. This section shall be liberally construed to permit voters and new registrants to cast a regular ballot. Any doubt, sorry, any doubt as to the sufficiency of proof or a document presented shall be resolved in favor of permitting the voter or new registrant to cast a regular vote. There is no responsibility taken by the Secretary of State to validate citizenship. What this does is it dilutes our vote. It takes away what we have the right to do as a US citizen. Okay. So additional voter issues, deceased individuals remain on the registers, people who have moved out of California still continue to get ballots, homeless people are rounded up to vote, they have no permanent address, but they're allowed to use street corners or park addresses and no process to assure that they are a US citizen. What really set some red flags for me is when we welcomed in 6,000 Afghanistans into 2021. That's awesome, but I have no doubt that they were told or they were, they understood that in order to drive in California, you have to get a driver's license. I have no doubt that there was no process in place to validate whether they were a US citizen. Okay. So, and when you take a broken process and then put a new bill or new rules in through that broken process, you're going to get the same results. So the new bill that Governor Newsom just signed was to allow non-citizens to obtain state IDs. So that, with that being said, and the fact that no one verifies citizenship in California, that is just going to be a funnel to make it, make the situation worse. Okay. So I want to address this privacy issue. This is kind of really sends red flags because I've worked globally, I've negotiated global contracts, I've traveled globally and this was when the Connetec CEO was arrested October 4th. He was identified for sending 1.8 million poll worker information to China. Sacramento County does not use Connetec poll worker software. However, Sacramento County hires temporary employees to work the elections through temporary agencies. The preferred temporary agency is, uses a third party provider and they obtain temporary employees' information, which includes their IP address, audio, video of the applicant basically going through an online interview process. And at the end of the privacy statement that they provide to the, the potential election worker, they state that they send the information or make your information available to the EU, India, South Africa, UK, and also their third party vendors located in China, Hong Kong, Australia and many other countries. If this does not send up red flags to anyone in this room or in California, it should. And we need to understand the magnitude of sending our information or making our information available. Okay. So there's one more piece to this. So I recently, in the last couple of weeks, I went online to obtain a copy of a birth certificate. So I go onto the government website and I find a third party company called Vital Check. So I checked into Vital Check and they are owned by LexisNexis. Lexis, so I went to LexisNexis website, I looked at their privacy policy and it basically says, we share your personal information with our affiliates, service providers, data providers, government agencies, et cetera, et cetera. Then you look at the locations of their affiliates. They are also in Canada, South America, Europe, Africa and Asia. So this means that all of our information is available. Doesn't that bother you? Doesn't that send up a red alert to you? Why would China or why would Europe and Africa, why do they need a copy of or have available to them our birth records or our death records? Isn't that concerning? Why would California allow a third party company to make our information? Why would they sign a contract and allow that information to be distributed all over the world? I, I am dumbfounded and what I ask of you is, this is important. The Dominion systems are important, the fact that they are heavily hackable and easily manipulated, any computer is. So it's not just the Dominion system, any computer. We ask you to please represent your constituents and give them the opportunity to have their vote count. And in doing so, we want to, we want the Dominion system gone. We want the old fashioned one day voting, that will minimize any, that will minimize the opportunity for fraud. And we also ask that everybody cast a ballot and we manually count it. Other countries do it and they do it in one day. Everybody votes the same day, the counting's done and by the next day, they have a winner or somebody elected. We also want to ask you to hold the Secretary of State accountable for citizenship verification. Again, for your constituents having illegals when it's against the law, I'm not sure how many ways you put it's illegal, it's against the law for people who are not US citizens to vote because again, it minimizes our votes. So we are asking you to also, I am asking you to... So we are asking you to also, I am asking you to also investigate why our personal information is, why we partnered with a third-party vendor and distributes our information worldwide. So you have my information that I provided to you. I'm going to follow up with you by the end of today with my email. I'm also going to give you links to data integrity, all this, the fraud information that had gone on, to make it easily accessible to you. And I'm also going to ask for your feedback to me within maybe a week or two, how long it takes, to understand why our information is being sent all over, all over the world. Okay? Does that sound fair? Yeah, we really need to get a handle on this voter fraud, and our privacy is just out of control right now. If we don't stop it now, then when are we going to? And if we don't take this seriously now, we will become the country that those illegals are fleeing from. And that is so important to understand. So thank you, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I will email you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, those are the off-agenda, that's the presentation. Thank you, Deborah, for that. And with that, then, we'll go to our agenda, and we have folks sign up on some of the items that are on the consent calendar, so, yeah, Flo.
So if we could close the off-agenda, we do not have any public comments on the phone.
Nobody on the phone? Okay, all right, very good. Okay, so we'll close the off-agenda speakers for this morning, and then we're going to go to our consent calendar, and again, I know some of you signed up, so we'll call that item in just a moment, so, all right. We'll go, Flo, help us walk through the consent calendar.
Yes, I have some notes for you guys. So for your consent matters, items 2 through 61. For item 5, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 21.15 of the Sacramento County Code to change the method and presentation of the capital improvement plans to be consistent with current practice and to improve the process, waif full reading and continue to November 8th for adoption. For item 13, you're also introducing an ordinance to establish Juneteenth as a county holiday by amending Chapter 2.78.710 of the Sacramento County Code, authorize the department to continue negotiations with recognized employee organizations not yet having contract language addressing the Juneteenth holiday, inclusive of an increase in the holiday in lieu hours accrual from 4.3 to 4.6, and from 6.0 to 6.4 for firefighting employees assigned to a 24-hour scheduled per-pay period effective January 1, 2023, waiving reading on this and continuing to December 6th for adoption. I do need a motion to drop item 20. This was the approval of the Wildhawk North Unit 3 Final Map and Subdivision Improvement Agreement. There's some things that they're going to fix on that and bring that back at a future meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to drop item 20. Anybody want to speak on that? Anybody on the phone?
We do not.
Okay, all right, so that's the motion. Nothing further, please vote. Drop that, all right.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
And then for item 39, you're introducing an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending sections of Chapter 3.42 relating to administration fees for employment of off-duty sheriff's deputies and waiving reading, full reading, and continuing to November 8th for adoption. And then we do have two introductions of new hires by the county executive, items 9 and 10.
Okay, so, thank you for pointing those items out. Let me go to my colleagues first, so we do have speakers on item 16 and on item 43. So we'll go to those in a moment, but Mr. Kennedy, any items you want to, Mr. Desmond?
I'll answer them.
Okay, all right, we're going to, we're going to call that off the consent calendar in just a moment. I did want to ask a question on item 39, if I could. Do we have anybody here in the audience?
Item 39, oh, that's the ordinance that I introduced.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess my question that I want to pose, because again, we've seen some challenges with staffing, some of the various efforts in this county with, with on-duty officers, and we still have off-duty provisions, and those continue to be fulfilled. I've raised this issue during budget relative to contract authority for this board as relates to our homeless outreach team, but maybe some other divisions within the Sheriff's Department. And so, does, I guess my question is, is that we continue to allow folks to fulfill some of the off-duty commitments, which are contractual, to neighborhoods, to business districts, and so forth, and yet we struggle to fill positions, on-duty positions, for things that are very important to this community, this board speaks to on a regular basis. And I guess I'm curious, these are some administrative revisions, but I think it brings a question to mind, at least for this supervisor, as to, again, these are folks who, in the course of their normal duty, are able to then provide overtime services, I guess, not compensated as such, but basically the sheriff contracts for those services, and they're important, they're for neighborhood patrols, for business districts, for certain types of events, and yet we struggle to fill some positions. I find that to be a bit contrary, I guess, and so, and I know Eric's brought, come to the podium as well, but I, I guess I'm curious about how this comports, because, again, I've raised the issue, I know council's still looking at it as it relates to it, but we, we fulfill our contracts with other agencies, with the City of Ranch Cordova, with the Folsom Dam and Bureau Reclamation, and yet we struggle to fill positions that serve the people directly, particularly in the unincorporated area, but in the unincorporated cities as well, depending upon the nature of those services, and we still allow folks to, you know, we fulfill these contracts as well. Something's lacking there. And again, we don't administer the Sheriff's Department, but we certainly provide for the budget, and we provide for the ordinances that allow this type of work to be contracted for, and so, I guess I'm curious, because I'd like to have that conversation for this board, and I know that folks, you know, were looking at it, you took it seriously when you had, you had the discussion during budget and, and some of the challenges we've had over the last several months in filling positions, and yet we, we always fulfill the contracts, and so that's why I suggested that we got a contract with ourselves, to make sure that things that we think are important, that we both have the budgetary authority over and the position control over, those are the only two controls we have in the Sheriff's Department, and yet we know we struggle in some of those areas where we want to provide services to some of the communities that we represent. And so I guess I pose that as a question, as we have this item, because it just kind of brings a front and center for me, so, I don't, Eric, if you have one response, so.
I do. Chair, Board, Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive with Public Safety and Justice. We've been working with county council on that exact question that has come up, which, as summarized by you chair, is can we contract with ourselves, essentially, because as, in this item specific number 39, it's about outside entities contracting with deputies, and when the board provides funding for certain services, can we hold them to the same contracts language that we do in outside entity contracts? We're actually looking at and plan to address that through possible options, perhaps MOUs or other things, as we enter into the new budget cycle, as well as enter into new contracts, for example, for additional layers of security here within our buildings. So we are working with county council on what that will look like as these additional issues come up.
Okay, well, I thank you for this, because this sets the fee schedule, too, for use of county equipment in the off-duty capacity, serving communities who choose to contract for those services, including vehicles, and I guess other equipment, and motorcycles and so forth, and so, again, I just, it really, again, kind of brings some focus to that. I know we didn't come up in briefing the other day, but as I thought about this, it seemed appropriate to address it. Supervisor Desmond, you had one to weigh in.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing this up, because I also didn't, didn't think about it when I was going through the, through the briefing, but I'm glad you brought it up, because it does highlight it again, and I, and I know we were waiting for kind of a report back on the status of this. I mean, I think it's, it's extremely important for this board and our constituents in the unincorporated area to be able to have the same expectation of any, anyone else who's contracting with the Sheriff's Department for specific services. And so I would just, again, underscore how, what an important issue that is for me, and I know, Eric, you're keenly aware of the distinction between the hot officers, for instance, and their deployment in the unincorporated area versus the deployment of hot officers in a contract city in the county. And, and the contract city, the staffing is always there, it's always full, whereas in the unincorporated area, those officers that this board has specifically funded are pulled back. So I'm very eager to find out maybe what some options are that we have going forward. Thank you.
I guess, maybe to simply boil it down, I've already kind of given my comments, but if by contract, they jump to the front of the line, so to speak, and those always get the first call, then I think it requires us, again, not that we wouldn't contract, those are important services to people that we represent holistically in this county and for other things that supplement law enforcement activities for protection of public facilities like Folsom Dam. But I, but I think that if that's the case, if those contracts always get first in line, then I think that it requires some additional scrutiny when it comes to contracting, because those contracts require this board's approval. They're under the authority of the sheriff, which we do not have that authority to deploy folks within the department, but we're the ones, we, the board, ultimately are approving those contracts. And if that always gives a first in place, first in line, then I think that raises a serious issue, particularly in light of the experience, and I have to speak from my experience as a member of this board, over many years, to maybe something that is a bit backwards in, in the sense, because it leaves us, you know, basically bare at times to respond to, you know, the unincorporated area, but maybe to even other needs within the context of what's properly the authority of the sheriff, but also authorities that, because we do have, again, I failed to mention, we have position control, we have budget authority, and we have contract authority if it's not delegated. And so those are three areas where, and I think that this, you know, this board needs to keep those in mind, because I think we've seen some challenges here, and they aren't just all current, we've had those in the past as well, so, anyway. I don't object to the item today, I think it's updating, again, some of the charges for the administrative aspects of off-duty sheriffs, but I think, again, I appreciate that the other issue will be visited by this board at a future date, so, okay. All right, since we don't have any other items, board members, then I'm going to go ahead and call item 16, which we do have speakers on, on the consent calendar, we have a number of speakers that have signed up, and we'll take those in order they were handed to me, and then we have a speaker on item 43 as well.
Okay, okay, I'm going to read 16 first. "authorize the registrar of voters to execute a revised and retroactive contract with the Secretary of State for voting system replacement in an amount up to $5,571,496 with a term of August 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024."
Okay, all right, and so we have a number of speakers, I'll take these, like I said, or they were given to me, so I have Rodney Seacrest, followed by Sheri Rain, and Mike Rogers.
Good morning, honorable board members and chair. My name's Rodney Seacrest, and I'm here today to voice my concerns about our elections in this state. The electoral process is the cornerstone of our self-governance and the preservation of our constitutional republic. We expect elections to be fair, honest, and transparent. In a constitutional republic, a form of government guaranteed to all U.S. citizens by the Guarantee Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, minority voices and rights are protected, all points of view are represented and heard. The results of a true election in a republic would be that every party puts forth a candidate in the general election, protecting those in the political minority and giving them equal representation on the general election ballot. In contrast, in a democracy, 51% of the people can tell the other 49% to sit down and shut up. 51% of the people can oppress, steal from, and trample all rights of the other 49%. In a democracy, minorities have no protection of their rights. Every element of California's electoral process is an honor system and does not require proof of any kind, identity, citizenship, eligibility, residence, et cetera, at any stage of the process. The doors are wide open for deceased, relocated, and non-citizen individuals on either list to be impersonated with ease, and their ballots be cast by anyone willing to do so. The chances of the perpetrator being caught are infinitesimally small. So many people today are asking themselves, "Why should I vote? Does it even matter?" It brings tears to my eyes and a deep sorrow that America would be brought by circumstances to ask those questions. The founders bequeath to all Americans the most amazing government document ever written by human hand, declaring that all living under its influence would be free from the tyranny of the majority, and self-determining through a democratic process of electing governmental Under that system, each and every vote matters immensely. But now there's a clear reason to suspect the democratic process, i.e. elections, is being subverted by a myriad of methods, and true elections are being replaced by selections. One issue on the front burner of concern currently is election technology, i.e. the machines. Anyone paying attention is becoming familiar with the term algorithm, a programming of the voting machines and/or tabulators to create a predetermined result. Current evidence strongly suggests that the algorithms do exist in at least some places, and that all the machines currently in use are at least capable of and vulnerable to electronic manipulation. It is understandable that the people would feel discouraged, defeated, angry, frustrated, hopeless, rebellious, and more.
Rodney, I need you to conclude, we have a lot of speakers, so if you could kind of wrap it up, please, I don't mean to cut you short, but...
Perfect timing. I urge you all to carefully consider what the remaining speakers have to present, and I thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Seacrest. Okay, Sheri, followed by Mike Rogers, followed by Jeanette Phelps.
Thank you for hearing me one more time.
Good morning, Sheri.
It is your responsibility, as you sit there on this Board of Supervisors, to provide for fair and safe elections for us. The Dominion software offers neither. The Dominion system is vulnerable to hacking and manipulation, as been shown by our speakers earlier, and by what's being shared in the news, and by arrest. It's not a safe system. Poll worker data has been exposed, making them vulnerable to who knows what. Who really knows what China intends to do with this information? I've heard even persons' banking information has become exposed. Who would have even thought that signing up to be a poll worker would put us in such a precarious position? This is in no way a safe environment. It is time to protect your constituents. We need a system that is transparent. This is not a partisan issue, this affects each and every one of us. The current system threatens everyone. Please, please, vote no on the Dominion contract. It is time to return election integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Good morning. My name is Michael Rogers, I was born and raised here in Sacramento, and, you know, confidence is a precious thing. When you lack confidence, bad things can happen. If you have, if you lose confidence in your money, there can be a run on the bank, and the whole system can collapse. If you lose confidence in your votes, well then, what collapses then? Your government starts to collapse. The laws that are implemented by those governments start to collapse. Our entire republic, our democratic republic, is founded on the sanctity and the honor of our individual votes as citizens of this United States of America and the state of California. And while I've heard lots of evidence about these voting machines having compromised technical problems, that that can be manipulated by others, and I'm no computer expert, I don't know, but I know that I'm concerned about this. Whether it's true or not, there is now a very large perception in our general population that these elections are rigged, they're not fair, they're being called. And whether that is true or not, now sort of becomes immaterial, just like, well, if you go to the bank, is there enough money there for you to get it out? Well, no, there's not, but as long as we don't all go asking for it, the system continues to go. We're getting it to the point where this system is going to get unstable and start to fail. People will lose confidence in you, they'll lose confidence in our government, they'll lose confidence in our laws, and this is untenable to our nation, to our state, to our people. We're sovereigns. We deserve honest, fair... We deserve honest, fair elections. And so I urge you all to vote no on these machines because they're opaque. We can't see in them. And because of that, our confidence is really being eroded, and without confidence, we start to lose faith, faith in our nation and each other. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Supervisor Frost, did you want to make a comment or get some clarification before we take the next...
I just wanted to clarify that this item 16 is not extending the Dominion contract. It's accepting grant funds, additional grant funds, that our county had already been actually awarded part of the funds. This is just increasing that award. This is not a renewal of the Dominion contract, to my understanding. I want to clarify that and make sure I'm understanding it correctly.
Okay.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. This is not the renewal of the Dominion contract. This is a grant from the State of California Secretary of State for the purchase of a variety of different kinds of equipment. We factored this grant that we knew we were going to receive in the June budget, and the equipment has been purchased. We do purchase nothing but certified equipment, although the staff report does acknowledge that you're allowed to purchase conditionally certified equipment. Sacramento County does not purchase conditionally certified equipment, but this is not the Dominion contract.
Should I save other comments for later, or can I...
Well, you're welcome to make comments. Anytime. We still have a number of speakers, but if you want to...
I'll just let, we'll go ahead, and then I'll ask further later.
All right, very good. Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to be in the queue to speak first when the speakers are done on this end.
Okay, all right. I would just note, I think it's important because, again, we've seen some of the correspondence that was obviously referenced in the off-agenda item presentation. And I guess, to be clear, that the Dominion contract is being referenced here is, was a five-year contract, and that there was delegated authority. Ann, would you, because I could think, again, there was a reference in some of the communication I saw that this was going to come back to the board in January of 2023, and I think it just, and it's being transparent and in full disclosure here, I believe that contract with the delegate authority had a two-year extension, and from, it had three years, but then were two years additional. Is that correct?
So the original contract was for five years, and it allowed for three additional one-year extensions. So the current contract does, in fact, expire in January of 2023, and we are in the process right now of renewing it to extend it to January of 2024.
Okay.
And that authority was delegated to the department.
Okay, so it doesn't require board...
It does not require coming back to the board until after the third one-year extension.
Which would be?
That, I'm not sure. 2026.
Okay, all right. So I want people to know that before we leave the chambers today. So, anyway, important information. So, all right, let's go back to our speakers then, and we have Jeanette Felts, followed by Rhonda De La Cruz, followed by Christine Rich.
After the explanation of what we're voting on, you are still voting to allocate more of our tax dollars into systems that we don't have confidence in. So we're not looking to put more money into the problem.
We want to see those funds diverted to other areas of concern that are real concern to citizens. I would like the board to recognize that the continued use of Dominion machines in our elections compounds and continues the lack of voter confidence. I have spoken to many candidates, and all of them facing the problem of low voter turnout, and citizens who feel that their vote won't count. Voters feel disenfranchised, and that is not acceptable. I know that the talking point right now is that right-wing extremists who are questioning the integrity of our elections. Technology does have its benefits, like the magic of video. Prior to 2020, there was video after video of Democrat leaders, including Hillary Clinton and Vice President Harris, openly stating in hearings that these machines are not only vulnerable, but that they're compromised. We need to move forward in a way that reassures citizens, registered voters in this county, that their vote for the people they want representing them matters, that it is valued, and that their vote will be counted and not be manipulated by software controlled by people who do not have their best interest in mind. For those that would argue that we simply cannot get the job done without the machines, that's simply not true. Not only do I believe that the public would welcome the opportunity to improve the integrity of our elections, I believe they would jump at the chance. I would like to see us move forward to a system that brings confidence back to our elections. We have a civic duty to serve on a jury when our name is randomly selected. Maybe we can move toward a similar system for our elections. What I do know is we can't continue to do what we have done and continue to ignore the issues and ignore the critical problem of voters feeling discouraged. The machines may serve as an added convenience, but the risk of bad intentions and actions far outweighs the benefit. I would suggest that the more than $5 million currently in question would be better spent hiring and training workers to physically count our cast ballots. You have an opportunity today to take the first step in restoring voter confidence. I would ask that you collectively vote to not renew the Dominion contract and instead move in a new direction, or in this case, an old direction, to restore integrity and voter confidence. Thank you.
Good morning, Rhonda.
Hi. My name is Rhonda De La Cruz, and to the chair, I want to tell you how impressed I was this morning, and so happy that I'm in your district, my friend. I heard you this morning, and you gave me some confidence in just what you were talking about as far as being common sense with another issue up here. And I would hope that each and every one of you would take on the same thinking regarding the Dominion and our voting system. I agree with some of my associates out here that talk about our confidence. I am so concerned about our younger generations. I have spoken to many, many of them. I've taken that time out, and I've gone to each and every one of them, and I've said, why, why aren't you guys wanting to vote? I'm dragging these young people to the voting. I'm putting everything in front of them, and every one of them has said, because it's rigged. What good is it for us to show up? We try showing up, and nothing happens. So with that, I would hope and pray that each one of you would really take this serious and to know that you are in the position to help, to help start changing things. Our generation, our young people are important. They are our foundation. They're coming up. They're going to be our future, and this is important for not only for them, but for our grandchildren and our future grandchildren. And I would like to just say that I was really offended this morning with District Two, Patrick Kennedy and his views, and he indicated that all of you on the board all agreed. And I would hope that you don't agree in his views, because calling your constituents that it's all just, you know, this is just all made up, when in fact you are being given the evidence of it, right, to you, you're being fed it, is just really, really not okay. I am your constituents, and all the constituents of District Two. If you're in here, I say don't vote for Patrick again. And if you're watching on TV, think about who you're voting for, who is representing you, because if he's able to talk like this out in open, and it's okay, and if all of, and the board of all of you feel this way, please say so, so that that way we know which way we need to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have Christine Rich, and then Deborah Holmes, and then Karen Juton, I believe. Morning, Christine.
Good morning. My name is Christine, and I'm actually in Don's district. I've been a Sacramento voter since 1997. I've always enjoyed living and residing in Sacramento County until the last couple of years, when it seems there's a systematic decline of our voting rights and our rights as citizens. I'd like to encourage the board to consider one citizen, one ballot, one vote, period into conversation. No machines are needed, no automation is needed. There are other countries and other cities that have millions more people than we do, and they do same-day voting, and they do hand-counted ballots, and they do paper ballots only, so that there is no question about the validity of the elections. I went ahead and went on the Secretary of State's website today, and I discovered that there's a new California Voters' Choice Act. And in reading just some of the verbiage in the act, it looks like prisoners are going to be entitled to voting, which I'm not necessarily opposed to citizens voting, but I think that our U.S. Constitution requires felons are not permitted to vote. So if we can't even determine the validity of our registered voters' citizenship status through the Department of Voter Vehicles, how are we going to determine their felony status? How are we going to determine whose vote is actually legitimately counted so that voters can have confidence in our elections? There is a complaint form that voters can go to with the Secretary of State, where you can file a complaint about your elections in the county and in the state. I thought I had that up so that I could read the address to everybody, so they knew how to find it. Oh, give me a second. The complaint form is located on the Secretary of State's website, and it's under Voter Fraud I'm an English voter, so I chose English. Please, any registered voters listening to this, go to the complaint form and submit your comments to the Secretary of State. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, next, Deborah, Deborah Holmes, then followed by Karen Juton. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, supervisors. My name is Deborah Holmes, and I've lived in Sacramento County for 10 years. I currently reside in Supervisor District Two, and I'm requesting that Sacramento County immediately discontinue the use of Dominion voting machines. A forensic report was published on March 22, 2022, links to which were provided to you in a letter dated September 28, 2022. I wondered if you took the time to read those reports? Nobody recalls. I can send it again. These reports show that the software on the Dominion Election Management Server performed unauthorized reprocessing and recounting of over 25,000 ballots in the November 2020 election, and over 8,000 ballots in the April 2021 election in Mesa County, Colorado. I'm sure you guys are aware of the election fraud investigations going on in Mesa County. It's been on the news. Additional data being provided to you today, and a report published by Dr. Stanley Young, with election integrity info highlights significant voter data discrepancies in California. A summary of these findings shows that between 2016 and 2020, the population of California increased by less than 700,000 people, which includes children and noncitizens. Yet, in the 2020 election, the California vote total for the Democratic candidate increased by more than 2.3 million votes. This increase does not appear to be logically explainable, and potential causes of this discrepancy can be attributed to the use of the voting machines, which keep ineligible voters on the rolls indefinitely. This allows fabricated votes to be submitted. And additionally, these machines do not allow for genuine oversight of voting tabulation. They have been proven to be connected to the Internet and have also been proven to be hackable and hacked. We, the people, rely on our elected officials to do the right thing and to uphold your oath of office to support and defend our liberties, which are protected by the U.S. and the California constitutions. It is imperative that we restore election integrity, as what we currently have is a compromised election system. This allows public officials to be selected, not elected. This must change here in Sacramento County with the November 2022 election. I would like to remind you that each of you, you have the authority, you have the civic duty, and you have an ethical responsibility to ensure for your constituents that elections in our county are safe and fair. Thank you for discontinuing the use of these corrupt machines and restoring same-day, in-person only voting in our county.
Thank you, Deborah. And then Karen, followed by Nikki McNally, and then Debbie Woolley. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Karen Juton. I went down to the registrars, and I talked to the tech. They were doing a certification of the machines. I went down to talk to the tech, and he was so gracious, I got to talk to him as long as I wanted. And I asked him if he'd ever seen the source code on the voting computer. Well, he had not. He'd never seen it, because it's proprietary, it's owned by Dominion. So I said, well, if your voting computers are hacked, how would you know if you can't see the source code, and how could you repair it? And he didn't have an answer for me. No bank would ever have counting on a computer that they can't see the source code. So saying that there's certified computers, it means nothing. Absolutely nothing, because you can't see the source code. The registrar hasn't seen it, no techie has seen it, nobody in the registrar's office has seen it. It could say anything. But guess what? We do have the source code. In Mesa County, Colorado, a woman named Tina Peters was elected to run the elections. And when she found out that they were going to come in and do trusted bill ordered by the Secretary of State in Colorado, she decided to get the source code, an image of it, before and after the update. Now, this information is incontrovertible. It's captured in time and cannot be changed. That evidence is absolutely correct. And so she put it out on the Internet, the source code on the Dominion voting computers in Mesa, Colorado, and programmers looked at it, and they saw that there's an algorithm that creates two books. The first book lost 5,000 votes. The clerks in the office never saw that. They don't know what's going on because they can't see the source code. The second book changed 27,000 votes. Now, if you're not counting on paper and you're using an image of the ballot, that image can be manipulated by the computer. And that's what happened. And that's what's happening all over our nation. And if you think that we're going to suddenly go away and decide that they weren't shooting, and we're just, you know, conspiracy theorists, you're wrong, because we have a ton of evidence. We've got the source code in Mesa County. We have Antrim in county in Michigan. The Michigan judge released the report of the audit of Dominion voting systems, revealing that the machines and their software were designed to create systemic fraud. We're not going away. We're going to be back, and we don't want you to renew a contract with Dominion, and we don't want to use voting computers.
Okay, next is Nikki McNally.
Namaste, which means I salute the divinity in you, as it should be. Right. We should respect one another. We should respect one another. I'm Nikki McNally. I'm an independent voter. I represent many. We the people do not consent to child's play, a ballot harvesting Dominion computer and signature copy technology. And there is a computer that duplicates our signature. That's not fair. Right. France got rid of Dominions, counted by hand, 37 million ballots. Is proven effective and doing the tried and true old-fashioned way we grew up with, more people will be involved. As it is, 87% of us have given up. We're apathetic. There's no hope. I've talked to many. I've been out there handing the pamphlet out for days. And I'd say even more than 87%. So how fair is that? One day, one vote, do it the right way, fill out the ballot and hand it in and count it that day? Because there'll be volunteers to do that. As a yogi and a near-death experience, I know lifetimes and karma. Karma is real. Thank you. So let's end our merry-go-round, useless election fraud. Unify, unify and come together as one people under God and just be one party of love. Let that be our next pandemic. Love. Thank you. Thank you.[697.88][697.88][applause]
Thank you Nikki. Okay, next, thank you Nikki. Next is Debbie Woolley, followed by Donna O'Shea, followed by Blanca Matthews. Good morning Debbie. Hi Debbie.
Hey there.
Good morning.
Good morning. I wanted to say hello to Patrick and acknowledge the harassment that's going on in the world around the voter integrity. In 2016, I watched the elections go upside down and be stolen. I know it happens. I was furious. Hillary Clinton and Bernie Sanders and everybody was upset, you know? And I'm still upset. There is a lot of harassment, but we need to stop being partisan about this. We need to realize it happened to the Republicans. And man, they're really upset now, you know? They're demoralized and all these myths and conspiracies, oh my God. Well, I want to talk about a myth and that's the U.S. citizen. In our state, nobody knows who a U.S. citizen is when it comes to voting. No one's verifying it. But as one of we the people, as my status, I claim the jurisdiction of common law, which means I'm your boss. We're your boss. You are servants. And you know, when the king, the tyrant, wouldn't listen to the colonists, we didn't need a court, we didn't need any attorneys to write the Declaration of Independence and write a new constitution. If we have no confidence in who we're voting for, Democrats and Republicans, we're going to come together. We're going to unify. We are going to unify because truth is unifying. If there's cheating going on with this software, the people that are doing it are way smarter than I am. I just use common sense and the common sense says, "To read the Constitution." And the Constitution says, in Article 2, Section 2, that the people have all the political power and we can change this government whenever we want. When we wake up to that, we are going to hold everyone who has been putting these strange requests back and saying, "You know what? Why do we have 80 boxes out there, spread all over the county for a whole month? Where's the accountability? I don't see it. It doesn't feel good. Vote no on the Dominion grant. $5 million, you guys can make it up somewhere else." Thank you.
Thanks Debbie.[908.25][908.25][applause] Okay, next Donna and then Blanca and then Carrie Benton. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to start off by asking, do you guys validate parking? Do you validate your parking? A little joke. Yeah, Desmond, do you validate? Okay. What she said earlier kind of changed, well, it kind of like deflated a little bit of what was said, but grant money that you're getting from Dominion, is that what it is? Grant money from Dominion?
No, it's grant money from the state. It's state dollars, our dollars.
For Dominion?
To provide a number of services. That's what's in the item today.
Okay, because...
Including machines.
I would say that you shouldn't be taking the grant money coming from them. You need to immediately discontinue the use of the Dominion voting machines in Sack County. A forensic report was published on March 22nd, links to which were provided to you in a letter dated September 28th, 2022, shows that the software of Dominion Election Management Service performed unauthorized repossessing, the recounting of over 25,000 ballots in the November 2020 election and over 8,000 ballots in the April 2021 election in Mesa, Colorado. I would like to remind you that you have the authority, the civic duty, the ethical responsibility to ensure for your constituents that the election in our counties are safe and fair. Thank you for having the backbone to discontinue these corrupt machines and restoring same-day, in-person-only voting in our county. That's what we need to go back to. That's what worked for us. That's what we trust. And there would be a lot more people here to talk to you about it, but the meetings are during working hours, so it's a few of us that are speaking for millions of people that feel exactly the same way. So, thank you for your time and think about what is said. Just sit on it for a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you Donna.[1076.22][1076.22][applause] Okay, Blanca Matthews and then Carrie Benton and then Sandra Marquez. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. I didn't have anything prepared, I'm just going to wing it. According to Mr. Kennedy, you guys all feel the same way, that voter fraud... We could play it back on video, Mr. Kennedy, the comment that you said. You said, "I hope the board feels the same way as I do," something like that. I hope you guys don't. That voter fraud is a conspiracy theory. That's pretty sad to hear from a board supervisor. And the burden of proof, let's talk about that. If voter, if there is no fraud, prove it to us. It's not to us. The people, we do not yield our sovereignty to you. You serve us. The people, by delegating authority, do not give you public servants the right to decide what is good for us, the people. Some of the trainings that you guys provide to your county employees, I have read some of those training documents. And within those documents, it says, I'm not going to quote, but it's paraphrasing. "All employees and officials of the county need to remember that public office..." I'm paraphrasing, okay? So, "All employees and officials of the county need to remember that public office and local government exist to serve the needs of the citizens in the county. It is the duty of every employee and official to expose corruption whenever it is discovered." So if the people here is saying, "We don't trust this type of voting system. We don't believe that it is secure." And they're trying to bring you evidence and you shut down and you close your ears and you close your doors and you don't respond to emails and you don't read the documents they're providing to you, are you really listening to the concerns of the constituents? Probably not. And there's plenty of you that have received emails and there's no response back from various districts. So, like I said, the burden of proof is on you. If everything is secure, then somehow prove it to us and show us that there is no reason to be suspect. The DMV, I just recently changed my name, I'm kind of in the process, sometimes I forget. I did it last week or two weeks ago, my last name. And yeah, looking back, the DMV did not ask me if I was a citizen or not. Birth certificate, I could have brought any different type of ID. They do request an ID, but it didn't necessarily have to be that I'm a citizen. So anyways, that's my comment. Have a good...
Thank you.[1281.58][1281.58][applause] Okay, I have Carrie and then Sandra, if there's anyone else that wants to speak on item 16. I don't know if we have folks on the phone or not, Madam Clerk, but those are the last two. I have signed up in chambers for this item, so. Okay, go ahead. Carrie?
I also do not appreciate the gaslighting and the dismissing of the issue of lack of voter integrity by referring to us as conspiracy theorists. Would you say the same when Barack Obama, John McCain, Hillary Clinton pointed out that the voting machines are problematic? And when Kamala Harris said, quote, "We brought in folks who before our eyes hacked election machines." So, it doesn't seem like... I don't know, you weren't paying attention to most people who are speaking and obviously this is addressed to you. But not originally. Originally, I did not think that there was going to be someone who would gaslight us right from the start. But there have been other people to testify. Clinton Curtis testified at a House Judiciary Committee, December 13th, 2004, and said that these electronic elections can be fixed and go undetected. These machines are built by private companies with proprietary secret software, as you have been told, that no one is allowed to see. If we know these machines are hackable, then why are we using them? We don't need immediate election results. We need election integrity. Thank you.
Thank you Carrie.[1387.72][1387.72][applause] Okay, Sandra Marquez. And Sandra's the last one, have signed up to speak on this item, so. We have some folks on the phone. Okay. Good morning Sandra.
Good morning. I am glad to be here, so to utilize the process that our forefathers established here for us to be able to speak to our representatives, so I'm glad to be here. My name is Sandra Marquez and I'm a constituent of this beautiful state of California and I am asking you to please do not disregard, do not dismiss these concerns and comments that my fellow citizens are sharing here with you. They have brought you many concerns and they have brought proof of what it is that they are stating. I am very concerned about these issues as well and I come before you to ask you to not dismiss them, to look into them. That's part of your responsibility as our representatives and we hope that you will take that responsibility seriously. I just wanted to end with a quote by Edmund Burke. "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." Thank you.
Thank you Sandra.[1476.72][1476.72][applause] Okay, so, I don't know if anybody else signed up to speak on... Oh, Debra?
Do you mind if I make a comment?
You're welcome to make a comment on this item. Sure, you're up. Just fill out speaker form when you're done, Debra.
Okay. I just want to make a comment. This is my first time here and I have to say that these people vote you in office. These elections are not to the standards that we want them to. You represent us. And I'm sorry, Phil, are we boring you? You know, it's like, you need to listen to us. And I, as observing, thank you Dawn, I appreciate your attention, I just don't think that you guys are listening. And it's important to us, obviously. And you're in office because we're voting for you. We don't vote for you. You're not going to sit there. So I need to make sure that you guys are listening. So if we board you, my apology, but it's obviously very important to us as a U.S. citizen, as a voter, and under the Constitution. Thank you. I appreciate Dawn, everything.
Yeah, thank you Debra.[1556.51][1556.51][applause] All right, we do have someone on the phone on this item, so we're going to have the clerk go to our phone.
Please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Gabrielle Ingram of District 2. The summary that I'm hearing from everybody is there is evidence of fraud. So regardless of one thinks, there is evidence of fraud. So the group is opposed to any contracts for additional funding. We don't care what it's for. If it's for the machines, we don't want our tax money going to that. We would like the grant rejected. Election fraud serves both sides of the aisle. That's, there's evidence of that. Biden is already setting the frame for election interference. So if 2022 tips to the Republicans, guess what you're going to hear? A bunch of Democrats in there, a bunch of Democrats in here are saying the same things as we are. Clinton accused, maybe I'm on the phone, Clinton accused of Russian collusion as the only way Trump won. Both sides of the aisles have called this out. There is evidence that this has been going on for a long time. The only way to squash it is to get rid of the machines. That's it. It's the only way to do it. It is not a conspiracy. It is not a conspiracy theory, gaslighting Kennedy. It is a conspiracy against the people. Your vote doesn't matter, progressive Democrats. My vote doesn't matter as a conservative. It's rigged. Do away with the system. Stop the gaslighting. None of us benefit from this. That's all.
Okay, thank you Gabrielle. All right, any other folks on the phone? Okay, so that's our last caller.
No other callers.
Okay. So we have Supervisor Cernan and Supervisor Frost, I believe, both wanted to weigh in, so Supervisor Cern.
Great, thank you. There's no further comments or questions from folks. I know Supervisor Frost wants to chime in, but I'm going to move the item.
Okay, all right, so we have the item, been moved in second. So go ahead, any other comments, Mr. Cern? No, Debbie didn't. Okay, Supervisor Frost.
Thank you Chair. First, I want to say that I appreciate the citizens who have been diligently, you know, watching and watching the civic process and who are willing to come out. I know it's an expense and an inconvenience and probably many more wanted to come. I also want to say that the Voters' Choice Act, when it was originally voted, I can't remember when it was, it was several years ago. I did not support it and the reason I did not, the reason I gave at the time was that I was concerned about fraud. And so, I share many of the sentiments that were expressed here today. What I'm hearing from you is that as voters, you feel disenfranchised and that you are lacking confidence in whether or not your vote makes a difference. And I don't want that. And I have questions too and I want to get to the bottom of them, but I have not been able to get my hands on specific evidence within my county that says there's something wrong. Literally, I have had so many conversations with the registrar of voters and they're doing, I believe, if there's fraud happening... doing, I believe, if there's fraud happening, it's not caused by our county staff. They're doing everything they can to ensure that the process is going, you know, is transparent and that it's going well. The challenge, I think, we have could be, could go beyond maybe to an arena that we're not aware of. And I don't know what is going on in the machines. I do know that I'm willing to, I'm interested in a couple of the comments that were, that were thrown out today. I'm interested in getting to the bottom of it. I think we all want to get to the... If there's a problem, let's look at it and find it. I mean, and then, and then we can do something about it. And this isn't about Supervisor Kennedy made some comments about the staff. This isn't really about, you know, against our staff. This is really, we want to make sure that we have election integrity. So there was, I took some notes while you were talking. Debbie Holmes talked about the source code being proprietary to Dominion and Tina Peters from Mesa County, Arizona, I believe, and I...
Colorado.
Colorado. Oh, Colorado. Okay. I don't know if there's a way that you can connect that person with me directly and maybe, I don't know if Chair Natoli is willing to have a meeting with that person, just have a conversation, so we can begin to explore and learn more about this and what's going on. Maybe our legal, our legal could be there. Would you be willing, Supervisor Natoli?
I meet with just about anyone who requests a meeting, so. So I'm pretty open to that. I think I have a pretty good, strong reputation for meeting with folks, so.
I figured.
Whether they agree with me or I agree with them, I'm certainly open to hearing from folks, so.
I took a guess on you being willing to do that. That was a pretty good guess. The other person that I, Karen Jutton, or someone talked about, Debbie Holmes, talked about a forensic auditor, a forensic investigation that took place. I would like to talk to the person, the forensic auditor, for them to explain to me what they found in Arizona. Because my, I've heard this about Arizona, and I've also heard from other people who are attorneys, who have stated that got all settled and it wasn't proven, something wasn't proven. So I'm, we, we need to, if we're going to get to the bottom of it, I'm willing to look at it and go down that road. And I'm hoping Supervisor Natoli will be involved in that meeting also. Will you, Supervisor Natoli? Putting you on the spot. Those are two meetings. I won't request any more, I promise. Regarding the citizenship, the citizenship, I have had that conversation also with our registrar of voters. And regarding the citizenship, the burden of verifying citizenship is on the Secretary of State. The DMV would not be the one who would verify that, and it seemed like they admitted it in their, their letter that you spoke of, Deborah. And so I, you know, I'm not sure if that's a conversation with a legislator or someone like that. But again, I think it's important for us to, I guess what I'm trying to say is that I am willing to go down this rabbit hole and figure out, you know, what is going on. If there is something, if there's nothing wrong, I think we should find out so that we can put this to rest and be done with it. And, and I think if we don't look into it, it's just going to continue to fester and be a growing problem, and we have an election coming up. Now, I want to comment on item 16. My understanding of item 16 is this is not renewing, in any way renewing, a contract. And I think legal counsel, I'm hoping legal counsel will let me know if I understand correctly, that this, this is really money that we allocated in our budget. We knew there was going to be a delay in the funding because there was a delay with the Secretary of State with a grant that was already approved, and we funded some machines with general funds. Those machines that we accepted were certified because we have a policy. We do not accept machines that are certified. You can say that our machines are not...
Conditionally certified versus certified. There's a distinction. You said certified, certified. It's conditionally certified versus the certified. I didn't mean to correct you, but that...
Okay, so I guess I need from legal counsel, because I was understanding they were, everything we bought, everything we have at the county is certified. So if it's not certified...
That's correct. Yes.
Fully certified, yes.
Fully certified.
Not conditionally certified.
What's the difference?
Fully certified.
Not conditionally certified. The grant allows you to purchase certified or conditionally certified, but the county of Sacramento's policy is only to purchase certified.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so, okay, we did, so if we don't accept this money, then you're, you know, either way, you taxpayers, we're paying. I hate to tell you, whether we accept this grant or not, you can pay it through state money that's made available to us for Voters' Choice Act, or we can pay it out of our general fund, which means we have less money to spend on other things that we need money for. That's the only really discretionary funding that we have. So I'm inclined to support accepting the money from the state with the commitment that I want to move forward to try to get to the bottom of the election integrity so that we know we can have confidence that we do have it. And I make that commitment to you. Thank you.
All right. I just want, if I could, certainly thanks to our speakers this morning. Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I forgot to get legal counsel.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Supervisor Frost.
I think your question was whether or not this has anything to do with extending or renewing the actual contract for the purchase of the...
Right. I just wanted to make clear to everyone, this does not, and so...
Yeah, this is merely, this is simply receiving funds from the state. It has no impact on the current, the contracts to purchase anything.
And the contract can be extended three one-year periods, and it's already been delegated when we initially approved the five-year contract, and therefore, it won't be coming to the Board in January. The path forward is if you, you know, you need, you need to help us, you know, help us understand what you see, and we'll be willing to look at all of it with, with an open mind on both sides. Because we're not, I'm not assuming there's a problem. I can't assume there's a problem until I see something that makes me feel like I need to look further. Let's take a look at it. And I feel like we do need to take a look at it. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Supervisor Frost.
No.
Deborah, we've closed public testimony, so if, but certainly, as you're going to follow up with some information, so if you want to follow up with the Board in writing or certainly verbally, that'd be fine, so. So I want to just go back to what's before us today, because this goes back to 2020, when we initially agreed to accept the funding, and there was a term that expired, so we're now asking to extend the term for, for the purpose of receiving, we've received some two point, well, two more than $2 million already, and this would allow us to, to claim against the remaining $5 million plus. Is that correct?
I have to pull it up, but I think we, we're expecting the $5 million, and we're getting an additional two. Is that correct, David?
Good morning, Supervisor Natoli. The original execution of the contract, which that's a term that the Secretary of State uses, it's truly a grant that we use more commonly used, was for $4.7 million was the grant. We've claimed against that grant up until June of 2022, $2.2 million.
Okay.
So then the new grant has been moved up to $7.7 million.
Right, and $3.59 million.
Right, which allows us another $5.5 million to claim against the state. And this gives us an additional two years to claim, well, 18 months now, to claim against those. And I'm not sure if I introduced myself. I'm David Villanueva. I'm Deputy County Executive over Administrative Services, which elections is part of this agency.
Okay, so the first contract was claimed back to January of 2019 and was actually approved going back by Board action in February 2020. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So what I want to ask about those, and because I think there are a number of things that are bundled in here, and certainly to the points being made today about the systems that are being utilized, but this also covers additional costs, both as security of communication, the cost of the vote centers, and, and updates to the election management system, also equipment that's used to, for the ballot drop boxes, the ballot sorting, process equipment and so forth. And I know there were questions raised around some of those activities. But I want to be clear, though, the contract says that for costs associated with voting systems that have been certified or conditionally certified pursuant to the California Voting Systems Standards. Since we don't take systems and don't incur, again, we're not, either purchasing or utilizing systems that are conditionally certified, why do we even have that language in there? Because we're only going to claim for those that are certified, and I think that our contract ought to be very clear, because that's what we do, that's what our intent is, whether or not the state would allow for that or not. I think that needs to be stricken, stricken from the information or the language. Is that...
That language was included as part of the Secretary of State's standard contract to us. We, that's why we've highlighted it and put it in the Board letter to draw attention to that for the Board. I can't think of an instance where we would use non-certified or, or conditionally certified. But there are some things that aren't necessarily certified, which could be ballot boxes and some of these other things, so.
Well...
Not necessarily systems that are referred to that truly get certified by the Secretary of State.
Okay, no, but I think it's clear. If I look at paragraph two on page two, it says qualifying expenditures, which again goes to what the Secretary of State has put forward, include voting systems that have been certified or conditionally certified pursuant to the California Voting Systems Standards. Goes on to list a lot of things. Since we are only either acquiring and/or utilizing and then claiming for certified voting systems, not to some of the, the pertinent materials that might be used or equipment, I think that we ought to be fairly clear, because it's been said here on, on the record, but that's not what the staff report says. It doesn't say we just use certified systems unless it's elsewhere here that I'm not reading that. So I want to make it clear, and again, we won't claim for that, but I think, you know, I think it needs to be a better record, so.
And I think the contract is not something we can change because it's a Secretary of State contract, but we could certainly clarify in a staff report what our intentions are.
Yeah, I think so, because again, you made it very clear, and right from the get-go with this morning, and I just think it's important to point that out, so. Okay. So this is basically an extension of time, recognizing obviously what we've heard from folks this morning, but for to claim for those things that would be allowable under the Secretary of State's contract with this, with this county and probably with other counties. But for the record, we are only, as it relates to the voting systems, are only certified voting systems that we would be claiming for and utilizing. I think it's more than just claiming for is what we utilize. Okay. All right. So any other questions or comments? We do have a motion and a second, and I think we've heard comments by several members of the Board. And with that, then, if there's nothing further, then I would ask the clerk to please call the, call for the vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right. Again, we appreciate all of you with us this morning, those that have weighed in, and certainly the information you've shared, and it sounds like there are going to be some additional follow-up on that, so. All right. That concludes item 16. We still have the consent calendar, and we do have another speaker on item 43, if we could call that item, please.
Item 43, the authority to amend and increase an expenditure agreement with the Regents of the University of California by $470,721 for the term ending June 30th, 2023, to add an internal medicine specialist to the sexual health clinic and clinical research coordinators for monkey pox treatment coordination.
Okay, so I have Blanca Hurtado. Blanca?
For item number 43, I, it's just not clear to me why the county needs more funds related to monkey pox. I'm looking at the agenda, and it's under social services. So a couple of meetings ago, or maybe the last meeting ago, I know we talked about a mobile crisis unit. Like, this money could go to a mobile crisis unit for citizens who are struggling with mental health. If there's not enough people that want to work in that section, a mobile crisis unit, maybe we have to reevaluate what we're offering in these jobs, because I don't see the need for a monkey pox provider, a medicine specialist, but I do see a need for a mobile crisis unit. So this money, $470,000, 470, I can't even say it, but 400-plus thousand dollars. Or better yet, I mean, we had IHSS workers here talking about how they need a living wage, and that could easily fall under social services. People in our community who are hurting, who are needing care, receiving care, or need the funds just to live in Sacramento County. So that's my comment for that, is like, no, this money can go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Blanca. Okay. Do we have any other comments on item 43?
No, we don't.
Okay. Do we have any other commenters on any other items on the consent calendar?
No. I'm going to close this one.
Okay. All right, so we have no other callers. And then we have the balance of the consent calendar, as, as noted in the clerk's, we dropped item 20, we backed on item 16, and so with that, a motion would be in order.
I'll move approval of the remaining consent items.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, it's moving second to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Again, we have no speakers. Hello, we have nobody on the phone, right?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good. Please vote.
The unanimous vote for items two through 61, and please note for the record that item 16 and 20 does have, they have separate votes.
Very good. Okay. All right, with that, then, I know we have some presentations, and again, thank folks for their patience this morning.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yes.
Could I have a moment to comment on number nine and 10?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
I was just looking through my notes, yes. We made a couple of appointments, and I know that Ann wanted to introduce folks in the audience, so my apologies.
That's all right. Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. First of all, Madam Clerk, do we still have Jennifer Hernandez on the phone? I know she said she might not be able to be here past 11:00.
Ms. Hernandez, are you still on the line?
I'm guessing not. She did indicate she would have to sign off at 11:00 a.m. I'll just say a few words about her. The, I'm happy to recommend, at least, the city has to recommend this as well, and they're doing so today, but we are recommending Jennifer Hernandez to be the new executive directa for this, executive director for the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency. The city and county jointly hired a recruiter to select Ms. Hernandez. The panel, initial panel was comprised of community members, external partner agencies, city and county executive staff, and representatives from the governing boards. Finalists referred, were referred to me and to Howard Chan, the city manager, and we are happy to jointly recommend Jennifer Hernandez. She has 20 years of executive level management experience, which includes leading both public and private organizations. She currently serves as the Deputy Director for the Family Engagement and Empowerment Division for the State of California Department of Social Services, overseeing Cow Works, Cow Fresh, and Child and Adult Care Food Program. Prior to her current role, she served as the Associate Secretary for the State's Labor and Workforce Development Agency, Farm Worker and Immigrant Services. Ms. Hernandez has a master's degree in public policy, as well as a bachelor's degree in international politics. We are fortunate to be able to bring her on. She will start in the middle of November.
Great. We offer our congratulations, and certainly, again, we weren't able to hear from her this morning, and recognizing time constraints, but again, I know that both Supervisor Kennedy and I serve on the Senate Board, so we'll get a chance to meet her in person.
Yes.
Or at least virtually, in a very short amount of time, but I think it would probably be a good opportunity at some point, once he's situated in her position, maybe invite her to come before the Board and talk about the Sacramento Employment Training Agency, some of the initiatives. Obviously, they're critical in both workforce training, but certainly in the Head Start program, and do a tremendous job in a lot of respects as a partner in this, in this community. So we welcome Jennifer to her new position, and... as a partner in this community. So we welcome Jennifer to her new position and look forward.
Agreed. And I would also like to just take a very brief moment to thank Denise Lee for her almost year-long service as the interim director. She's done a great job.
Yep. I would echo that, and thank you, Anne, for that. Denise has been with the agency for well over 30 years, and I know certainly, Patrick and I, because of our service on the SETA Board, have a chance to hear from her on a regular basis, certainly in her interim capacity during the last year. But her work with Head Start has just been exemplary and reaches a lot of folks and a lot of children, families in this community. But appreciate her keeping, you know, things steady at the helm while this process was undertaken, so.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 10, which is the recommendation to appoint Tim Lutz as our new Health Director. As you all know, Siobhan Katari was promoted to her current position as Deputy County Executive for Social Services, leaving that position vacant. Again, we have done extensive outreach and recruitment efforts to fill this position. Our initial panel included county executive staff, as well as multiple external panel members, and then final interviews were conducted by Ms. Katari and myself. Mr. Lutz has nearly 20 years of public service experience, leading social services programs, including over 12 years of executive management experience. He is currently the Agency Director of the Tulare County Health and Human Service Agency. He also spent time in Calaveras County as the County Administrative Officer, as well as Director of Fiscal Operations for the Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency, as well as the Executive Director of the King's Tulare Area Agency on Aging. In addition to his wealth of experience, Mr. Lutz has a master's degree in business administration, as well as a bachelor's degree in psychology. And both Ms. Katari and I are very, very pleased to bring him on to our ever-growing new executive team, and I think he's going to be a wonderful addition to the team. And Mr. Lutz, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First, thank you, Anne, for the kind words. Appreciate that. It's truly an honor to be here today. I'm really excited in receiving this appointment, and also just noting, growing up in this area, I feel like I'm coming home. And it's truly an honor to be serving this community, the residents of the county, and the board, and Anne's team. I would like to thank Anne and Siobhan for a really great interview process, truly transparent. I felt through that onboarding process, through that, I could learn a lot about the department, the programs, some things coming up. And it feels really great to be coming on to a really supportive leadership team. I'm looking forward to helping to implement Anne and Siobhan's vision for health services, knowing that we do have a lot of tough work. And I like tough work. I know I'm going to be spending a lot of time getting to dig into the department in the next few months, really talking to our community providers, talking to our county leadership team, and understanding some of our challenges and working on strategies to help continue the work that we've been doing. Lastly, I just want to thank my family, particularly my amazing wife, and two little girls who are supportive and enthusiastic about, you know, uprooting and relocating. So they couldn't be here today, but again, really could not do this without their wonderful support. And again, thank you.
Well, Tim, we welcome you to Sacramento, and certainly to the county teams, certainly welcome your family here as well, and look forward to the opportunity to, as you said, to, you know, work with our county executive and with Ms. Katari, and certainly others. Public health and health in general is very key and critical to a lot of what the county does every day, and certainly delivery of services, programs, funding, and variety of partnerships that we have. And so you're a welcome addition, and we look forward to working with you. Fortunately, I won't get the opportunities. I'm a short timer now, but look forward to your leadership in the years to come. I know it'll be well received. So congratulations to you.
Appreciate it.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yes.
I also really need to thank Sandy Damiano, who stepped in to cover this really critical position in a really critical time. I've known Sandy for a very long time, and she always steps up and rises to the occasion. She delayed her retirement in order to help us, so I just want to acknowledge the work that she's done over the previous months.
Great. Well, we would, again, extend our thanks, and I'm glad you highlighted that as well. So has she, is she retired now?
Not yet. She's going to continue to help out through the transition, but she did, in fact, delay in order to help us out, and we greatly appreciate that.
Again, I've worked with Sandy, certainly I know others have, but certainly for many years, and appreciate her work in many different realms, but certainly in providing for important health services to our community members. So, okay, with that, then, we congratulate one more time Jennifer Hernandez and Timothy Lutz on their appointments, and to thank both Sandy and Denise for their work in the intervening time. So, okay. Anne, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. All right. With that, then, we're going to keep moving forward. Going to go to our 10 o'clock item. How's that? Item 62, if you want to call it, Madam Clerk.
Item 62 is the presentation of resolution recognizing October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Very good. And I believe Supervisor Frost, you have a presentation you'd like to move to.
Yes, and I would like to invite All Be Aware individuals who are here to join me at the podium.
Good morning, everyone. I am delighted to invite Courtney and Julie, who are with All Be Aware, an organization that is trying to advocate for breast cancer awareness and provide, you know, mammograms and treatment for people in the underserved areas of our county. And I wanted to just say briefly, breast cancer, when I first was asked to do this, I thought, oh, I guess I'm the logical one. I'm the only woman on the board. But then I remembered that one of my mom's cousins, who was a man, had breast cancer and died from breast cancer. And so I want to say that breast cancer touches all of us in one way or another, and your work is vital and important, because we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. And it's, people don't always have the insurance to get a mammogram, so that's a big deal for people. And I'd like to just go ahead and read this proclamation before I present it, and really proclaiming October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Sacramento County. Whereas, All Be Aware Breast Cancer Foundation is committed to supporting those who are facing breast cancer, and October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas, All Be Aware, a Sacramento nonprofit organization, was founded in 2004 in memory of Alberta Albi Carson, who died from breast cancer. And whereas, holds a mission to provide lifesaving breast cancer testing, prevention, education, advocacy, and compassionate support. Breast cancer is the most common form of internal cancer in women and the second-most cause of cancer and death in women in the U.S. And while most cases of breast cancer are diagnosed in women, more than 2,000 new cases of breast cancer are diagnosed in American men each year. And whereas, according to the CDC, breast cancer remains the leading cause of cancer death among Hispanic women, Black women have a higher rate of death from breast cancer than white women, and early detection offers the best chance of effective treatment. And All Be Aware is providing mammogram services and breast health information to individuals living in areas with the lowest mammogram rates in Sacramento County, meaning those that don't have the opportunity to get a mammogram. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors for the County of Sacramento, State of California, joins with communities and people from throughout California and the nation by proclaiming the month of October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Sacramento County, and further expresses its thanks and appreciation to All Be Aware Breast Cancer Foundation for their commitment and compassionate work in helping those affected and their families in battling to overcome cancer in the community, in their families and in the community. And at this time, I would like to present this proclamation that has been signed by all of our board members on behalf of the board, and thank you for your work. And you may want to say a couple words afterwards.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you want to get a picture.
That'd be wonderful.
Is there, do you have someone here that?
Yeah.
Great.
You want to get, yeah, that's perfect. Thank you, Matt. Would you like to say a couple?
That'd be great.
Thank you very much. My name is Courtney Quinn. I'm the Executive Director for the All Be Aware Breast Cancer Foundation. I'm also a breast cancer survivor. So thank you all for this proclamation. It's very important for us, because I'm absolutely certain in your, some of your constituents are facing breast cancer, or they're individuals who need a reminder of a mammogram. We know in the U.S., more than 9 million individuals missed their cancer screenings throughout the pandemic. And so this is an important reminder for your constituents to also, you know, get their mammograms. I also want to leave with you some stats on what's happening in your own districts related to mammograms and breast cancer. It's going to also include our information in it, too. So if you have questions, we're happy to do follow-up on meetings, too. But a couple of things I do want to make sure you're aware of is Sacramento County, right now, unfortunately, has a higher death rate due to breast cancer than the state and the nation's average. So it's really important that we are addressing this issue directly. And then I'm also included information on your mammogram rates in your district. If you see anything at below 78%, that means it's in the top 15 ZIP codes that are with the lowest mammogram rates in Sacramento County. So that's what we're specifically targeting by bringing mammograms to those communities, also targeting awareness additionally through breast health classes, too. And so as you're out in the world, if you hear of somebody who needs breast cancer support or services, needs to get a mammogram, please encourage them to contact All Be Aware, because we can help them get, you know, the support through government programs. Sometimes insurance doesn't cover someone's mammogram, or they don't know where to start, or they have a breast health question, we're here, and that's what All Be Aware does. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions or want additional information?
Good. Courtney, I think Supervisor certainly wanted to weigh in, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm certainly appreciative to Supervisor Frost for bringing this resolution forward to appropriately acknowledge and recognize the month as Breast Cancer Awareness, and specifically to present that to All Be Aware. I'm very familiar with the organization. In years past, I've had the honor of presenting similar resolutions. And I just want to reflect on the fact that as someone who lost their mother, stepmother, aunt, and grandmother in a nine-year span, all to breast cancer, I can't say it strongly enough in terms of the import of early detection. So I'm really glad that you're taking the opportunity to remind everyone, and not just women, that this is a disease that is all too prevalent in our communities. And I think the best defense is making sure that, as your nonprofit name alludes to, that everyone is aware that there is a much greater chance at survival and successful treatment when the diagnosis is caught early. So really appreciate all that you do. And as someone that pre-COVID, had participated for years in the Women Wear Pink campaign, I'm glad that we're, again, getting back on track and making sure that we acknowledge our nonprofit partners that are doing such great work. So thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for your loss, and we'll make sure to get some more pink on you as well.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Courtney. Any other comments? Certainly, I think we all join Courtney, certainly in the proclamation, thanking All Be Aware for its work, and I think those demographics will be important, and hopefully through our own conduits, we can help get more information out about the availability and accessibility to early detection. And again, thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Then let's go to our next item, which is item 63. And I'll have you call that item, please.
Item 63 is the presentation by the Delta Protection Commission on the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta National Heritage Area.
Great. And as Bruce Blodger, Executive Director for the Commission, and Blake Roberts, Dr. Roberts are coming to the podium, would just want to acknowledge certainly the effort. Bruce is fairly new to his role, and he'll get a chance to make some comments here, but we appreciate his leadership. And Dr. Roberts has been with the Commission for some years, and we'll have a brief overview today. But I would just kind of just note that we are one of only, I think, three national heritage areas on the whole West Coast, and I want to get ahead of Bruce on this, but the only one in California. And I think it highlights the importance, the relevance of what this board has been aware of for many years. I want to thank my colleagues and our county staff for their support, certainly for the engagement of this county, its representation on, certainly, not only on the Commission, but certainly on the Conservancy, but the work that we've done collaboratively to, I think, bring focus to the importance of the very, it's going to be a geographical area of county, but one that has a great history, and certainly many economic contributors to this county. And so with that, I'm going to turn to Bruce, let him make some opening comments. And then I know Dr. Roberts has a brief overview that will be shared, but I think it'll highlight, again, some of the importance of the work that goes on at the Commission, but also this county's been very much a part of. So Bruce, morning.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Chair Natoli, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here and honored to be here. I am a Sacramento County resident, and I live in Elk Grove. My family used to farm here in Sacramento County in the Slough House area, and also still have a ranch in Amador County. And we had ownership of a ranch or a farm out in the Delta, in the Cortland area. That picture over there looks really familiar of the pears. So that's where my mom grew up, was in Cortland. And so, long history in the Delta, long history in agriculture. I see the crop reports coming up. That's a good day in every county to go through the crop report. Previous to this, I was the San Joaquin County Farm Bureau's Executive Director. So I would be at the Board of Supervisors hearing every year with the crop report, and reporters would be badgering me all the way out the door. So it was always a good day to get those numbers and see those numbers and tell that story. And you tell a lot of stories with that crop report. For us, one of those stories we told in San Joaquin County was the loss of the asparagus industry, really. We're down to just a couple hundred acres. That was something, it was 50,000 or 60,000 acres in our county alone. And now it's a couple hundred. So you do get the chance to get some tremendous news, growth in wine grapes, growth in almonds, growth in certain commodities, but you also get some other stories. So that's a little bit of background about me. Obviously, I come from an agricultural perspective. Ironically, worked on the Delta Protection Act when it passed in 1992, was a staff person for the County Farm Bureau, and it created the Commission 30 years later. Now I'm the Executive Director, so who knew? With that, that's enough of me talking. You're here about the heritage area. This is tremendous, and as the chairman noted, the only one in the state of California. So we have Dr. Blake Roberts, who's going to go through the presentation. I'm going to have to exit at some point here to get to another meeting, but you're in good hands with Blake.
Thank you, Bruce. Good morning, Blake. Or good afternoon now, so.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Natoli, members of the board. I'm really excited to be here today, because specifically Chair Natoli had asked us to come out and talk to different Boards of Supervisors around the five-county Delta region, just to let people know about the national heritage area, let you know what's going to be happening over the next few years. So, next slide, please.
I think you have control.
You had to click it there. You're in charge, Blake.
Wow. Okay, thank you. That would be appreciated. That would be appreciated. Great. So, the National Park Service has a very long and complicated explanation of what a national heritage area is. But I think I'll just boil it down to really the most important parts. And that is, it's an area that is so important in terms of the national history, national heritage, whether it's from natural reasons, cultural reasons, or a mix of these. And so, Congress actually designated national heritage areas. We were lucky enough to be designated in 2019, along with the two other West Coast national heritage areas in Washington State. So, as I mentioned, this national heritage areas have traditionally been kind of an East Coast Midwestern thing. As you can see on this map, it's a little hard to see, but most of them are east in the Mississippi. But over time, there's been more and more coming through, coming to the West. And so, we're really excited that we can sort of be on the vanguard of national heritage areas in the area. They're really important for many regions. All of these regions have really strong organizations that support their national heritage areas, and it's really done on the local level. Even though we get federal support, it really is a local partnership. So, here's just a brief explanation of the boundaries. They are a little complicated. But what I will mention, at least in Sacramento County, is that it really includes an area that is kind of, we always kind of refer to the Delta as the tail in Sacramento County. And so, it really has most of the area that you really think of as the Delta, and pretty much from Freeport down south all the way to Sherman Island. Obviously, it's a pretty long area. It goes all the way to Vallejo and Hercules in the west. So, in terms of the planning cycle, how does a national heritage area work and how does the system work? Initially, there's a feasibility study that was completed for us in 2012. That really just sort of provides the case for why we should be a national heritage area. Luckily, Congress thought that we were worthwhile. And so, in 2019, we were actually declared as national heritage area. So, the next work that we have to do is our management plan. And really, that's been the focus of our work over the last few years. And then, once we finish our management plan, that allows us to do the types of projects that we want to do. And then, finally, at the end of the initial 15-year period, we're supposed to do sort of an evaluation of where we are. Many national heritage areas are actually in the process of being renewed right now. So, we're really excited about the possibility of that. So, I'll just give you a brief rundown of what's in the management plan. It really speaks to the diverse, the diversity of the area. And so, I don't think I have to tell you about how diverse the area is, just in terms of race and culture and income. There's so many parts of the Delta that we want to celebrate. And I think that diversity is important apart for us. We also consider government plans and treaty rights. That's really, the national heritage area does not have any regulatory role at all, but we want to make sure that we recognize the importance of general plans and other things that the county has put together. For example, the work of SACOG has done on active transportation. These are all important to us. In terms of the actual components, one of the things we do is we do an inventory of all the important resources in the area. And then, we develop recommendations for what we want to do going forward. We have an interpretive plan, which really is the stories. What are the stories of the area and how are we going to tell those stories? Obviously, funding and implementation are really important because we want to be an organization that does something, and that's really important to us.
Blake, if I could just recall on the funding. So, once the management plan is completed, submitted to the Department of Interior, and assuming that it's approved, then we are eligible to compete for funding on the national level for funding that's been set aside for national heritage areas. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct. So, there are currently, we currently receive about $150,000 from the federal government, and we have to match that one-to-one. So, we've typically been doing that with our agency funds right now. But once we have our management plan completed, we expect that to at least increase to $300,000, although I know one of the things that many of the national heritage areas have been shooting for is at least a sort of a basement of $500,000 for national heritage areas.
Great.
So, what kind of activities might we do? There's historic preservation work. We've been working in some of our communities, including one, Project Nilton, that is sort of focused on historic preservation, cultural conservation as well. So, the, you know, this particular picture shows Dancer in Locke. The culture of that area is obviously really important to the Delta as a whole and to Sacramento County. Education, interpretation, telling the stories to people of all ages. Development of recreational assets. Most people know the Delta because of recreation, and so, obviously, we want to support that. Nature conservation. Don't have to tell you what a rich treasure that the Delta is in terms of nature. It's right along the Pacific Flyway and plays an important role in birds and fish. Tourism and economic development are obviously things that are important to Sacramento County and to the Delta as a whole. Oh, sorry, I went backwards. So, in terms of what we've done to date, we created an advisory committee back, I guess it's been almost two years that we've had our advisory committee. And then, we've also had underneath that, we've had task groups that have sort of served as subcommittees to the advisory committee. And we've been, that's really where we've been doing a lot of our activity, is working with them, trying to sort out what exactly will be our priorities. We've done tribal consultation, and we've done public workshops. Actually, we did two last year, sort of when we were in a window where there was, we were allowed to do an in-person workshop. And thankfully, we were able to do that in Benicia and in Walnut Grove. We also have a Delta Heritage Forum Conference, which we do annually. This year's, I'll just put in a plug, this year's is going to be on November 3. And then, we've done online surveys and interviews as well. There's really no, I mean, I list potential partners here, but really, there's no limit to which partners might be involved in the national heritage area. Really, we consider this, a national heritage areas really are a local partnership. That's what their focus is. That's the reason why we're called in our legislation, a local coordinating entity. Our role is to really coordinate with a number of different organizations and to do work that we want to do. And so, that is really, I think, the secret sauce of national heritage areas, is that we are able to work with a wide variety and to get things done. So, I just want to give you a brief rundown of what we're doing with the management plan. Right now, we're sort of in the, hopefully in the final stretches of finishing up a draft of the management plan. That will go to the Commission that Supervisor Natoli is on, although unfortunately, it might get to him and, you know, a little too late. But.
Won't get to me, was you saying. So, I'll be gone.
So, and one of the things that we are doing right now is we're reaching out to different partners, such as Sacramento County, in order to get sort of get letters of support and really provide some basis to tell the National Park Service that, you know, we're in this for the long haul and that we have a lot of partners to work with. So, we will be coming back to the board to seek those sort of letters of support. And then, we will finish the draft plan, and then, we will do a public review, probably in late winter, spring. Once the Commission has signed off on that, then it will go to the National Park Service and the Secretary of Interior for formal approval. So, hopefully, about a year from now, hopefully, we will have a final management plan. And I think one of the things that we're already trying to do is work on projects that will move the Delta forward and let people know what a wonderful place it is. So, with that, if you have any questions.
Great. Thanks, Blake. Let me go to my colleagues. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Frost?
I have a question regarding your potential partners. Are those partners in that specific area of the Delta where you're located?
We don't, primarily in the Delta, but we recognize that the story of the area is, covers a lot of ground, even those areas that are specifically outside of the boundaries. So, for example, downtown Sacramento and the city of Sacramento is unfortunately not in the boundaries. But we still want to be able to partner with organizations in Sacramento, just to be able to tell those important stories. You know, the Gold Rush is a perfect example of a story that involved many different cities and many different regions of the state.
Yeah. And then, the last question is, on the potential partners, you listed land trusts. Is that like a federal land trust or a personal land trust? Or what does that mean?
We just use that as an example. I know that Marin County has a very active land trust. So, we're just, I know that there's a possibility. So, that's part of the reason why we put that in there.
Is that's a public land trust, or?
Yeah, sometimes public, sometimes. They come in different forms.
Oh, okay. Utilizing that as a form of security for their land, basically.
Right.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, Blake, I would just thank you for, again, for your work. I know you've been steeped in this for several years. Obviously, you have very capable colleagues that assist. And I think the outreach to the community's been outstanding. And I think, you know, working at the level with, you know, five counties, certainly areas covered by the national heritage area, which goes much beyond, you know, just the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. It includes obviously the Sisson Marsh and, you know, some of the portions of the bay as well. And I, again, I think it's a net positive. And I know, as you mentioned, getting letters of support, you know, whether I'm still here on the board or not, I do think I have great confidence, I don't think, I have great confidence this county will continue to be supportive of the efforts and, you know, certainly working through my colleagues, through the county executive, and whoever succeeds me to assure that you've got that ongoing support. And so, I think the communication on this is really important because I think it bodes well for the Delta and for a lot of the things that are real treasures as a part of a very treasured place. But also, I think, you know, Bruce alluded to in his comments, as things evolve in agriculture, recreation, certainly in the environmental stewardship, all those things are really important. I want to thank my colleagues, Supervisor Kennedy, too, for his, he's been the backup to me on all the Commissions. I think he's attended, I know he attended one in Oakley years ago, when I wasn't able to make it, but has been very engaged in the Delta County's coalition and certainly has served as my alternate on the Conservancy as well as the Commission. And obviously, that'll turn over first of the year. But I think in, remain confident because I know this board in its entirety, in present makeup, but certainly in the past, has been very supportive of doing things that enhance the Delta, I think highlight the way of life, but also, you know, position us well for the future. So, I, again, thank you for your efforts. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to actually echo what Supervisor Serna said some meetings back. And that's that, should I continue to be involved at the will of the board on this issue, you can expect phone calls.
You know, I always take your call, Mr. Kennedy. So, and something on the Delta, I always take calls from folks. So, thank you very much, though. Well, Blake, again, keep us apprised. I think, you know, regular communications obviously are important, you know, and certainly in her lead staff at administrative level taking real interest. And we've dedicated resources to stay engaged in all matters Delta. But this is, this is an important effort and one that took many years. In fact, I think, you know, it was talked about in the Delta Reform Act in 2009. And certainly Senator Feinstein and Congressman Garamendi, who were leads on this, kept it in the, you know, in the hopper. And then, it obviously, you know, when the time was right, it was approved by Congress and signed by the President, and here we are. So, with the good work that goes on. So, congratulations and look forward to the final product and to, you know, I think, continue to focus and highlight very positive aspects of, you know, of the Delta and all that it means to the people of this county and people of the state of California. So.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Blake. Okay. Nothing further? Yeah, there we go. All right. Very good. Okay, we'll go to our, we have any callers or any public comments?
No callers.
All right. I know we had next, we were going to actually have the Crop and Livestock Report, but I guess that's going to get put over till November the 8th. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're going to continue that.
But we do have our partners from UC Davis and from our Cooperative Extension that are going to do a presentation.
Yeah, they'll do the next item. Can I get a motion to continue this?
Okay. Okay, move. This is item 64, the Crop and Livestock Report. It'll, I think it's going to be put over to the 8th.
Yeah, to November 8th.
Okay, very. That's the motion. And please vote.
And unanimous vote.
Okay.
All right. Item 65 is the University of California Cooperative Extension Multi-County Partnership Presentation.
Great. And we have our folks here from the university and see some familiar faces and some new faces as well. So, but we've had a very long presence in this community, going back to 1911, if I'm not mistaken. So, it's, you know, over 100 years of cooperation with the Cooperative Extension in different formats. But, and I'll turn to our presenter. Good morning.
Good morning. Good afternoon, actually. Yeah, it's a real pleasure to be here, Chairman Natoli, members of the board, and the public. Thanks a lot for this opportunity. My name is Susan Ellsworth. I am the County Director for UC Cooperative Extension in Sacramento, Solano, and Yolo Counties. Before I dive in, I want to quickly recognize and thank my staff back here who have hung in there through a very interesting morning and whom I'll refer to throughout this presentation.
Now, you know what supervisors have their hands in lots of different ways, so.
Sure do. Since it's been a little while since our last presentation before you, I wanted to take a moment to recall our mission as the University of California Cooperative Extension. So, we, Cooperative Extension, there we go. Cooperative Extension was created in 1915 through the Smith-Leaver Act with the goal essentially of taking the university to the public. It intended and still functions as a partnership between federal, state, county, and local governments. And it really works to leverage resources from all of these partners to bring the UC's land grant mission and resources to the public, and critically to bring the needs of the public back to the university. Cooperative Extension has been operating in Sacramento County since 1917.
I went too far back. I said 1911, but still, it's 100 years plus, so.
Long time.
Long time. Thanks, Susan.
So, for about eight decades, since our inception, Cooperative Extension in Sacramento really thrived, extending research-based programming and serving community needs. However, budget cuts, which many of us experienced over the course of the last 20 years, had the effect of diminishing staffing and capacity. In 2014, leadership within County Cooperative Extension made the strategic decision to combine administratively across Yolo, Solano, and Sacramento to form what we refer to as the Capital Corridor Multi-County Partnership, or MCP. The idea here was that pooling funds would enable us to more efficiently leverage resources across our three counties, which in fact, it has done. The MCP is supported by, is supported and guided by an advisory committee, which includes a member of the Board of Supervisors from each county, which here is Supervisor Natoli, as well as a representative from the County Executive's Office and the Ag Commissioner. So, this committee meets twice annually to kind of talk about programming as well as to think about budget needs, which are then agreed upon and negotiated through each county's individual budget process. So, what you see here is a snapshot of our 2020-21 budget by source. And I apologize, this is a little, a little old. We are about to get our new numbers, which I'm happy to share with the board when we have them. But this is, this is relatively representative of what the breakdown looks like with county contributions consisting of somewhere between 20 and 25%. So, as I just noted, Cooperative Extension is just emerging from a relatively long period of diminished resources. Very happily for us, 2021 saw a major increase in state support, which effectively brought us back to. us back to pre-COVID funding levels. It included a 5% increase essentially for, for cost of living, as well as a, an ongoing augmentation of $32 million. So in addition to enabling significant hiring and program expansion statewide, we are thrilled that this funding is going to enable us to bring on four new advisors serving Sacramento, which essentially means four new program areas. A little close here. So this funding additionally will mean resources to support some of our core volunteer and youth education programs, mostly in the form of administrative and management support. So getting into what we actually do, a couple of programs that many of you are probably familiar with. For over 100 years, Sacramento County 4H has delivered hands-on learning where youth and adults work together to really affect community change. We offer a number of outstanding after-school programs, which include Youth Experiences in Science, 4H on the Wild Side, which is an environmental education program, 4H Water Wizards, and Cooking Academy. We provide a resident camp, day camps, and what many of us are most familiar with, which is our Community Club Program. Despite COVID and its toll on programs like this, we still had a remarkable 581 club members in '21, '22, and served over 1,200 youth and after-school programs. Another exciting and growing program area for us is our Community Nutrition and Health Program, which is really focused on engaging underserved communities in the areas of healthy eating and an active lifestyle. And this program has historically been primarily funded through our Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program, or FNAP, however, now includes some really substantial funding from CalFresh Healthy Living, which is in the process of launching a program this year. So you'll hear more from us about that. But combined, these programs leveraged over $700,000 in federal funding to support this kind of work in Sacramento last year, last fiscal year. In addition to our wonderful 4H nutrition, 4H staff and nutrition staff, some of whom are here today, we are fortunate to have advisors supporting both of these programs. So Marcel Horowitz serves as our team lead for nutrition and Mary Ann Byrd for 4H.
Want to raise your hand, so everybody, no, I know some of you.
Yeah, please do, please do.
Okay, great.
So another couple of programs that you're probably pretty familiar with are Master Gardeners work to extend research-based home gardening information to the public. Like many community programs, our Master Gardeners and Master Food Preservers did a really fantastic job of pivoting to virtual programming over the last two years. However, are very happily getting back to in-person. Last year, 216 Master Gardeners.
Hard to tend to garden virtually, though, right?
Very true.
I'm kidding you.
But probably if anyone could, they could. Last year, 216 certified volunteers provided over 1,200 hours of service to the Sacramento community, including the upkeep of the gorgeous Fair Oaks Horticultural Center. They also produced 42 educational videos, which you can still find online, and worked to continually staff the Master Gardener Helpline and, and Help Desk. The Master Food Preservers are another volunteer-driven program with the goal of teaching research-based best practices for safe home food preservation. As of this year, the Master Food Preservers had 38 certified volunteers who provided more than almost 1,500 hours of training and technical assistance to the public, as well as 25 classes related to home food preservation.
Can I just ask, because I know that COVID certainly had an impact on it, but one of the things that I would note from some of the, certainly the country fairs and festivals throughout the county, you know, that oftentimes the food preservers were there, sometimes the master gardeners, but just a really important resource and a way to, I think, broaden the understanding. So is that integrated into the program? Again, you're still relying on volunteers, but I think it's a really important way to, particularly in communities that, where you have, you know, a presence of 4H, but also I think Master Gardeners countywide, whether you're in the cities or in the county, and I think the Master Food Preservers likewise, that if that's not, I think it should always be included, again, depending on people's availability on a Saturday or Sunday. But that's an exposure that I think has dividends beyond just, you know, putting something on a website or word of mouth. And again, we have tremendous programs, certainly in this county that I'm aware of, and I think obviously other board members are as well. But I just think that, again, requires volunteers showing up at, on a Saturday or Sunday oftentimes. But is that, because it wasn't mentioned here, it just says volunteer service. So are, is that part of what's in the volunteer service, or is it more?
Absolutely, yes. And I would say, this is a growing program area for us, led by Wendy Weston, and they are all over the place. And Wendy's recently increased her, her FTE for us and is, is at all the events constantly. So I appreciate the, the encouragement.
Yeah. Well, I think it ties into certainly what you're doing in nutrition, certainly working with the, you know, production agricultural community, but I think just the interest in organic fruits and vegetables, but people, you know, making their budget stretch further, eating healthy. Again, I can't tell you how many times over the years that I've, you know, encounter folks and, you know, I always learn something just from, you know, engaging with people who are involved in these programs, whether they be volunteers, people having expertise, certainly the leadership that comes through the, the program itself. But there's tremendous value, and I think oftentimes it may be a little underappreciated just because you're there, you're doing it. In some cases, like with 4H, you've been there for 100 years. But it's an important aspect, and I think it really contributes to many benefits of people's lives, you know, whatever their age, whatever their walking life, whatever the community they hail from, so.
Yeah, thank you. Really good way to stretch the dollar right now. So in addition to our volunteer programs, we also have nine advisors who operate within the areas of agriculture and pest management. Much of the emphasis of these programs is really centered around climate change adaptation, sustainable use of inputs and natural resources, and better reaching underserved agricultural producers. So I'm going to go through some of those folks real quick and their program areas. I'm going to start with our Livestock and Natural Resources Program, which is led by Morgan Doran, whom many of you are familiar with as our most recent County Director. Morgan conducts research and education related to livestock production and natural resource management. Conrad Mathesius runs our Agronomy Program and focuses on field crop management and specifically soil health, sustainability strategies to reduce nitrogen inputs. Margaret Lloyd, who is with us today, runs our Small Farm Program, which focuses on smaller scale and often organic producers, and includes a particular focus on supporting Mong, Mian, and Spanish-speaking producers. Catherine Jarvis Sheehan serves as our Orchard Systems Advisor and focuses her research on sustainable production strategies in orchard systems, and in particular on methods for mitigating some of the impacts of warming winters. Some other folks, Rachel Long serves as a longtime pest management advisor. She covers forage crops and dry beans with a particular focus on water quality and integrated pest management in those systems. Carrie Winbill Rojas serves as our Urban Integrated Pest Management Advisor in a part-time capacity and specifically supports and evaluates IPM programs for pests around homes, landscapes, and structures. We have a couple of advisors who are not based in our counties but serve Sacramento, and those are Michelle Leinfelder Miles, who focuses specifically on crops grown in the Delta, including alfalfa forage, small grains, and rice. And Whitney Brimde Forest, who focuses on rice with a particular interest in weed issues and herbicide resistance. And I would be remiss in failing to mention Jean Meow, who is an emeritus professor, but continues to play a very essential role providing technical assistance to vegetable crop growers despite being retired. So I just covered a lot of programs, and I want to just return to this funding augmentation that I mentioned, because it has really set the table for some significant program expansion, which is actually already underway. So we have just hired a Regional Food Systems Advisor, Olivia Henry, and hope to be, and also just brought on an Environmental Horticulture Advisor, Joanna Solins, who just started earlier this month. We are in the process of hiring a Vegetable Crops Advisor to, to give Jean some relief and hope to be accepting applications for a full-time Urban Integrated Pest Management Advisor, probably around the start of the new year. And as you may know, all of these folks typically start their work with a very kind of robust needs assessment and stakeholder outreach. So that, that informs their work going forward, and do not be surprised if you see them out in the community. So to close, we are, you know, very excited and energized about this period of growth and what it will mean for Sacramento County citizens, and are looking forward to updating everybody about this in years to come.
Thanks, Susan. Did you introduce everybody, Sarah, with you? I think I saw a couple of folks that maybe not got introduced.
No. Would folks want to quickly say their name and their programmatic affiliation?
The After School Program, 4H.
Burnell Johnson, After School Program, 4H.
Jen Higgins, Sacramento, 4H, and I also cover Solano and Yolo in a newly expanded position as the Regional Supervisor.
Oh, Richard.
Michelle Ross, Sacramento, 4H Program.
And this is Michelle's very first day at work. We're very excited to have her.
Very good. Welcome aboard. Thank you, feel welcome.
Wendy Weston, I'm the Sacramento County Volunteer Coordinator for Master Food Preservers, and we have a lot of fun.
But we grow things.
That's true.
I'm Judy Wilber, I coordinate the Master Gardener Volunteers here in Sacramento.
How many years, Judy? A long time. She's been here through the battles, but thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Judy.
20 years now. I've been very proud to serve the Master Gardener County.
Great, thanks, Judy. Yes, thanks, Judy. I think you introduced the rest of the folks.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, welcome to the first, our first day, but also those are a long time, many years in, you know, serving this community and certainly the, our fellow counties and all the various things you do. Again, I, I would just say, I think sometimes it's kind of invisible to folks, but it's there, and you're doing good work, certainly helping both production agriculture, but folks that are backyard gardeners, but I think nutrition, helping the next generation to understand animal husbandry and horticulture, environment, all the things that are really important to day-to-day life and to a good quality of life. So thanks, Susan, for being here. My colleague is Sue Frost.
Oh, I, I really enjoyed your presentation. I was wondering, your Cooperative Extension, do you have regular meetings and do you have a membership? And where do people go to find more information about getting involved?
Great question. We have boatloads of regular meetings, but they typically are sort of by program area. And our website is, is pretty good in terms of providing information about all the various program areas that we have. So probably that would be a good way to start, or just sort of reaching out to me if you had a particular interest. But lots of different ways to plug in.
And what's your web, UC?
Our website is, UCC, what is it? Basically, if you were to just Google UC Cooperative Extension, Capital Corridor, it'll take you right there.
All right. Okay. That, and I really am interested in the food preservation and the vegetable gardening, and I'm wondering why my vegetable garden. Yeah, you know, this year, I know so many people, their vegetable garden did not do well this year, and mine was one of those. And so I want to talk to you guys. Did yours do well? I, I know everyone I talked to, I don't know what's going on.
It was that virtual irrigation. You got to tune it up.
Mine never started, so.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Susan. Any other comments? Again, I know the Horticulture Center in Fair Oaks has been longstanding, but that's, you know, I've visited different program facilities and so forth, but I mean, that really is a tremendous, you know, resource for the community, you know, has to be located in Fair Oaks. But I know you have people come from even other counties outside of the ones that are in the Capital Corridor group that, to see and to get demonstrations. I know I've had a chance to be out there on a couple of different occasions over the years, and what a treasure, but just, I mean, the, the resource that all of you bring, and then I think the volunteer component is. And I would just say, counties have stepped up, even though through lean times, we, you know, we looked at a lot of different, you know, program areas for reductions and so forth, but, you know, there's been a longstanding commitment because of financial match. And I know, having spent some time with Morgan after the reorganization, and obviously more recently, Susan, that that's key. And again, I just say that the Exec's Office and certainly our County Ag Commissioner have been involved. Who's the designated now, Ann, for, because that was Bruce prior to?
I think it's Dave Devandy.
Oh, Dave Devandy. So you're our ag lead? Okay. All right. So you're in charge of making sure the budget request gets run through the process. Anyway, but again, that's been, that's key, but I think just the cooperation and the good work, so. Okay, well, I know we've gone long. Thank you for all being here. Congratulations to some of the newer additions to the team, but we certainly look forward to a longstanding relationship with this community and continue to build on good work over the past 100 years, so.
Thank you, and a very warm word of gratitude for all that, all the time and energy and attention that you have provided to UC Cooperative Extension in Sacramento. So we will miss you and look forward to talking about what comes next.
Okay, thanks, Susan. I appreciate it. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any callers on this? If not, we got a lot of exposure. Channel 14, we have a lot, a lot of followers, so hopefully some folks will pick up on that website and follow through. We're going to take one more item from the Morning Gend, that's item 66. We're going to hold 67 through 69 until the afternoon, because we do have a closed session. So we'll go ahead and call item 66, and then we'll go take a noontime afternoon break, and we'll be back for remaining items this afternoon, so go ahead, folks.
Item 66 is County Service Area Number One, Zone Number One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for the Sings Estates Subdivision.
Okay, Cheyenne, go ahead. I think Wendy had something for the clerk.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli, Members of the Board. I am Cheyenne Raymond, a civil engineer with the County Engineering Division. The Sings Estates project is in the North Vineyard Station specific plan area and is located on Gerber Road approximately 2,000 feet east of Waterman Road. The project proposes to create 30 single-family residential parcels. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance. County Service Area Number One provides these services throughout the unincorporated county. The project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process. Excuse me. So the, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process for County Service Area Number One to satisfy this condition, and on September 9th, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owners. Currently, the project site consists of two parcels that are in the street light only benefit category and have an annual assessment of $2.56. The proposed change is to the decorative street and safety light benefit category for the 30 single-family parcels and two additional parcels. The current rate for this benefit category is $76.52, and the total annual charge for the entire project will be $2,448.64. If your board has no questions, staff recommends that you open the public hearing to consider all written and oral testimony, close the public hearing, direct the clerk of the board to tabulate the ballot, and if there is no majority protest, consider adopting the attached resolution. That concludes my presentation. There are Members of DOT in the audience, and it's myself to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Okay, welcome, Kamal. Is there any questions for Cheyenne? Seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The public hearing is open. Do we have any, I have no sign, speaker signed up. Do we have anybody on the phone that wishes to?
And I have no callers.
Okay. Since we have no one wishing to address the board, I'm going to close the public hearing and then return to our clerk to open the ballots, and we'll do the tabulation.
All right. I'm going to open the one ballot that I received. Okay, so we have a
Okay, so we have an official protest ballot from the legal owner NorCal S Builders Incorporated, parcel number 0660080008000, and 06600800090000. Site address is 9437 Gerber Road for the annual service charge of $76.52 per single-family resident parcel, and they are in favor.
Okay, very good. That's the only ballot received, so with that, then I'll turn it back to Cheyenne to go to our resolution and fill in the blanks, and then we'll bring it forward for Board Action.
Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the Board had received zero written protest. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Okay, very good. Thank you for reading that into the record then. So if there's no further questions or comments, I would move the resolution with the additions as noted, and that's my motion.
Second.
Been moving seconded then to approve the resolution, and staff recommendations outlined, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you, Cheyenne. Thank you, Kamal. All right, with that, then, we're going to break for lunch. We do have a closed session with a number of items, and so we'll hold over the items, remaining morning items, pick those up when we come back into open session. So we'll recess into closed session and return some. I don't know if we can be up by 2:00? Close. Okay, all right. Thanks. Wanted to call back into session the October 25, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and thank those who carried over from this morning, and we have some business from this morning to complete, and then we'll get into the afternoon session. So we appreciate your patience. And with that, I'll turn to our clerk to call the roll, establish a quorum, and get underway.
All right. Good afternoon, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
And I'll go ahead and call item 67 into the record. Approve and authorize submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development of the 2023 One Year Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnerships Program, known as Home American Rescue Plan Program and Emergency Solutions Grant for Projects and Programs, Amendment of Prior Years Action Plans, Amendment to the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Budget, Authorization to Enter Into an Agreement with Municipalities for Regional Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Rescue, excuse me, Fair Housing Contract and to Solicit, Award, and Execute Contract and Home American Rescue Plan.
Great. All right, with that, Celia, you're going to kick it off?
Good afternoon. Celia Ineges, Program Manager here at SHRA. I have a few changes, so I'm just going to go, if it's all right with Madam Clerk, to use the overhead, so some minor changes. I know we've had a long day, so I'm going to try and speed through the presentation without missing any important pieces. So today is the approval of the 2023 Action Plan for various funding sources from HUD, from the Housing and Urban Development Department. So just as an overview, every year, every five years, you prepare an analysis of impediments to fair housing, and the request today is funding and authorization to proceed with that release of an RFP to get those proposals. That will be done in 2023, and then in 2024, we'll do a consolidated plan. We're required by HUD to prepare that consolidated plan, which is your, essentially your guiding principles based on your analysis of impediments to fair housing. And then every year, we come before you to prepare, to approve an action plan, funding activities and programs for the coming year. Just quickly, a couple of, three accomplishments in the county, including the reconstruction, or a new outdoor fitness center at the Ed Smith Community Center, or, I'm sorry, Community Park, a new roof at Gene Harvey Dunn and the Delta, and improvements to two buildings at Mather Community Campus that were in dire need of a new boiler and a roof. And then this is just a high-level overview of the activities for public services. You know, of course, we do Meals on Wheels, we provide funding for emergency shelter and home repair throughout the county, and of course, operations at Mather. Going on to the future projects, so we have these, including improvements around, in the south area, in Oak Park Fruit Ridge Pocket area, some ADA and sidewalk improvements, the South Sacramento Affordable Housing Pedestrian Improvements. So this is going to support the recent project that just got under construction, courtyard, sorry, courtyard.
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone, sorry. Too many C projects, which is a great thing to have. So Cornerstone, which is both multifamily and affordable housing. It is just down the street from Nicholas Park, and so these improvements will improve that connection between the two and the connection up to 47th. Also proposed is William Pond ADA Fishing Pier improvements, construction funding for the real lights, real Linda Streetlights. And then we have one minor, one change to the program, which is Rosemont Streetlights, Phase 3, design funding, replacing the Mather Community Campus building improvements. No additional funding, it's the same amount at 325. This is just another way to look at it with the funding amounts. We'll continue to provide funding for a variety of housing programs using CDBG, ESG, and HOME. No changes to the program. There is one, one-time addition of funding, which is the under HOME, Home American Rescue Plan. The county received 11.9 million in these funds to address and prevention of homelessness during the pandemic. In 20, these funds were awarded in April of 2021. In September of 2021, HUD issued guidelines that required a plan, and so that plan is attached in the staff report and is attached to the resolution for approval. So those funds will be used as, for future permanent supportive housing projects in the coming years, and it's a great match for the state's Home Key Program.
Ms. Chair. Yes, Ms. Serna. Celia, is that 11 million in addition to the 301 million that the county received from?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll also continue to do the fair housing activities, and of course, seniors, the programs for the seniors, including Meals on Wheels, and as well as programs for homelessness. So this is, would be the revised attachment page in the attachment to reflect those changes. We will need to make sure that that is, whatever action is approved, that this change, if approved by the Board, is read into the record. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, I'm going to turn to my colleagues. I know I had a couple of questions and comments, but let me see if any others first here. Celia, if I could, and again, I know I had a chance to talk with LaShelle earlier today and Siobhan on this, and as relates to the Rosemont Streetlighting, and again, I apologize for any confusion with my colleague District 3, and I think that's all been ironed out in your recommendation relative to the accessibility on the William Pond Fishing Access. But I guess one of the things that I wanted to ask about here, you bring this as a recommendation, and I know that the capital reserve is fairly low, but what I would like to have a conversation around is to, because my understanding was early in the summer, before some of the staff work went on, that there actually was a plug number somewhere closer to 600,000 at their community campus. We had some discussion about that, we're going to, there are other ways to accomplish that. And so by the time, and again, I did not have the benefit, as I explained to my colleague and to LaShelle and Siobhan, when I was talking on the phone, and you were on the call as well Friday, I didn't have the staff report in front of me, so we're talking, you know, from your base of knowledge, but I didn't, again, fortunately, didn't have that in front of me. But what I wanted to ask about was the possibility, I guess, for more consideration, but that I'd like, if at all possible, to get to 2/3 of the estimated amount for the streetlights, which would be $400,000, without cutting anything in particular, that's not the desired action here, but is to maybe take 58,000 and some change from the capital reserve and apply that to, and I'm going to offer, it's 58,983. And then I guess I'd ask the question of LaShelle, because in looking at the budget, obviously you have to administer these programs, and there's 772,648 in administration. If I was looking to get to 400,000, the possibility of taking 16,031 from the administration portion of this and apply that to the streetlighting project, so even 400,000. Now, if that's going to have a negative effect, obviously you budget around, you know, anticipated expenses and so forth, but I wanted to ask that of you and Celia of the show.
So as I understand it, you're recommending that around 16,000 or so come from the CDBG planning and admin?
Yes, right.
Line item?
I was asking about that, that's what I was suggesting, but again, if there's going to be programmatic impacts, I guess I'd need to know that, so.
No, I think that that line item could support, because there is planning work in there, so we could look to see exactly what portion of the streetlights project that could be actually charged against the planning.
Okay, okay. And then I would just suggest that, again, I know it's might not be your recommendation, it's a fairly modest capital reserve anyway, but this is a capital project, and I know that if you run short, that you're pretty good at juggling that, waiting until the following year. But I do think in order to advance the work in that project, that 400,000 of the, I think it's about 620,000 was the estimated cost of the Phase 3 of the streetlighting. Recognizing 400,000 doesn't accomplish it, but I'd like to get that underway. So again, unless you have major heartburn with that, Celia or LaShelle, I would offer those as suggestions, and certainly makes the rest of the recommendation whole from the perspective of what you've bringing forward, so.
Yeah, that's definitely doable.
Okay. All right, LaShelle, okay?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, those were my questions, and supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to thank you once again for the streetlights and real, and I know that they're going to be very excited. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so let's go to, I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Do we have anybody on the phone, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. Anybody here in the audience wish to address the item 67? All right, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the Board. So we have a recommended action. Thank you for your report, Celia, and I know you had a whole team here this morning, so thank you for being with us this morning. All right, I guess I would just offer then for a motion, certainly to move the staff recommendation, but to modify, I guess, the chart, you would make those modifications that we would put in for the Rosemont Streetlights, 400,000, and that would be made up from production in the, or are you, would you keep the line up the same, LaShelle, or would you move the money to that from the planning administration?
I think we need to go ahead and move that so that we can just update the chart.
Okay. So it'd be 16,017, I think? Excuse me, 16,013 from that category, so leave you with 756,631. And then also would then modify the reserve or capital reserve from 258,983 to just 200,000 and move the 58,983 to the Rosemont Streetlighting Project. Okay. Have you on motion? Have you checked?
Ms. Chair, no, I'll move approval of the staff recommendation with those amendments that you just memorialized.
Okay. All right, since we're moving seconded, nothing further than, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and I'd like to get a copy of the amendment, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Celia. Thank you, LaShelle, to you and your staff, and for all the work that goes on. And it's turned to our county staff, to Siobhan and Dave, who are tasked with this as well, so great. Okay.
Okay, for item 68, authorize the Director of Airports to increase public parking rates at Sacramento International Airport up to a maximum of 5% per year over the next five years.
Okay, all right, we have our airport staff to introduce us.
Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the Board. Sherry Thompson, Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance, Department of Airports. I have eight quick slides that I'll go over, but as you are aware, earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors, this board approved the Airport Master Plan, which is really the roadmap for propelling SMF Forward, and was the first step in getting it going. I have the brief presentation today to explain why the airport is asking to increase public parking rates at the airport. So SMF Forward is comprised of five distinct projects. Three of them are on the land side or the public side and are depicted on this drawing. And if you look at the drawing, north is to your left, all of the three projects that I will speak about will have impacts, but will ultimately approve, improve airport parking. So letters A and B on the map are the new Consolidated Ground Transportation Center and all of the associated roadway changes, and this ground transportation center will be the central location to consolidate buses, shuttles, taxis, and other alternative modes of transportation, including the area where future planning and right-of-way for the RT Green Line would be. The purple box at the bottom is the new, the second parking garage, and then items D, F, and G are the new Consolidated Rental Car Facility. So these current and upcoming parking projects, along with a fairly long list of enabling projects, is going to cost about $370 million, which is the first reason for our need to increase the parking rates. Sacramento International Airport has about 18,000 revenue-producing parking spots. 2019 was our busiest year on record for passenger traffic at just over 13 million passengers. And now, coming out of COVID, we are looking at meeting or exceeding those numbers this year, which is a great problem to have, but not without its challenges. So that's why we are switching now, we have switched from recovery to growth. So here on this slide, you'll see those parking and enabling projects that I just spoke about, that total 370 million. This list does not include the rental car facility, which my colleague Chris Wimsat will discuss in the following presentation. With SMF Forward comes the need for new parking and ground transportation amenities, which will mitigate and/or enhance overall passenger experience. The chart shows estimated costs and estimated completion dates, and we will move forward and implement these as quickly as possible, given the environmental and other constraints. This graph is one of many that we use, and it's simply a supply and demand model that we can refer to when making decisions about parking projects, and whether or not we can afford to close or lose any parking at a given time. And it also, it also shows us when our demands may exceed capacity. So what we look at at the airport are load factors, and that essentially is how many seats are coming in on what size aircraft and how many passengers are in those seats. And then the red line here on this chart indicates the parking spaces available at any given time. We monitor our passenger enplanements and airline load factors and future projected load factors very closely, and these are actual numbers that we put into a host of models and can track on a daily basis. But we also look at trends in passenger behaviors, such as their parking preference, their length of stay and mode of transportation. And what we found is these behaviors have shifted through COVID. Prior to COVID, our economy lots, the ones that are further out, closest to I-5, those are the ones that filled and closed first, and then we would have to force our passengers into the parking garage and the closer-in parking lots. COVID changed that, and now our close-in parking is filling up first and only leaving the far-out parking lots available to our customers. The length of stay has also increased from 3.03 days to 3.74 days, and while this doesn't seem like a lot, it makes a big difference in how our lots turn over and reopen, and then for the next peak time, fill up again. So just this last month alone, we've had to open and operate one of our two overflow lots, as all of our paid parking lots have filled and closed.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Serna.
Thank you. In addition to this information that's presented graphically, what about any, you know, communication from our flying public, people that we serve out the airport, in terms of their experience when and if they have missed flights because of the inability to find parking, or they when and if they have missed flights because of the inability to find parking, or they, you know, have otherwise encountered unexpected difficulty in, you know, whether it's economy or not, I know myself and others in this room have experienced some challenges parking out there, and, you know, I happen to live very close to the airport, so if I go there and can't find parking, I actually have enough time to go back home and then take a cab or an Uber, but I've also heard a number of other horror stories about folks, you know, either missing flights or making it just in time to board, so do we keep track of that as kind of a data point?
The airlines do, and I don't have that information with me today, but the airlines do, but we too have heard from the customers, and again, typically they've, what's filling up first now is the closer-in garages, so they don't have to wait on the buses, or they don't have to make long walks, so we do hear them, and we are getting that same feedback.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
So, given what we are seeing, we are concerned that we may come very close to running out of parking this calendar year, and because of that, we have constructed and developed temporary and contingency parking plans, which is the second reason for our increase. As I mentioned previously, we have about 18,000 revenue-producing spots, but our temporary and contingency parking lots do not have revenue control system in there, so it's critical that we move as quickly as possible to build permanent parking enhancements. And you can see, given that we have 370 million in these parking projects that we need to pay for over the next few years, we took an in-depth look at our rates compared to our peer airports in other, and other local downtown lots and garages, and you can see on this slide that what we found is that across all categories, Sacramento International Airport is significantly below the average rates, 19 to 40% below, and it's important to note that we have not increased rates across the board since 2012, other than a $1 increase in our garage back in 2017. So you can see that information on this slide with our peer airports, and when we received this information early summer, these airports were also in the process of determining whether or not they were going to raise their rates at some point. And again, this is the downtown and nearby parking garages and lots, and how we compare well below those local lots. So our proposed rates, as shown in this bottom slide here, for the next five years, we would like to increase 5% per year for the next five years, and even with those increases, the proposed rates maintain competitive pricing against local and nearby airport parking competition. And then the pie chart on the right is a snapshot in time of who is parking at our lots, and the info is based on geo fences that we had around, that we have around our parking lots, and our consultants are able to track cell phone data in those areas, which is linked back to billing addresses, so the roughly 40/60 split that you see on that pie chart is a number of people, is the people who have billing addresses inside and outside of the county, 40% of the parkers in and 60% of the parkers outside. And our catchment area is, it's a large catchment area that spans from the Oregon border down to the Central Valley and from Solano County, Napa County, all the way to Lake Tahoe. So in closing, the proposed rate change will increase our annual parking revenues from about 65 million to 95 million, and will finance the proposed improvements that I spoke about today for the parking at Sacramento International Airport.
Thank you, Sherry, we have some board member comments, supervisor Serna?
Thank you, and thank you, Sherry, for the presentation. Is that, on that last point, in terms of the financing, is that financing going to take the form of revenue bonds?
Our goal is to pay for that, the majority of it with the cash from the parking revenue.
Okay, but yeah, but that's what I mean, you're going to secure the revenue bonds with the additional revenue, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other board member questions or comments? I know we did get some written comments, one earlier this morning and one just delivered to our desk here, so I don't have anybody signed up to speak in chambers on this, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody on phone?
We do not have any callers.
Okay, all right, so I'll bring you back to the board, supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Thanks again for the presentation and the information. As I noted in my earlier comments, it's no surprise, I think, to most of us that use SMF to travel frequently, that parking is becoming more and more scarce, and I think it makes a lot of sense to not just plan for the future in terms of the branding, SMF Forward, but to do so, you know, with an eye towards making sure that we don't overcharge folks for using the airport and parking their vehicles, and I think the charts that really resonated with me in your presentation, I think, really speak to some of the correspondence that we received late about the concern over parking rates going up, really does prove the point that we are actually lower than our competing regional airports, as well as with other revenue parking spaces in and around Sacramento, especially downtown Sacramento. So, with that, you know, I don't always cherish the idea of raising rates or taxes, but I think in this instance, this makes a lot of sense to make sure that we do have the resources necessary to make the traveling experience at SMF one that we can be proud of and that our patrons can use without feeling like they might have to turn around and go take a taxi to get back to the airport, so with that, I'll move the item, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and to approve staff recommendations outlined as it relates to parking rates at Sacramento International. If there's nothing further, please vote.
Okay, unanimous vote.
Okay, great, thanks, Sherry, next item, please.
Item 69 is to authorize the implementation and collection of an $8 per transaction day customer facility charge from airport rental car companies for purposes of designing, financing, and constructing a consolidated rental car facility at Sacramento International Airport.
Mr. Wimsat?
Thank you, Chair, Natoli, members of the board, my name is Chris Wimsat, I'm the Deputy Director for Finance and Administration for the Department of Airports, so I wanted to give a little bit, just a little bit of background on the customer facility charge. The customer facility charge is a charge levied by rental car companies to people that rent cars at Sacramento International Airport, and it's remitted to the airports on a monthly basis, it's governed by California state law, and as you will probably recall, the Department of Airports came to the Board of Supervisors in early 2019 to request the implementation of a $10 per transaction customer facility charge, with the ultimate goal being to use that $10 per transaction, CFC, to move forward on conceptual design for a new consolidated rental car facility at SMF. The intention at that point was to then transition to an alternate customer facility charge, once we'd reached a point of conceptual design where we were ready to move forward, and so that's why I'm here today, is to talk about the implementation of that alternate CFC. So, Sherry covered the land site SMF Forward projects pretty well, just as a reminder, the consolidated rental car facility, as envisioned, is in boxes D, F, and G on the map here right now, and this project will replace the current consolidated rental car facility at SMF. So, as you're probably aware, the current facility is, it's dated, it's inconvenient, it's really insufficient for the traffic and for the passengers that go through Sacramento International Airport today. It was one of the first rental car facilities built in the country in 1967, and the last major update was completed in 1993, or nearly 30 years ago. Most of the customer complaints that we receive at Sacramento International Airport actually relate to the shuttles that take passengers to and from the terminals and to the consolidated rental car facility, so our goal in building a new consolidated rental car facility is to mitigate these issues that we frequently receive negative feedback about, and build a new facility that can serve passenger needs for the next several decades, and to also eliminate the need for busing and promote a more walkable campus. So the estimated cost of the facility right now is about 390 million, and the proposed source of funding is the alternate customer facility charge that we're here to talk about today. The new consolidated rental car facility would be located south of the Terminal A parking garage, would again promote a walkable campus by reducing or eliminating the need for busing associated with rental cars, and would enhance the overall customer experience, so these renderings, these are renderings that are associated with rental car facilities that are similar to the facility that we're envisioning building. It's also worth noting that current rental car companies are in favor of this facility, they're in favor of this proposal, and they have included letters of support that are in the board documents today. So, where do SMF rental, car renters live? Overall, based on data that we received from rental car companies using ZIP code data for the transactions that have been completed at Sacramento International, about 2.3% of car renters live inside Sacramento County, with the remainder coming from outside Sacramento County, and that makes sense when we look at our map here of nonstop destinations to and from Sacramento International, the lion's share of people who rent cars are coming from these destinations from across the country and across North America. So, this next slide, the chart on the left kind of shows that several other California airports have implemented a per transaction day customer facility charge, specifically over the last decade to finance consolidated rental car facilities, and we'll see that within that last decade, San Jose, San Diego, Palm Springs, and LAX have all gone to the state maximum of $9 per transaction day for up to five days. What we're requesting and proposing is an $8 per transaction day charge for up to five days at SMF, but it's not just in California, and as we can see in the chart on the right, these are, this is a chart of similar-sized airports who have implemented a per transaction day customer facility charge across the country for purposes of designing, financing, and constructing a consolidated rental car facility. So, again, the proposed source of funding for the facility as the customer facility charge, per state law, instituting an alternate customer facility charge in the state of California requires an independent audit to be conducted that justifies the rate that's being requested, in this case, the $8 per day, and that audit is also included in the board materials, and then also a public hearing, which is part of the purpose of my presentation today. And overall, annual CFC revenues related to this change in charge would increase from about $6 million to $18 million under the proposed plan. And so, kind of as a final slide here, this chart shows, on the X-axis along the bottom shows the number of rental days since the beginning of 2019, when the original customer facility charge went into effect, this shows the number of rental days that the, each percent, that are allocated for each percentage of people that rent cars, so the Y-axis along the right shows the percentage of people who rent for that number of days, along the left side shows the customer facility charge that would be associated with that number of rental days. So as we can see on the gray line, the current CFC is $10, no matter how long you, no matter how long somebody rents a car for. Under the proposal, the minimum would be $8, so for somebody who rents a car for one day, their charge would go down from $10 to $8, but the maximum would increase from $8 to $40. The average rental car days at SMF are about four, so the average CFC would go from $10 to about $32. So the recommended action today is to open a public hearing on the proposed implementation and collection, receive public testimony, and then after consideration, consider the resolution to adopt the alternate customer facility charge.
All right, thank you for your presentation, do you have a question, Mr. Serna?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Received some correspondence from a constituent who pointed out that, I guess this is based on their experience, that when car rental locations other than SMF are closed, and that might be days, certain days of the weeks, weekends, for instance, that the only place to rent a vehicle is at SMF, even if you're local? Is that the case, is that your understanding?
That's a good question, I'm not entirely sure, I would imagine if there were no other places to rent than SMF, as an airport, we are open during, when the traveling public is coming in.
And then my follow-up question was going to be, or is, if that is the case, do we know the rental behavior of local car renters versus travelers? So, for instance, would, do we know if local car renters are more likely to rent for a single day versus multiple days, and therefore, do we know whether or not local renters might enjoy a $2 discount?
I don't have that information right now.
Okay.
Interesting question, though.
All right, so there's no one in chambers that can answer the question about the, or maybe there's, maybe my colleagues know, but I don't oftentimes rent cars in my own city, so, or my own county, but I would be surprised if their other car rental outlets don't offer their, you know, the ability to rent all days of the week, I don't know if that's the case, looks like Mr. Kennedy might have the answer.
Well, strictly because you've seen my car, so I actually do rent regularly, and I can tell you, I've never had a problem at any time of the week, you know.
Okay, all right, very good, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or board members or somebody else, do we have anybody, no one signed to speak, anyone on the phone?
No, we have no callers.
Okay, all right, so we've opened a public hearing, and we have no one coming forward, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, noting the audit, and is this, maybe, if you come just for a second, Chris, the audit that was included here, is this the, one of the auditors that the county normally does business with, obviously I recognize the name, but I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yes, yes, this is MGO who does the, much of the financial auditing work.
Again, not really relevant to today's discussion, but the audit covered a lot of things, and it noted that due to the change in the magnetic field of the earth, that you actually had to renumber the runways because of the three-foot shift, is that a natural occurrence?
Yes, yeah, runways are labeled based on their orientation to magnetic poles, so as the magnetic pole shifts every now and then, a runway will need to be relocated.
What's that cost us when Earth decides to change the magnetic field, all the restriping and everything?
That's a great question, I'm not sure I can find out.
Of course, we don't control it, so, and again, I just found it fascinating reading through the audit, there was a number of other things, certain related to, obviously, the matter at hand here, but, okay, thanks. All right, Phil?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, so if there are no further questions or comments, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded, to approve staff recommendations outlined, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, thanks to our airport staff. Okay, we'll move now to the afternoon items, so again, thanks folks for your patience.
Okay, so now we are at the report on COVID-19 response.
All righty, Dr. Casiri.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board, I have a very brief update. We did send you the, some information, and I just wanted to highlight a few things. One is, I believe the last time you did ask us about when the state of emergency was ending, and it sounds like we heard you and sent us an update, so the state will end the state of emergency on February the 28th, 2023, and the federal government is scheduled to end it on January 11th, 2023, unless they change it. Part of the reason for not doing it right away, because one of the questions we've been asked is, well, the levels are low right now, so why isn't it ending, is that both the federal and the state emergencies actually came with multiple waivers, some of those waivers were for eligibility for Medi-Cal, so they made it easier for people to actually be able to get onto Medi-Cal, there are also waivers for testing and vaccination, and waivers for liability, and also for licensing, there are a lot of additional license groups that were allowed to be able to provide vaccination in order to increase the number of places where people could get vaccinated, so all of those, right now, what the state is doing is- So all of those, right now, what the state is doing is going through all the waivers and finding out which ones they would like to be able to continue and find ways of being able to continue that. So this additional time allows them to do that. The other main reason also is we are going into a flu season, and I think you're all very aware that the last couple of years, the flu season has been mild, and partly because either we've had restrictions with lockdowns or we've had masking. So this is the first year where we are not going to have those restrictions in place. And so, of course, there is some concern about what the numbers are going to look like with the flu. And then there's also a virus called the respiratory syncytial virus, which can cause very severe disease in children. And then, of course, we also still have COVID, and Omicron is still producing subvariants. So of course, there's a question about what that's going to look like, and you've probably heard in the news talking about a tripe, endemic or something to that effect, and that's what they're talking about is a concern, that we're going to have all of these three viruses circulating. And so one of the questions that a lot of our partners have asked is, what can they do to protect themselves? And so I just wanted to quickly remind people that some of the ways to avoid getting sick and avoid getting any of these, and all of them are respiratory viruses, is one, we do have vaccine for COVID, and we have vaccine for the flu. So make sure that you, if you've been vaccinated before, you're up to date with your booster. We now have a bivalent booster that can protect against the Omicron. The other is, also, the flu vaccine is out now, so please make sure that you're up to date on those two. Of course, especially for people that have conditions that put them at risk, making a risk assessment when going into places where there is an increased risk, for example, closed spaces, crowded places, or close contact. We've been hearing a lot about the airport, it's going to be very busy with holidays coming up, and so people do need to think about that if they are going to fly, if they do have to fly, if they have to be in a crowded place. Masking is still a very good option. It is voluntary, but highly recommended, especially for people that have conditions that put them at risk. And for people that do have symptoms, to stay home, and if they do have severe symptoms, to seek medical care. So of course, we're watching to see what's going to happen over this flu season. We're hoping it will stay mild, but definitely will be on the ready if we need to ramp up with more vaccinations. And if everything remains the same, then the expectation is that we'll have the emergencies ending at the beginning of the next year. And we've had a discussion with OES partners, and we plan to also end the county state of emergency for COVID at the same time that the state ends theirs. So that's the end of my comments, so I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Casiri. So go to board members, see if there's any, yes, Supervisor Frost.
I am, in the last couple of weeks, there are some events that have taken place. Our legislature has approved a law that basically does not allow medical doctors to speak out against COVID, or they risk fines, or they risk losing their license. I think that's concerning when our medical community is no longer able to practice medicine. I'm also extremely concerned that the FDA and CDC have, are mandating, that we're mandating or heading toward mandating a childhood vaccine in order for our children to be in schools. And I feel like I can't not say something about that, because children do not get COVID, so why do they need to have an experimental mRNA shot in order to go to school when they don't get COVID? I think it's concerning, there's a catastrophic report of all kinds of adverse reactions in VAERS to this shot, and everything from heart attacks, arrhythmias, strokes, reproductive problems, loss of pregnancy. There are people that are in their 80s who are bleeding, reproductive bleeding. It's just neurologic reactions. It's, we don't know how this will play out, and COVID is gone, and we've had all these other, I guess what we're calling viruses. We don't really know what's causing it. I, I don't feel like I, in good conscience, can just not say anything about this. And so I'm just here to go on record that I think, I believe in freedom of choice, you know, I believe if people want to get the shot, that's fine, but to, to give a shot to our children who do not get COVID and die from COVID, to give an experimental shot to them just is not right, and I cannot condone it, and I do not support it personally. So I feel compelled to go on record, and I think even though we, even if we do end the COVID pandemic, are we going to end the vaccine? Or are we going to continue being in the vaccine sales business? The CDC and the FDA are not medical doctors. So now our medical doctors can no longer have an opinion, but a government agency that's not elected can instruct our, our whole medical, Western medical allopathic system. So it's a statement, it's not a question. I, I'm, I just wanted to go on record as making that statement, that this, we should wake up and try to see that there's something wrong here. Thank you.
May I respond, please?
Sure. Can I, can I ask a question first, because it might help the doctor respond?
Sure.
So Supervisor Frost felt compelled to say what she just said, so I feel very compelled to say, or ask the questions I'm going to ask of Dr. Casiri, because I'm compelled to make sure that we don't spread misinformation. The first statement she said is, children don't get COVID. So Dr. Casiri, is that true?
Children do get COVID, and some of them do get very severe disease. We have had a few deaths as well.
Okay, so the answer is another one of my questions, which was, do children die from COVID?
Yes, they can.
And one of her statements is, COVID is gone. Is COVID gone?
We have low levels of COVID, but the virus is still circulating, and we're still getting cases reported daily.
Okay. And then how about the CDC aren't medical doctors? Are there medical doctors that advise or work with the Centers for Disease Control?
The CDC and FDA have multiple doctors, many of them very highly regarded, and they're the ones who are providing the guidance that we are following.
And then lastly, I've asked this question of you many times, I'll ask it again because it's warranted here. Are you a medical doctor?
Yes, I am.
So the answers to the questions I just asked to clarify, what I took as great misinformation is coming from a medical doctor's perspective. So thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Serna. Before I go back to Supervisor Frost, did you want to?
No, I don't have anything further. I was going to clarify a few things. One, actually, I do have one thing to clarify, apart from what Supervisor Serna said, and that is that the COVID vaccine was not added to the number of vaccines that are required for children to go to school. I know that that, there was a proposal from the governor when the vaccine first came out, but they decided to wait on that, so it is not added. It is voluntary right now for children to get vaccinated. We do advise and definitely encourage parents to consider it, and many of them have gotten the vaccine, but it is not one of the required vaccines.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Casiri. Supervisor Frost?
I'd just like to say that statistically, .0027 of children are statistically listed as having died from COVID. That's almost, that's essentially a zero, statistical zero. And I'd also like to add that early on, and I think it was in March or April of 2020, the CDC handed down a directive that hospitals could determine someone had COVID if they had the respiratory symptoms without getting a test or proving that they had COVID. So the statistics that we have collected, that the CDC seems to be handing out, are difficult to really understand, because if doctors are just using, you know, in their opinion, someone has, you know, a respiratory distress, so therefore they have COVID, and that hospital can receive added, you know, money for COVID patients through, through the government, it kind of skews the statistics. And so it's difficult to really understand what the real statistics are. But if you just want to go to statistics, if you just look at year over year, all-cause deaths, the all-cause deaths increased drastically by 40% after the vaccine campaign started. So I think it's important to be aware and to just, I just, I don't feel, I don't understand why all of a sudden, the only treatment for everything is a vaccine. I'm, I'm not anti-vaccine. I had all my vaccines. My last vaccine was in the summer of 2020, but, you know, children don't die from COVID, very few have died from COVID. So giving them an experimental shot, mRNA shot, that we don't know what's in it. We don't have the literature. They're telling us comirnaty is approved, but comirnaty is not distributed in the United States, and we do not have the literature. We're still getting the emergency use authorization, which falls under a different liability shield, and there is no liability for the vaccine companies. So when parents line their kids up to get a shot, they may find that they wish they had some recourse, and they may not have it. So I, you know, I know you think it's misinformation. I'm glad we still have a.
No, I know it's misinformation.
I think, I'm glad we still have a country where we can have an opinion and respectfully disagree, and I thank you for that.
Okay. All right. Any other member of the board? Okay. Dr. Casiri, any else?
I'd just like to say again that the doctors that are working on COVID are doing this because they care for the people. None of us is in this for the money. And I know a lot of the doctors who've worked long hours, not even getting paid for the work that they were doing, and I just want to acknowledge the work that they have done in making sure that people are safe. And COVID is real. It has killed a lot of people, including a lot of people that we know ourselves. And so we're continuing to do the job that we need to do. And as far as statistics, I have provided statistics here. We have very good epidemiologists that are working on this, that are keeping up the dashboard. And if you would like, I can again present the information to you of the, what the numbers look like as far as COVID, as far as the deaths. This is all information I have presented before, and I thank you again for giving me the time to give you this update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri, and thank you for your regular reporting to this board, and certainly many, many times you've appeared over the course of nearly three years now on this and certainly related matters on numerous occasions. So appreciate that, certainly the efforts of the public health staff and folks that have worked very diligently to, as you said, to hopefully keep the community safe, but to be responsive to a variety of changes that have occurred along the way. And obviously, we continue to be under emergency orders, but I think, as you noted, come early part of next year, hopefully we'll be beyond it, not just with the emergency order, but also with, you know, having this all in the rearview mirror. So again, thank you for your work. Do we have any callers on, on this? I have no one in chambers, and so unless there's any other board comments, that's a receivable file. And again, we thank Dr. Casiri and her staff for being here today. Okay. With that then, let's continue to move into our afternoon agenda.
Okay. For item 71, this is the North Vineyard Greens Unit 3, Lot 5, a time extension for a vesting tentative subdivision map to divide 1.9 acres into 10 single-family residential lots in the RD5 zone for a property located east of Waterman Road and north of the intersection of Gerber Road and Waterman Road in the Vineyard community. And the environmental document is a prior supplemental environmental impact report.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Buhuli, Chris.
Right. Excuse me.
Want some water? We'll get your glass.
There's some water right next to you.
Sorry about that. Unexpected.
Gets you all choked up.
Does Project have sentimental value for you, Chris, or something?
Yeah, it's a special project. Okay, I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you on this item and the next one. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, board members. Chris Buhuli, principal planner with the Planning and Environmental Review Division. I do have the staff presentation for the next two items, both of which are vesting tentative subdivision maps, both with the same applicant teams, and both are also located in the North Vineyard Station specific plan area.
Chris, if I could just, and if anyone intends to, as from an applicant perspective, address the items addressed to board, oath is required to administer an oath, is that correct?
No, I had sent updated notes to you that.
Oh, so that's the old note.
There are no oaths on these items. Yeah.
Okay. So you're off the hook. You don't need to swear at us. All right, go ahead, Chris.
The first of these requests is for the North Vineyard Greens Unit 3 tentative map. The request for the tentative map extension is related to Lot 5 of the North Vineyard Greens Unit 3 tentative map, which is highlighted in red crosshatch on this slide and is located east of Waterman Road and north of Gerber Road. The graphic on this slide contains the current zoning map and illustrates that the subject site is zoned RD5, and adjacent land uses include an RD20 residential subdivision and open space, open space corridor to the north, that would be the Vineyard Creek subdivision on that RD20 site, and RD5 subdivisions to the east, south, and west. It's also important to note that the vacant lot to the south of this site is related to the North Vineyard Greens Unit 11 tentative map, which is the next item for your consideration. In 2006, the board approved the North Vineyard Greens Unit 3 large lot and small lot vesting tentative subdivision maps for a three-year period, originally expiring on April 11th, 2009. The large lot tentative map was recorded, allowing the subdivision to be developed in phases. Since approval, all portions of the small lot tentative map have been recorded, with the exception of this Lot 5. The Unit 3 subdivision was eligible for statutory extensions and extensions associated with the filing of those phased final maps. Therefore, the current expiration date for Lot 5 is, or was, April 11th, 2022. The applicant filed a timely extension application prior to the map's expiration date. Therefore, the application is eligible for the requested six-year time extension. I should also note that the applicant has submitted a final map application with the engineering division for Lot 5, and approval of the time extension would allow for the applicant to complete the filing and recording process. The applicant is requesting a time extension of six years, which is the maximum number of years available under the Subdivision Map Act and Sacramento County Code. The exhibit on this slide highlights the entirety of the North Vineyard Greens Unit 3 tentative map, which divided a roughly 50-acre parcel into 141 single-family lots, one multifamily residential lot, and 16 public and quasi-public parcels. Much of this area has been developed. The red call-out area and subdivision outlined in gold is Lot 5. Lot 5 includes the division of roughly two acres into 10 single-family homes. Both the Vineyard CPAC and the Planning Commission reviewed the requested time extension and are recommending approval. During the Vineyard CPAC meeting, a member did object to the street section widths for this subdivision. Staff noted that the proposed streets are consistent with the specific plan, and that no changes to the approved tentative map are proposed as. no changes to the approved tentative map are proposed as part of the time extension request. This member voted against the time extension, and that's why there was a four-to-one vote in support of the requested extension. Planning staff supports the requested time extension, as the tentative map remains consistent with the general plan, specific plan, and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood context, including several partially constructed subdivisions to the northeast and west. Planning staff recommends the board take the following actions to extend the expiration date of the tentative map so that the final map can be filed. Those actions include determining that the previously certified supplemental EIR and MMRP with the SEQA addendum prepared for the request are adequate and complete, and approve the six-year time extension resulting in a new expiration date of April 11th, 2028. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chris. I don't see any board members in the queue. I noted this in my briefing yesterday, so I'll just, we'll reference both Item 71, 72, but also more broadly, just a growing, I think, anxiousness, my description, amongst a number of residents and certainly homeowners, but also folks in the area. Certainly proximate, both of these subdivisions touch Waterman Road, and that is the extension of Waterman Road over the Central California Traction Line. And I know Department of Transportation staff has been working on this, but I, certainly in my briefing, I want to highlight it because as we continue to see units constructed and other amenities, parks and schools to follow on, there's growing, I said, anxiousness, I won't go as far as maybe the frustration, but it's, it's building amongst folks as this county continues to, according to plans that have, you know, gone through the whole general plan, specific plan, community plan processes. And where Waterman Road is a major collector, a street that serves and will serve, in fact, you know, will extend all the way to the city of Elk Grove, and someday, I think, is contemplated, it might even go as far as Jackson Highway, depending upon development patterns over a course of decades. But for this area between Florin and Gerber, it's, it's a key link. And now that portions are, that are proximate to where the railroad, certainly the right of way is, but tracks aren't fully contiguous or continuous through that area, where folks can see where they want to get to, but can't drive there, certainly can't, you know, take a trail there because those segments are not completed. And I know this county took that on as a project. I know Matt Darrow's here from DOT. So I don't have any specific question. I just want to put it out there that I think it's going to be incumbent upon this board, certainly our, our staff, not just DOT, but others as well, I think throughout the administrative staff, to keep this as a priority. One, funding is going to be on the county's backs because of the way we modified the infrastructure financing plan. And if it's not constructed at grade, I think there'll be tremendous concern by folks who now are homeowners and residents of the area. But it's, it's a vital link from a public safety standpoint, from a public convenience standpoint, from walkability, and we're going to hear this afternoon, a whole active transportation plan. That link is key. Certainly, it's not going to, it gets resolved, you know, anytime in the next few, next couple of months, but I guess I would encourage planning staff, Department of Transportation staff, I've gone over this in my briefing with Ms. Edwards and, and others, it needs to be a priority. And if it's not, I can, I can almost be assured, as I'm sitting here today, that those of you that will be here long after I'm gone, you will get more of an outcry from residents in the area, and the CPAC will begin to, I think, take into consideration impacts and what happened in the planning process that broke down, that that road didn't get completed. And again, it's, so it's not totally within our, within our hands. We're collecting fees, though, and the whole program. And having been here when we heard these projects, long before subdivision maps came behind, that was always contemplated as a major linkage for the newly developing community areas in, in that part of the world. And so I would just say that it needs to be a priority. It is. It needs to be a high priority. And in the event we're not successful in getting that road completed, because it's on the county now, it's not on Lennar, it's not on the developers and the owners of these, they're going to pay a fee, and it falls to us. And if we don't find a way to get that road done, you'll have these chambers at some point in time, I would predict, they're going to be filled. People are saying, don't build one more house, don't build one more development until you get that road completed, because they're going out of way direction, travel miles. And if you look at, you know, congestion on Gerber and Florin, Bradshaw, and South Watt, over time, not having that internal street will only contribute to that, and it's going to be a growing frustration. So I know our staff knows that, but I just, I wanted to put that out there for the record because, you know, we're not dealing with it directly today. But when Waterman Road comes up, it needs to be a priority, and we need to figure out how we're going to get that crossing completed across, you know, that railroad right-of-way there. And if we don't, shame on us. So, thanks. Anyway, that's all. Any other board members? If not, then I'll, Chris, the applicant representatives, did you want to address the board? I didn't have anybody signed up to speak, so if you'd like to come forward, you're welcome to.
Mr. Chair and other members of the board, thank you for your time today. In consideration for our extension, I think really what I wanted to come up here and speak towards was the fact that Emma Patton had kept us in the loop and has done a wonderful job, and her whole department. It's a tedious process that we didn't really know. There's, you know, six stops along the way. It's been an eight-month ordeal, and we're looking forward to your final decision today so we can go ahead and move towards our next step.
Okay, great. Thank you for those comments. Kudos to our staff. All right. I have no one signed up to speak. We have anyone on the phone? Madam Clerk?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. So with that, I'll bring back to the board, unless there's any other questions, I would move the staff recommendation as outlined in Mr. Boholi's report.
Second.
Okay, move a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, next item.
All right. Item 72 is the North Vineyard Greens Unit 11 project. This is a one-time year extent, one-time year time extension for a vesting tentative subdivision map to divide approximately 20 acres into 85 single-family residential lots and four landscape lots into RD5 zone for a property located north of Gerber Road at the intersection of Gerber Road and Waterman Road in the Vineyard community, and the environmental document is a prior mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. I also have a brief presentation for this item, which is also a vesting tentative subdivision map for Unit 11. The subject site is comprised of two vacant parcels located north of Gerber Road at the intersection of Gerber Road and Waterman Road. The property is zoned RD5, surrounding land uses are the same roughly as the ones that I had mentioned for the previous presentation. The, in 2006, the board approved the North Vineyard Greens Unit 11 vesting tentative subdivision map for a three-year period, originally expiring April 26, 2009. The Unit 11 tentative map was eligible for statutory time extensions and a previous discretionary time extension approved by the board in March 2017. The current expiration date for Unit, the Unit 11 subdivision is October 26, 2022. However, with the board's action last year to amend Sacramento County Code related to time extensions, this map is eligible for the requested one-year time extension. Should also note that, similar to the last presentation, this tentative map, the applicant has also submitted for the final map with the Engineering Division, and approval of this extension will allow them time to complete that process. The applicant is requesting a time extension of one year, which is the maximum amount of time available for this tentative map. The exhibit on this slide details the approved tentative subdivision map, which divides 20 acres into 85 single-family lots and four landscape lots. Importantly, this tentative map also ties in seamlessly with the Unit 3 subdivision to the east and north, providing necessary street and pedestrian connections. I mentioned the advisory recommendations during the previous presentation. These two map extensions were packaged together for review at the, at the Vineyard CPAC, so the same comments that were received were received for this one with the same vote as well. As with the previous item, planning staff is supportive of the requested time extension, and the recommended, recommended actions are listed on the slide here for your consideration. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. I won't repeat what I said a moment ago, but it goes for every project that comes forward in the future, so. Okay. End of this area. All right, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, so I'll invite the applicant, if you'd like to come forward again, if there's any, okay? I'll take that as kudos to our staff for their work, and do we have any?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. All right, no callers, no questions by board members, and then with that, I would move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Thank you to our staff. Thank you applicants.
Chris, or, I'm sorry, Todd, do you want me to read both 73 and 74 into the record at the same time, or would you like me to do-
You can start with 73.
Okay. Item 73 is the Sacramento County Active Transportation Plan, a general plan amendment to modify the text of the air quality element, circulation element, and environmental justice element to remove reference of the bicycle and pedestrian master plans, to be replaced by the proposed Sacramento County Active Transportation Plan, and a zoning ordinance amendment to amend the old Florintown special planning area to be consistent with the Active Transportation Plan.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Mr. Smith?
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Todd Smith, your planning director here. I am not giving this presentation, but Mickey McDaniel with SAC DOT will be. I just wanted to begin these next two items with a reminder for the board that these items, 73 and 74, constitute our third round of general plan amendments for this year. And so as we get into the staff recommendations as part of both of these items, particularly this first one, we're going to ask that the board hold off on any action regarding the general plan resolution and subsequent actions until both hearings are conducted for these items. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mickey.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Mickey McDaniel. I'm a senior planner at the Department of Transportation. It is my pleasure to present the final Active Transportation Plan today. I am joined by Ron Vikari, our Director of Transportation, who is on the line. We have Matt Darrow, Chief of Planning at the Department of Transportation, and Kristi Grebo, Associate Planner at Planning and Environmental Review. Our consultant team was led by Alta Planning, Civic Thread, Headed Up Public Engagement, DKS Associates performed analysis. Our Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee helped to develop this plan over the last two years, and our neighboring jurisdictions gave comment, which helped us to maintain connectivity across borders. I was here in February to discuss the draft plan as a workshop item with this board. I'm back today to refresh your memory on the plan and to update you on the planning actions and environmental document, as well as to seek your final approval of the plan. In the interest of time, I'm going to just skip the, the goals of the plan. In spring of 2020, we kicked off the first phase of engagement, where we went out to the community to learn about the challenges people face when they are walking, biking, and rolling. We took this comment, and in the second phase, we made a, a series of infrastructure recommendations based on that comment and also based on the analysis performed by Alta and DKS. We went back out to the community with a second set of virtual workshops, a series of pop-up activities, 20 in all, and a public web map, which received over 2,600 comments or likes. We took all of this comment and rolled it into a draft plan. We held a three-week period where people commented on the plan, and that ended in November of last year. We held workshops with this board and Planning Commission on the draft plan and took that comment as well. We posted an accessible version of the plan, meaning accessible to people using screen readers because they have visual impairments, and we received another spate of comments from our Disability Advisory Commission, which we were happy to incorporate. We heard from this board in the workshop, in the workshop item back in February, that there is a concern about the prioritization of rural roads. In the plan, we added an acknowledgement that rural roads are challenged in project scoring due to low crash frequencies, but that we have other, other criteria, criteria in the scoring that are considered, such as connectivity and access. We also state a commitment to seeking bike funding, bike and ped funding for rural roads. We stand on the shoulders of other related plans, such as the ADA Transition Plan, which was adopted in 2019. That plan involved a lot of field, a lot of field work in order to determine the ADA compliance of public facilities, including sidewalks. This produced a mountain of geographic information systems data, which we used in order to focus where and how to make improvements in the ATP. This is one of the focus maps that shows, that shows the priority gaps where we would like to fill in sidewalks, as well as priority intersections. We have over 192 miles of sidewalks to fill in in unincorporated county, and we have identified 194 intersections where adding a crosswalk or a leading pedestrian interval, some sort of enhancement, could make these intersections safer to cross. Here, we're looking at a focus map for bicycle projects. The full tables and maps are in the appendices. We are recommending over 1,200 miles of bikeways. We didn't stop at infrastructure. We also made programming recommendations in four categories: education programs, encouragement programs, safe routes to school, as well as infrastructure support programs. We recommended support such as classes for bicycle maintenance and repair. The county, through the 50 corridor TMA, has free pop-up bicycle repair events that are available now in Vineyard and Rosemont. Since, since we last spoke, Planning and Environmental Review has released the environmental document, and I will talk a little more about that later. Planning Commission recommended approval of this plan to the board on August 22nd. Now we are here at number six, at the end of a two-year-long planning process, where we are seeking your approval. The Active Transportation Plan is replacing the pedestrian master plan and bicycle master plan in the general plan, and thus it requires a general plan amendment in order to update the references to those older plans with the ATP. The ATP is consistent with the policies listed here on this slide within the air quality, circulation, and environmental justice elements. Based on, based on staff's, staff's work, we, the board can find the ATP consistent with the general plan. We are also taking this opportunity to update the old Florintown special plan area. The, the bike path at the Anton Power Inn multifamily entitlement moved from the south and eastern edges of that, of the project to west to be along Power Inn Road. So the ATP now includes this alignment, and the old Florintown special plan area land use plan has been modified to reflect this request, and an ordinance amending the SPA is included in your package. An initial study negative declaration was prepared pursuant to SEQA for this project and released on May 13, 2022. No public comments were received. A revised initial study negative declaration was posted on August 1, 2022. No public comments were received. This revised ISND included an amended project description reflecting the general plan text amendments, SPA amendment, and ATP map modifications for old Florintown SPA. Staff recommends that the board determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete and adopt the negative declaration. As, as Todd mentioned, we are going to hold on the rest of the recommendations until after item 74. until after item 74. As children, we grow up on the sidewalk. Still now, it's where we stop and say hello to our neighbors. Part of each and every day, we are all walking and rolling. Some of us are also biking. Today, we plan for a Sacramento County where everyone can cross the street and ride their bike safely, easily, and more comfortably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. So, let's go to board members. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions. I just want to really commend staff. I think this is a great report. It's also made better because of the really robust outreach that was done, that was clear. And, I mean, particularly, you know, the connectivity of the trail network, where right now it's so disjointed throughout the county and throughout the surrounding counties, because we look at this as a six-region area. SECOG's been talking about the connectivity of the trail networks for quite some time, and, and I think that's reflected here. So, and also, for the accommodation of St. Anton, which is 194 units of affordable housing, that will be vitally important as we, you know, look at the, the housing crisis that we have. It's, it's a, it's a big piece of South Sacramento. So, just to staff, thank you and job well done.
Great, thanks, Patty. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too would like to thank staff for a great report, and certainly doing the amount of outreach that they did. One question I have, as it relates to one of the environmental justice communities who are part of, I guess, the broader environmental justice community that's on the map on Slide 4, which includes the Fruit Ridge Pocket area north of Fruit Ridge. We actually had a prior item that, that related to community development block grant funding allocations, and for the First District, the intention is to use those, those funds to improve ADA access, including, as it relates to sidewalks that are perhaps more in disrepair than they are missing. But, is there, has there been any discussion with SHRA in terms of some of the capital facilities that would be funded with community development block grant, community development block grants that they're administered, which are administered by SHRA?
I believe, well, okay, is, is the amount of money around 100K?
It is, exactly 100K.
Okay, so I, I have been asked about this project. I haven't had any communication with, with SHRA, but that's not to say that the principal civil engineer over my section, Rafugio Rosso, may have.
The only reason I bring it up is just to make sure that we don't have two different agencies focused on the same thing called by different names.
Gotcha.
In terms of active transportation versus ADA improvements. So, if there hasn't been any kind of cooperation or, or common understanding between DOT and SHRA, at least as it relates to that particular community and those particular improvements, I would encourage you to, to do that.
I believe that there may have been conversations already, because I was asked to pull out the projects that are in that area for the purposes of SHRA to decide, like, what kind of projects are already there.
Good.
So, I think that communication is happening, but I'm not, it not directly with me.
Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I too just want to underscore Supervisor Kennedy's comments, and thank staff for all your work. Obviously, it took a lot of different county departments who were part of this process, and I know this started certainly before my tenure. But it is, it is remarkable just to see, you know, the evolution of these unincorporated communities. It went from kind of semi-rural, and this is all just even in my lifetime, semi-rural areas to infrastructure that was completely automobile-centric, to now, you know, a growing desire to have these, these better options for, for cycling and pedestrians and other, other modes of transportation. So, I think it's overwhelming how big the need is for the infrastructure improvements in these unincorporated areas. That really strikes me. But I also want to, I just, I'm really, I applaud this effort being so focused on the environmental justice communities and with a lens, an equity lens, which, you know, of course dovetails with a lot of the work of SECOG, and it's something that, you know, I've mentioned many times, and I know several of us have. You look at some of these older, unincorporated communities where there has not been an equal investment in infrastructure or some of these innovations. So, I'm very glad that, or very happy to support this today, and thank you for the work, and then look forward to the even harder work to come as you implement this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
First, I want to thank you for an excellent presentation. It was so professional, the way you delivered it. And thank all of you for the hard work on it. I, I want to say I was in a community meeting last night in North Highlands, and they were talking about the problem of people just crossing the road anywhere, because there's no crosswalks in some of those areas. And so, I know this, creating walkability, and it, it's all about also creating a safer community and, and a more enriched living for everyone. So, thanks for all your hard work, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo comments relative to, you know, our staff and to the, the work that went into this. And again, I know that, kind of took you to task last February when we were talking about this as related to the rural areas. So, if you could maybe highlight once again what you just said, because I know that I used an example, it wasn't directly responded to, not that you necessarily had to, but where we had a safe routes to school proposal 15 years ago that never got followed up on, and CW Diller's been rebuilt, rural setting. School is largely drive-to, some bus, very little walking, but the connectivity between where the firehouse and the, one of the stores, service stations, the service area out there, and now what's the community center and the school. And I guess that was an example for me as to, if it wasn't walking, certainly bicycling, and anybody would bicycle Diller Road, taking their, taking their chances, I'll just say that, from Highway 99 all the way through. So, I guess I'm curious to the language, and I, I heard what you said, but we're still challenged in those areas. And again, I get it, you have suburban areas with higher speeds, higher, well, higher traffic volumes, we'll say that, probably more interface with the, the multiple modes. What is, so what do you say you're going to pursue funding? Well, you know, I, we just don't compete well in the rural areas. I'm just going to say that very frankly. Don't compete well for repaving monies, for some of these improvements. Can't even get stop signs in when we got accidents that happen out there unless you meet some engineering warrants, which is a big frustration that I've expressed to other members of your, of your team. So, how is it that, that what you just said is going to help make us any more competitive? I guess that's why, what I need to understand.
So, my thoughts on seeking rural funding for bicycle and pedestrian facilities have to do with how they, how those programs are currently scoring. So, when we talk about bike, ped funding, usually what comes to mind is the Active Transportation Program, which is the largest source of funding within our state. This round, in cycle six, they had their biggest round ever, so maybe this isn't, it's not representative of other rounds, but in this last round, they had, they funded 170 million for just the small urban and rural set-aside, which only is 10% of the whole pot. So, it was really big this year. Of, there were 26 projects in, in that category. 100% were in disadvantaged communities. So, it's not just that, so even if we work within the rural areas where we know the crash frequencies will be similar, we will still need to look for where we have either low income or high free and reduced price meal eligibility. So, two schools that come to mind are Walnut Grove Elementary and Dry Creek Elementary. Those two schools would, are, are schools that we're looking at right now to see what we can do around those schools as a possible safe routes to school project. And I say this, we had, we have been talking about this, and then when I looked at the statistics from this last round, it seems that that is what they're funding. So, it's 100% disadvantaged within the rural category, and also 19 of 26 projects were safe routes to school. So, it looks like we may have some traction there if we focus in that way. Another, another thought is that we can use alternative data to crashes. So, the Active Transportation Program uses, allows you to use Street Story. So, that is a website where you can record near misses. I have to say, though, that a strategy like that will only work if there's significant outreach to be done, because people don't just record near misses on their own.
Thank goodness they're near misses, but you're right, they don't record those on their own.
Right. But we can use this alternative safety data. And then, my one more thought is there are programs now that are starting to recognize that in, taking the data from crashes and making that a big part of the scoring criteria means that those programs are very reactive, like, why? Why do we need to wait until something bad happens? So, there is a program under USDAOT called Safe Streets for All, which we did apply for in the first round of funding, and that is, it's $1 billion for the nation. It's $150 million cap for the state of California. And that program, you can focus on speed reduction, and you do not necessarily have to have a record of crashes, but you have to show what the recorded speeds are and what the road hierarchy is, and you can make a case for a safety-based case without crash, without recorded crashes. So, those are some of the things that we're looking at.
Did we compete in that last one you just mentioned?
We did. We submitted Elkhorn Boulevard, Clump Haste Streets.
So, the, because again, Walnut Grove Elementary, yes, I would say you would, all of the delta is within, you know, certainly census tracts that are low mod or disadvantaged or severely disadvantaged. We've done this with sewer and water projects, and I think about the town of Hood, town of Franklin, and certainly Cortland, which has a elementary, Bates Elementary School. But I also would suggest that you take a look at, in particular, the areas north and west of the city of Galt, where you have the, you know, urban suburban interface, but you have rural roads leading to your schools. Greer Elementary on the west side of Galt there, or, excuse me, Greer Middle School. And there's a couple of elementary schools as well. And I know that those, under our ARPA review, were, you know, qualifying census tracts. Some are actually within the city, some are in the unincorporated area of the county. And it seemed to me if that's some of the criteria that, you know, in addition to other things that may be more static, is what's moving projects up the ladder, then I would suggest we ought to take a look at those geographical areas. I appreciate looking at Walnut Grove Elementary, but I do think that there are some other areas, certainly in the southern part of the county, that would come to mind. I don't know that, certainly Welton might not be a qualifying census tract. And again, I mentioned that as a project with, with Diller Road. But also, so you take a look at the Herald Community with Arcoe Elementary and the middle school they have there. And they have a small commercial area, but there's a park, county facilities. And again, not a lot of walk to, but I think bicycling, certainly if you want to encourage that, but again, I can imagine there's very few parents of any where they would encourage some of their youngsters to ride on those roads with no shoulders to speak of, and some of the traffic speeds we find, and again, the inability to really enforce speeds in those areas, because we just don't have the coverage. There's, you know, CHP's busy responding to all the calls for service and accidents, and, you know, even though they've been responsive in the past to try to, we have a particular issue. And so, I guess I would just encourage this as a staff, because again, you have a lot, a big county, a lot of areas that have, you know, sidewalk gaps, continuity, you know, lack of continuity for sidewalks and bike lanes and so forth. But if you're really going to encourage, you know, this networking, then I think certainly around where you have schools and small population centers in some of the rural areas of the county, not unlike Elkhorn Boulevard, obviously with Reelinda Alberta and, and some of the interface there with both the city and county developments. You know, I'm sure it's a strong candidate, I'm familiar with the area. But I do think, as you're looking at the South County, Walnut Grove being one, but you might want to look at some of those other suggestions that I've offered there. Whoever succeeds me, obviously, will want to sit down and get a briefing on the Active Transportation Plan and how they might get input into, you know, some of the processes that are being looked at. Lastly, I would say to Supervisor Serna's point, that those census tracts also are block grant eligible. And I know they're ARPA eligible under our revenue replacement that we moved to, we're looking at those census tracts. So, I think if you're looking at projects, either pavement rehabilitation or shoulders or intersections, in years to come, same staff that reached out to you regarding Fruit Ridge Pocket area, that would be the same staff, with no familiarity with the delta and those census tracts in and around the city of Galt.
Okay. Thank you very much for your suggestions.
Okay, great. And thank you for your work on this. Okay. All right. I don't have any time to speak. Anybody on the phone?
We do not. We do not have any callers.
So, you're three for three with no public comments. Your two environmental documents and this one as well, so. Okay. All right. With that, then we're just going to take one action and keep the balance for the, the general plan portion. So, the action you're asking us to take right now is to improve the environmental document. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. So, we'll need a motion to that effect.
So, moved.
Chair, okay. Moved, seconded then to improve the environmental document, and we'll hold the balance until the general plan round. Please vote.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote.
All right. Very good. Item 74.
All right, let me read that one into the record really quick. Item 74 is the Lund Construction Company Headquarters Rezone Project. This is a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, and rezone for a property located on the south side of Antelope Road, approximately 550 feet west of Roseville Road in the North Highlands Community. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. Kimber Gutierrez, good to see you again.
Good to see you again, too. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the board. Kimber Gutierrez, Senior Planner with Planning and Environmental Review, and I will be presenting the Lund Construction Company project to you all today.
There, there you go. It's the bottom right-hand. You're right there. The bottom right-hand, down at the bottom of the right-hand corner of that presentation, if you click on that little icon there, it'll...
All right.
All right. Okay. So, the subject project area consists of two parcels that total approximately 11.58 gross acres in size, and are located on the south side of Antelope Road, approximately 550 feet west of Roseville Road in the North Highlands Community. The subject parcels are zoned M1 and MP. M1 stands for Light Industrial, and MP is Industrial Office Park. The subject parcels are bound by Antelope Road to the north and the Union Pacific Railroad to the west. Across Antelope Road, there is a Walmart grocery store, and across the railroad, there is single-family residential development. Uses to the east and the south consist of warehouses and other industrial uses. The subject parcels are only accessible via a shared private drive located off of Stationer's Way, which is approximately one mile southwest of the intersection of Antelope Road and Roseville The applicant and property owner, Lund Construction Company, has recently outgrown their current headquarters location, and they are planning to relocate to the subject property, as it provides the appropriate acreage for expansion opportunities in the future. So, prior to submitting the proposed, proposed entitlement application, they did undergo a design review as well as a boundary line adjustment. The design review was improved in May of 2021, which involved a new service yard and workshop, an incidental office area, as well as vehicle wash stations, maintenance shops, and a company fuel station on the M1-zoned portion of the property. fuel station on the M1-zoned portion of the property. The boundary line adjustment was recorded in June of 2021, resulting in the current lot configuration, which also matches the existing zoning district boundaries. So the entitlement request is a general plan amendment, community plan amendment and rezone. This is to, so upon approval, the subject parcels, which total 11.58 gross acres, would have an intensive industrial general planned land use designation and an M1 community plan land use designation and zoning designation. So currently, the property does hold a transit-oriented development general plan land use designation and then industrial office park, community plan designation and zoning district. This is an image showing the existing land use designations. So you can see by the arrows that the part, the portion of the project closest to Antelope Road contains that transit-oriented development general plan designation, as well as industrial office park, community plan designation. And then parcel B just holds that zoning district of industrial office park. So here we have the proposed land use designations, and as stated, it would all be intensive industrial as well as light industrial. The environmental document prepared for this project was an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. It was released for public review on June 22 of 2022, and it did conclude that the project would result in a less than significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures. The project was heard by the North Highlands CPAC on December 2 of 2021, and they recommend that the board approve the requested entitlements. Since the project is only a rezone general plan amendment and community plan amendment and does not involve specific development proposal, that is not subject to design review. And then the Planning Commission met on August 22 of this year and approved a resolution recommending that the board approve the general plan amendment and further recommended that the board approve the entitlement package. I wanted to briefly go over Senate Bill 330 and its relation to the proposed project. So under Senate Bill 330, parcels of land where housing is in allowable use may not be downzoned and general or specific planned land use designations may not be changed to a less intensive use as compared to what was allowed in January of 2018. This provision includes, you know, any reductions in heights or densities and floor area ratios and other types of increased requirements. So as discussed, the parcels do currently contain the transit-oriented development designation, which would allow for residential land uses. None of the parcels are identified as being on the Housing Elements Low Income Housing Inventory, so they are not subject to a no net loss analysis. Additionally, the MP and the M1 zoning districts do not allow for residential uses. So even though they have that transit-oriented development general plan land use designation, the zoning districts that are currently in place do not allow for residential development. So therefore, the proposed entitlement package does not have an impact on the intensity of residential uses on the property, nor does it result in a downzoning of the parcel of land.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Kimber. Just a question about this on the, I had a discussion with staff yesterday about this property being designated as a transit-oriented, you know, transit-oriented development, and that certainly never occurred. I think there's some, it's important to kind of flesh that out a little bit about why we think it's appropriate to make this zoning change and that this really is no longer a focus for a TOD. So Chris, could you maybe talk about that a little bit based on our discussion we had the other day?
Sure. This property, as well as properties to the north of it, were considered as part of a future Antelope Road light rail station and associated development within a specific plan context or within a community plan, planning context. That transit station is no longer part of the plan, and so efforts to look at rethinking those ultimate land uses is necessary. And this property, especially given the surrounding context of other properties being industrial type uses, it seems very appropriate that this continue to be in industrial use.
Great. I appreciate it. I think that background is important and the fact that we're willing to reevaluate maybe some of these decisions that were, that were made in the past that just don't really seem to fit today. So, thank you.
Could I just ask a question, though? When it comes to residential, because we got, an item is going to follow on to this, but I thought that M1 did allow for shelters. That was a zoning code amendment that was made a number of years ago. Is that not accurate?
I do believe that shelters are allowed.
Yeah, not residential, so single family, but it does allow for shelters, which is people living there. Okay. So I just wanted to be clear because I know we've got another item coming up in a few minutes, so. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. So based on staff's analysis, the proposed request can be found consistent with the general plan, community plan and zoning code as conditioned. The subject parcels are not on the Housing Elements Low Income Housing Inventory. The project does not conflict with the provisions outlined in Senate Bill 330. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses. There are no significant environmental concerns, and the proposed request would allow Lund Construction Company to relocate their headquarter operations to a more appropriate site, still within the North Highlands Community. This is compatible with the existing land uses in the surrounding area and would allow for continued growth of an industrial business. The project was also supported by the North Highlands CPAC, as well as the Planning Commission. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the entitlement package. We do have, the environmental document gets approved first and then the general plan? Okay. So right now, staff is recommending that the board take the following actions: determine that the mitigated negative declaration prepared pursuant to CEQA is adequate and complete and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Kimber. Any other questions with Kimber? All right. Seeing none, then I'll go to the applicant or the representative, Mr. Hooper.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. Ryan Hooper with Thatch &amp; Hooper here this afternoon to represent Lund Construction Company. And I want to start just by saying thank you to staff for all of your diligent work and thank you for the excellent portrayal of the project. I think you did a great job saying most everything. And I'll just conclude by saying that we're very pleased that our client has the problem of outgrowing its current facility and that they're looking to grow. They have deep roots in Sacramento. Kevin Lund behind me, third generation with Lund Construction, with over 200 employees. So they're very proud and very happy to look forward to moving into their new home. With that, I would say we're here for any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Great, Ryan. Any questions, Mr. Hooper? All right. Seeing none, thank you, Ryan. Okay. Anyone else? I didn't have anybody else sign up to speak. Do we have anyone on the phone, ma'am clerk?
Excuse me. We do not.
Okay. So we have no one on the phone. Okay. All right. So I'll bring it back to the board. Okay. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I...
Change very quickly.
I just realized it's in his district.
You don't have all of North Highlands.
I know. I just got, I forgot. Sorry.
No, but thank you. And I, too, I just want to, I'm very happy that Lund Construction is investing in unincorporated Sacramento County and moving into this new space or want to move into this new space. And with that, I will move approval of the environmental document and the, and adopt the mitigation monitoring. So I guess those are the two elements we need to include in a motion. Is that right, June, right now?
Actually, since this is the last item on this general plan round, you can go ahead and approve everything.
Great.
And then we'll go back later to item 73 and approve the general plan amendment for that.
Prefect's will amend my motion to approve the staff recommendation in its entirety.
Second. Okay.
Second and twice. All right. If there's nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And I heard Kennedy first and then Frost. I'll put Kennedy down. Is that, that's okay? And then we'll go back to item 73.
Okay. Call 73 once again, please.
Those are the items two through four.
Okay. So we have item 73, we have items two through four and 73. Do we have a motion on that?
Move staff recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
All right. It's moving seconded in to approve, going back to item 73. Now it adopts the resolution regarding the Active Transportation Plan and the ordinance, as well as the general plan amendment. So that's all included in that. Nothing further, please vote.
Okay. Unanimous vote.
Okay. Very good. Thank you to our staff. All right. Item 75.
So now we have item 75. This is to authorize the execution of a sales and purchase agreement with Exeter 4837 Watt LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, for the acquisition of real property at 4837 Watt Avenue. This is to approve funding from Phase Two of the American Rescue Plan Act for the Department of General Services to consummate the acquisition with a purchase price of $22,800,000 and estimated closing cost of $25,679, and to approve an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $22,825,679 for the Department of General Services. And the environmental document is a categorical exemption. Let me read the property APN is 2400550059.
Thank you, Flo. If you could pull up the PowerPoint, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board. Emily Howkin, Director of Homeless Initiatives. I'm here today with Jeff Gasway, Director of General Services. We're very excited to be here today with what will be the first of probably multiple conversations around this site located on Watt Avenue. As you know, we've been talking about increasing in shelter capacity and rehousing capacity for quite some time. The board has committed significant funding to support this. And one of the things we've been lifting up is a development of what we're calling safe stay communities. And the concept behind safe stay communities is threefold. First, to expand shelter capacity. We have many people who are unable to access shelter on any given night should they wish to. Certainly also to create some new options for those who are living unsheltered in our community. We, we know that many people can't or won't access traditional shelters, so safe stays have really provided us an opportunity to meet people where they're at, providing non-congregate shelter with wraparound services and as low barrier as possible to entry. And just as importantly, as we're talking about locations for safe stay, including this one, is ensuring that we are orienting these into the communities in which they are at, so that they provide relief to communities where currently there are unsanctioned encampments. As part of this effort, in addition to embracing the concept, providing funding, you also declared a shelter crisis earlier this year, which gives ourselves as staff some expediting of planning processes and approvals, but does require that every community come back to the board for final approval before any construction begins. So today, we're here to talk about a proposed new site at 4837 Watt Avenue. This location map locates the site in the context of the broader community. The site, as many of you know, is very unique, not only because of some of the things we're going to talk about in a second, but it's also located, while it's in Supervisor Desmond's district, it is right at the cross of Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost's district. So this is a really unique location in the unincorporated county. As you are well aware, it's also in an area which has a lot of unsanctioned encampments up and along Roseville Road, in the McClellan Business Park, and elsewhere in this community. Zooming in a little bit further, this shows the actual parcel. For some of you who have seen this site, you know that this is a former warehouse superstore. It is a very large site with a lot of parking, which is one of the things that's really attractive to us as we talk about this for a potential safe stay. So what we are asking for today is, again, the initial approval for purchasing this site at a cost of $22.8 million. The site itself is 13 acres, including 130,000 square foot warehouse and the balance nine, approximately nine acres of parking, which is all enclosed. This site is ideal as we try to stand up safe stays and increase sheltering and rehousing capacity for many things. First, as I just said, it is located very proximate to existing camps and places where people are living unsheltered and our impact in the community. It has more than sufficient space to co-locate critical services for folks who will be sheltering here and to bring in community partners to engage with people in helping them exit homelessness. And for the first time, it is the first site that will allow us the ability not just to provide indoor sheltering, but also to provide safe parking. We know we have a lot of people currently living in their vehicles and unwilling or unable to give up those vehicles to come into a traditional shelter. So while we certainly know a vehicle is not a long-term housing or sheltering option, this will give us the opportunity for people to come and safely park their cars and engage in services and hopefully exit out of homelessness. The reason we're bringing it to you today, apart from a broader conversation, which generally is what we would do, is because the seller, who we have been talking with quite a bit, is requiring the board to approve the purchase and sale agreement so they can discontinue marketing the site and we can continue down our planning path. So this is, again, the first step. We do plan to be back in front of you by November 15, which, with a little bit more information on our concept around the site plan, our concept around services, maybe some more conversation about operational funding. I did want to say we have been working on this, as you know, for a few months, and there has already been some initial community engagement. On October 6, there was a very productive conversation, I feel, with the McClellan Business Park. On October 13, I understand Supervisor Desmond met with the Watt ADP bid. Over the course of this month and the upcoming month, there's lots of individual meetings with nearby businesses, as well as some community associations. Next Tuesday, we have a community-wide meeting, and the invitations have gone out very broadly so that residents and businesses can engage. And of course, pending approval today and the deeper discussion on November 15, we will continue to have ongoing outreach and engagement with the community as we develop the plans for this project.
Supervisor Desmond, do you want to weigh in?
Just real quick, one other, there was one additional meeting that we had at McClellan Park, Supervisor Serna and I. It was a new business watch, so several of the...
Last week.
Oh, it was just last week. Geez. Time is flying here. But, so we've actually had three community meetings already about this, but I'll have more comments in a moment, but I just want to make sure.
I forgot, because I wasn't there.
I want to make sure we put that on there, too.
Yeah. I had the, I had the same comment, and that's why I was in the queue. I just want to make sure that that was noted, especially since it marked, I think, the first time outside of the smaller McClellan Business Park executive team that both Supervisor Desmond and I had a chance to literally stand in front of a group of concerned business owners to explain, explain this in concept. So, yeah, I'm glad we both chimed in when we did. Thanks.
Well, and thank you. And that actually concludes my comments. Jeff and I are both available for any questions, should you have them, and really looking forward to this first step in continuing conversations around this exciting project.
Thanks, Emily. Okay. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Emily. I just wanted to also add that I've had a community meeting in North Highlands last night, and they, we discussed it and they received it very well. And I have another business meeting with a group of businesses tomorrow, so...
Yes, I'll be joining for that.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting in a minute.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Emily and Jeff and the entire executive team from Ann Edwards' office to all of our social services staff and leadership. I think this is a long time coming. We've been quietly looking at this site for some time now, and I really applaud Supervisor Desmond's leadership, knowing well that these types of proposals aren't always easy. That's probably an understatement. But as you mentioned, Emily, it does lie at a, in an area that's relatively close to all three supervisory districts, and I think there's been ample support from all of us as the process has progressed in terms of the closing of the deal, per se. And certainly, I would expect that that kind of cooperative spirit will continue. You know, I also add that I think this is an innovative approach for a lot of different reasons. You mentioned the fact that this isn't just an area that can have and host, you know, individual units, and all those details will, will be worked out in the coming months should, should we... we approve this. But there are a number of folks, as you mentioned, that are unfortunately left to live in their vehicles right now or feel compelled that that's their only choice, and this site lends itself, I think, well to kind of both shelter typologies. And, you know, I'm very excited about it. I'm hopeful that those that have been critical of the county for months now, claiming that, you know, or insinuating that we're not doing as much as we should, or that we're not doing anything at all, we're otherwise sitting on our hands, while other jurisdictions seem to be, you know, working in a flurry to find sites now understand that, you know, we were doing our due diligence to make sure that this is a site that kind of meets our needs, given the fact that we're moving forward with a safe stay kind of architecture to how we plan to get to yes, when it means, you know, addressing those that are unsheltered and making sure that they feel welcome and have the amenities that they oftentimes tell us they must have to accept the services and the shelter that we're offering. So I'm very excited about it. And I'll just add, too, that in terms of ARPA funding, even the ARPA funding that might be used to help finance this is reflected by four of the five supervisory districts in terms of the district ARPA funds. So that's just another gauge by which to really conclude that this has been kind of a team effort. So just kudos to everyone involved.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. If I'd known you were at the end of the presentation, I would have just kept talking instead of chiming out and chiming back in. So I, thank you, Supervisor Serna. I couldn't agree more with everything you said. And first, thank you, Emily. I mean, I wish we could clone you, because I think we'd be probably doing a lot more, frankly. But I join Supervisor Serna in being very excited about this. I mean, I think this is really kind of a watershed moment for the county to be investing in a project of this nature, of this size. And I think, just as Supervisor Serna was saying, you know, the model that we have, I think that we are embarking upon, certainly the sites that we approved in Supervisor Kennedy's district, and I know he was kind of the guinea pig for this kind of thing, and I'm certainly learning from a lot of the lumps that he took in the community with our outreach here, with, of course, your help, Emily. This is a way to get over the trepidation, both by the people who are living unsheltered out on our streets and the trepidation of the community, and I think the model that we are pursuing here. So I think that I'm extremely supportive of that. And I just also want to applaud you, and I think my colleagues up here, because I think we are all really coalescing around the idea, and I'll actually paraphrase Supervisor Serna, that one of our community meetings, that we have dual responsibilities on this board. One is to those who need help, you know, those who are unsheltered, living on our streets and open spaces or in their RVs. But we also have an obligation to ensure a high-quality life for our small businesses and residents in their neighborhoods. And you called that out specifically in this board item, that this is going to, we are endeavoring to meet both of those dual obligations. And I really appreciate that. And, you know, in some of the community meetings we've already had, it really strikes me, as we're talking to either folks in McClellan, or I was talking to the folks in 80 Watt, there is a, there's a high level of trust, I think, in the supervisors that represent this area, the three supervisors there. And I think we have an obligation to ensure we live up to that level of trust by making sure that this site, before it begins operation, that operation is really informed and influenced by ongoing, continued community outreach. And I think there are certainly things we can learn from and from the lessons off the sites, off Florin Road, and that we will be responsive to needs of the community as some of these issues develop. So I look forward to, I think we have a larger, the larger community event on November 1st, and I believe three of the supervisors will all be there, and it'll be more of a public meeting, if I'm not mistaken. I'm looking to our county council, since all three of us will be there.
Correct. Yes, it will be noticed as such.
Okay, thank you. And to start having that larger community engagement. But just appreciate all your work and really look forward to moving this forward with all deliberate speed, which I know is a problem at times as well. So, thank you, Emily.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
I try not to repeat what everyone else said, but I agreed with all of it. And I also want to say that I know that you had other opportunities, you and Jeff, and many of the staff had come and talked about some of the other opportunities. And I really appreciate that you prioritized the unincorporated county and our financial interest in, and I don't quite know how you found such a perfect spot, but you not only found it, it wasn't for sale, you went after it, so...
Well, I didn't find it. John Roca did. I have to give him credit, John.
John, thank you. I know we've met a couple times, and we've been out on the property, but I also want to say that this is more than, you know, an opportunity to move people out of homelessness. This really, literally is the dual opportunity that he's talking about, the carrot and the stick, is a tool, not only for us at the county, but for our public safety and our, you know, rangers and our navigators and our hearts. And it's a way that, you know, we actually have more shelter to offer, so we can offer it, and if they don't want it, we can move them. And we can hopefully continue to find other perfect locations so that we have the capacity to really take back control of our business districts and our residential areas and our parkways and our streets. So, and I'm so excited and I'm proud to support it. And I also want to say that so far, the conversations I'm having in North Highlands are very positive, and they're really, they wanted to start planning it last night, and I said, no, we're going to, you know, we're going to be working on that. We're not ready for that yet. We have to get the property first. But they're excited. So congratulations to you and to everyone who worked on it. Thank you.
Great. Okay. County Council?
Oh, I forgot one thing.
Okay.
I want to personally thank Supervisor Kennedy for pitching in a million of his ARPA funds to help us out in our district. It did not go unnoticed by this member.
Great. Okay.
I was just going to add, I'm not sure if a motion is forthcoming, but it sounds like it may be. One thing that was omitted, omitted from the board packet was the statutory exemption. And so it is a statutory exemption. It was also called a categorical exemption in the board materials, but I wanted to acknowledge that that is now in your materials and will be uploaded to the agenda, and it should be included in any motion that is made.
Great, okay. Thanks for that, Lisa. All right, was somebody else in queue here? Okay, not...
We do have a caller.
Okay, yeah, I'll get to that in a second. All right, very good. Let's go to, I don't have anybody in chambers, then go to your caller, please.
Okay. Could you transfer the caller, please? Mr. Antoli, did you get a speaker slip for in-person?
No, I did not.
No, okay.
That's what I said, none.
Thank you. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes, and if you could mute the meeting in the background while you're talking, that would be great.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
If you could mute the meeting while you're talking to...
Yes, I will.
...for the echo.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, supervisors. This is Rick Eaton, speaking on behalf of Sacramento-area congregations together. Sacramento Act has long advocated for the creation of more shelter spaces, so we are obviously very pleased with and want to lend our support to bringing this proposal forward. My original note said to thank Supervisor Desmond for his leadership on this, but it's obvious that I should be thanking more than just Supervisor Desmond, but a number of you are at the diocese, and of course, the staff. So I won't belabor the point of our support, other than to, again, say that we're very pleased to see this moving forward. We think it's a great step, and we're very encouraged by the fact that there isn't considerable community oppositions to this. I think that signals, at least to us, that the community broadly is ready to embrace solutions like this. We do have a couple of concerns that we want to highlight for future consideration for you. One is a little concern about equity. All three of the safe stay communities, they're in the pipeline now, as of this one, are in lower-income communities. We think that's problematic, that all communities should, if possible, share in providing solutions for homelessness. Now, obviously, we recognize that a site of this size is simply not available in places like Carmichael or Fair Oaks, but we think there are opportunities perhaps to explore smaller footprints, more neighborhood-based sites that would be appropriate to other parts of the county. Our second point is that even though we strongly support this measure, we're concerned that the county continues to make decisions around combating homelessness without the benefits of an overall plan. We think we need a guiding plan, just as County Executive Ann Edwards indicated in her recent op-ed to the B. Well, we think a coordinated, comprehensive plan that addresses housing, mental health, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, all of these things will demonstrate to the public that this problem can be solved and will get better. A plan like this could be a rallying point for the community and will enable all elements of the community to work together to create really what all of us want, which is a region with a great quality of life that we can all be proud of, and a place where everyone has a secure and dignified place to live. So again, thank you to Emily Howkin, staff, and the supervisors for bringing this forward. Good afternoon.
Yes, thank you, Rick, for your comments. Okay, do we have any other speakers?
We do not have any other callers.
All right, Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to ask Emily a quick question while you're here. In one of the questions that people had regarding the automobiles on the property, the ingress and egress, and the fact that we have like a project manager managing how people enter and leave the property, and there's no loitering around the property, they had a question regarding, well, what if they have, what if they're in their car in the parking lot? Can they drive, come and go? And I said, we'll work all that stuff out, but I'm curious, and I thought, since you're here, I would just ask you...
No, I appreciate, I saw that question, your staff's comments, which I hadn't also thought of. So I think that's something we'll have to take to heart. This is the first time we will have allowed folks safe parking. But one of the things that I think was lifted up that we have seen at the two Florin sites, and we certainly intend to replicate it every safe stay, is that sort of ingress/egress management. It does become a little more complicated when people have a vehicle, especially if that vehicle is operable. So definitely noted that, and as we look to stand up our operator, make sure that we consider how that will be managed, because it is a little bit different. So don't have an answer yet, but we will make sure that that's thoughtfully planned out, and so that when vehicles are coming and going, that they're abiding by similar sort of good neighbor rules and regulations.
And there was a shelter closer to the freeway on Watt. Do you know what I'm talking about?
On Watt?
The city's?
Uh...
No.
Oh, the Science Center, yes, on Auburn?
Possibly, they mentioned it, and they wondered if they were going to, if this was going to become where we're going to put all the shelters, and I didn't know if that other shelter was even still there, or if it was a shelter or a permanent housing. I just wondered if anyone knew anything about it.
Yeah, the motel conversion.
If they're referring to what we call the Science Center, but I think the city calls the Auburn Respite Center, it is a respite center. It's got a 50-bed capacity. It just opened a couple weeks ago. I don't know the current occupancy.
It's a private business.
No, it's run by the City of Sacramento. They've got a nonprofit partner operating it. Supervisor Desmond may know more about it, but my understanding is intended to remain open. Sorry.
Why are you laughing?
No, just because we both know too much about it.
You know more than you want to know.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we can figure all this out later.
That would be the most proximate shelter that I'm aware of to this site.
You did the motel conversion to affordable complex with SHRA, which is not a shelter.
That's not a shelter, right? So they could have been referring to...
That's a permanent...
I think that might be what they're referring to. The court, yeah, the Mercy Housing, right.
Yeah, Mercy Housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, Ann?
Yes, I would like Ms. Katari to just respond to the statement about the fact that we don't have a plan, because we do, and Ms. Katari can speak to that.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Eaton brought up a point about a plan, and we do have the local homeless assistance plan that the board did adopt alongside the City of Sacramento, as well as SSF and our COC, Continuum of Care. And I just wanted to mention where we're at in that process is, there were six pillars that were adopted in that plan, including the things that he outlined. Currently, we have work groups from the city, the county, and the COC who are working together to put in some measurable action steps so that we can work towards that plan. Once that's finalized, which I anticipate will be probably just after the first of the year, we will share that back with the board. But we feel very good about this collaborative plan that we have that does address the multi-prong approach that, one of which you're adopting today, but that the board has already endorsed and bought into. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Sean, Patrick?
Thank you. I'll just add to that, that it's truly a countywide plan in that there's input and conversations going on with not just the City of Sacramento and steps forward and COC, but also with all of the other cities in the county. So it truly is, you know, the first time that there's been a comprehensive countywide effort that takes into account all of those jurisdictions.
Great, thanks. Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, just to beat the dead horse, I think the fact that we got that one comment about where's the plan, when there is one, is just further proof that we're not telling our story well enough. Hate to keep bringing it up, but I think that's proof positive that our communication around the subject of homelessness still needs to improve, because with today's action and everything else that has kind of compounded upon itself in the last, I'd just say, in the last two months, whether it was final budget, whether it was some of the workshops that we've had, and certainly some of the difficult meetings we've had over the summer with the first safe stay community being proposed, there's so much to talk about, and there's so much to make sure that, you know, folks in the community, whether they're, you know, self-labeling as a homeless advocate, or just, you know, one of our concerned constituents that happens to email us on a regular basis about the subject, they need to know about what we are doing. So we need to be really deliberate about it. I was at a meeting with Emily, in fact, just yesterday, and my chief of staff, Siobhan, and we were spending most of our breath telling folks along the Broadway quarter what it is we're doing. They had never heard of it. You know, they didn't know what we're doing. And you could see their eyes get big, and they were almost to the point of like being apologetic for not knowing. And, you know, and it kind of put us in a, put me at least, in an awkward situation. So we really need to get our story out, and until we do, I'll keep bringing it up.
Okay, thanks, Bill. I wanted to just ask, on the next steps, if I could, Emily, just real quickly. So you're going to be back, the plan is for you and Jeff to be back to this board in about three weeks with discussion about operational improvements to the site, which obviously are identified in the, very generally in the notice of exemption on the environmental document, but restroom, sprinklers, and kitchen facilities, and then whatever else is going to be encompassed in that. Will you be bringing a budget for both that and how that would be funded? And then, secondly, for the operational aspects, just as you did with other safe stay sites, as to what's anticipated for what period of time? I assume for purchasing a site, this is a different approach. I don't assume, I know, is a different approach than what we contemplated in a couple of the previous discussions, at least one, where it was the least site. So is that what we will expect beyond, obviously, the benefit of whatever occurs at the community meetings and suggestions, but are you going to be bringing a plan for the actual improvements, the suggested improvements to the site?
Yeah, and definitely would let Jeff hop in as well. What I imagine the 15th will be a conceptual plan. Between now and then, we'll get our bearings on a conceptual plan for how many units, what, you know, maybe some generic layouts. Certainly, we'll put some estimates in terms of costs for both the construction and the operations and start that conversation. I think that this is a big site that will require probably a lot of in-depth work on Jeff's part to get the precision, to get an exact number, but is our intention to bring those concepts forward. On your second question about the length of stay, I do imagine this site would be a more permanent fixture in our sheltering community until the point we don't need it. I don't know if Jeff has more he wants to add.
Okay, thanks, Ellen. Jeff?
Jeff?
Jeff Gasway, Director, General Services. We'll also be bringing the ongoing cost for the facility, um, you know, maintenance and operation, because it is gonna be a county-owned facility as well as a 2% use allowance, utilities and all those other things.
So is, so does it, does it get into the mix then when it says 2% use allowance? We just brought, I guess, Parks into that, into the equation, or Mather into the equation just this year in budget. I don't think we brought Parks in, but Mather. So, that's gonna affect the loaded rate for all, all county departments come next budget year or ensuing budget years, is that right?
Correct. Yeah. I think, you know, as far as coming up, well, like Emily said, we'll have some conceptual plans. We may not zero in on the exact budget, um, because we aren't that far along in the planning process, so.
So will we have, I guess the question I have, maybe this is for Anne too, but so will, will we have exhausted the ARPA contribution to this site via the purchase? Because I see other dollars are already going into this, so, um, again, I don't wanna get too far ahead of it, but I just think from a standpoint of what we're gonna see in two and a half weeks, so.
The purchases primarily ARPA, and actually Emily is well-versed in all of this. Some of the district contributions will also, um, go towards both purchase and operations, I believe, but I'm gonna let Emily.
Yeah, I, I believe that, um, within the second allocation of ARPA, we will have enough remaining to do most of the improvements to the site, if not all of them, depending on where Jeff lands. The ongoing operations, we may need to also contemplate using some of our state dollars. We have a fourth round of HAP coming up, which we'll soon be talking to you about, um, actually potentially on the same day because of the timing. Um, so we are looking at coming forward with at least a plan for the first few years of operations, but, you know, to Supervisor Natoli's point, depending on how long this sort of stays in our inventory, there will be ongoing costs. But we do anticipate being able to cover all of the capital costs with the ARPA.
Capital costs of actually doing the improvements?
Yes, the purchase as well as the improvements.
Okay, 'cause that wasn't clear in the staff report. Did they cover letter just, it said the district contribution?
Yeah, there's a balance, uh, when you take ARPA 1 and ARPA 2 and what you have committed in the homeless and housing bucket, offset by the $4 million that the four of you put in, there is a balance remaining. Um, I believe it's somewhere in the 20 million-ish range. And so we, I'm hoping that, and I believe Jeff would agree that that's, that should be sufficient for the, the improvements.
Okay, all right. That wasn't, that was not clear, at least in the statement here, so, okay. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Uh, one, uh, last, uh, piece of information that I didn't hear, um, Emily, you, you referenced, but I think it's really important to note, especially for those that might be watching, um, is the immediate adjacency of a clinic, right?
Yes. Yeah, and the, the parking lot immediately, it butts a, a sort of commercial, um, parking lot, which includes, um, Ellica Health Clinic. We have not yet engaged with them because we wanted your approval first, but certainly they are a huge partner to us in providing healthcare and behavioral health services to folks experiencing homelessness. And that, uh, that location, um, is a clinic space that, that receives and treats folks. So we are certainly looking forward to engaging a conversation with them shortly and hope they'll be a partner. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, great, good. No further questions then of staff, so I'll bring it back to our board then, and we have items to include the notice of exemption as well, but, uh, for the purchase and sale agreement, so I'll turn to my colleagues.
With that, uh, Mr. Chair, I will enthusiastically, uh, move approval of the, the staff report, including the exemption.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, um, unless there's any further questions, please vote.
unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you to all.
All the seller.
More to come. More to come. Okay, very good.
No more marketing.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, we've just got a couple of concluding items here today, so we have our appointments and nominations.
Yep, so for, um, item 76, are you guys ready for that? Do you have your nominations? I think you have 10 actions that you need to take today.
Okay.
So you're continuing to November 8th, the Adult and Aging Commission, continuing to December 6th, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Assessment Appeals Board, Building Board of Appeals, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Kasumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, the Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Sacramento, uh, excuse me, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, the Veterans Advisory Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for today, uh, we have the Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please continue to December 6th.
Thank you. Uh, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to December 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Children's Coalition.
Recommended that we nominate Heather Wyden and then continue the remainder to December the 6th.
Thank you. County Service Area 4Bs, Lou House, Wilton, Kasumnas.
Um, I'd like to just continue that to, um, November the 8th, please. We have a pending interview. We, we've, we've interviewed one, but I wanna undouble-check on something, so.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Yes.
What would you like to do, Supervisor Frost?
Continue, uh, which one are we on, or sorry?
Uh, 'cause the County Service Area 4Bs.
Continue to December 6th, please.
Thank you. All right, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Recommended to continue that to December 6th.
Thank you. Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to November 8th, please.
And the Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Okay, it's recommended to nominate Garrett Jensen.
Okay. Uh, then Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Um, I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to December 6th.
And then Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to December 6th.
And, um, that's that. Okay. And then Sacramento County Youth Commission. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to December 6th.
And Supervisor Kennedy?
Nominate Julie Deng and continue the remainder to December 6th.
Okay, and then Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to December 6th.
And Mr. Natoli?
Uh, we're doing some outreach, so I wanna continue that to November the 15th, if I could, please.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sacramento Environmental Commission, this is your last one.
It's recommended to continue to November 15th. There's a pending interview.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that concludes your nominations.
All right. With that then, uh, that's our action items, so we'll go to board member comments.
Uh, it's County Executive Comments.
Oh, County Executive Comments. Anne?
Thank you, I'll, I'll be brief. As you all know, elections have become increasingly challenging for staff who work on elections, and I want to just take this opportunity to thank the team at voter registration and elections for continuing to administer transparent, accurate and secure elections with the highest integrity. They are hardworking and dedicated public servants who work an incredible amount of hours and are committed to doing their jobs exceptionally well. They are the quiet architects behind the collective success of well-administered elections in Sacramento County. Voter registration in elections is not suspicious. In fact, they are trustworthy, open and transparent. They welcome elected observers to watch their process and offers guided tours by appointments on Wednesdays and Thursdays to educate the public about the complex elections in the county. So I just want to thank all of them for their very hard and dedicated work.
Thank you, Anne. Anything else you wanted to, yeah? No, okay, thanks. All right, boardroom members. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, real quick, uh, I'm gonna direct this to our CEO, uh, in light of the fact that we don't have any DOT, um, leadership here, but, um, I, I wanna just say again how frustrated our district is, um, and frustration's growing, uh, I think it's fair to say, relative to what appears to be kind of lack of cooperation, um, from DOT when it comes to, uh, what we're de, dealing with, uh, at Watt and Elder Creek. And I know, Mr. Chair, that, um, this is a part of the county where you, you and I share the responsibility for representation, um, but there have been a number of instances now, um, unfortunately, where, uh, we're just not getting any movement, we're not getting anything but can't, won't, don't, you know, and no from DOT when it comes to exploring what we think are some kind of creative ways to, uh, best handle the, what is now a very clear public safety problem as it relates to growing homeless encampments, including RVs, um, and, uh, and also fire risk, uh, in this part of the county. So, um, I wanted to, uh, put that on the record today again, um, and if the CEO wants to respond, that'd be great, but, um, again, in the absence of having, um, our DOT in, in chambers right now to hear directly from me, um, I'm really, really asking sincerely for some help, because, uh, what's occurred to date is not helping, it's just growing the frustration.
If, if I could, I'm just gonna give Anne a chance to respond, but I know the cleanup that was done a couple of weeks ago, within hours, it began to reappear. Uh, we spent, I don't know how much money and certainly time, and again, code enforcement, Department of Transportation, whoever else was in on the coordination, Department of Waste Management, recycling, if they were a part of it. And so effectively, we spent money, cleared the area of the, you know, accumulation, and I don't know what the outreach was, maybe you do fill it to the occupants there, but, uh, it was just a matter of hours that folks, and, and I heard that report from folks who were very appreciative that the county had acted to move, they, and bet the one comment, hopefully we were able to help people find alternative locations to either be housed or whatever, and then it reappears. And again, I haven't, and haven't driven in recent days, but, um, uh, that was very short-lived, so, and I would just, I guess, comment too, 'cause it, it goes to, I think some of the challenges we're having, um, it's been reported to me, and I know Supervisor Desmond, I don't, you know, wanna step on your toes, but the Citrus Road location that we've heard about here, I did hear from certainly a, a good source that the size of the encampment there has grown, I won't say doubled, um, and, and I can tell you that as recently as yesterday, in fact, my office was filling the calls that in that Mayhew Road area. Micron, Mayhew Tech Center Drive, we had a fire two nights ago, burned some of the fences, or a fence of one of the neighbors, um, working with DOT. We have property that DOT actually controls on, at least on the, um, the overcrossing in Mayhew on the, on the west side, and we put some boulders in there. But the activities, because the weather, the weather has begun to change, it's colder, we had campfires anyway, um, but the inability for us, and whether it's DOT, I don't know where we are with the hot team, I don't know where we are with our encampment teams, with the folks that would go out there and actually offer services, but the coordination, and again, I've got a community meeting tonight, and I'm sure I'm gonna hear about it, uh, and we're responsive, we're patient, we've talked with staff at different levels, I say responsive in the sense of county being responsive, and certainly have pleaded patience, but people's patience is wearing thin with some of the incidents that have occurred very recently, and certainly you're hearing expressed through some board members here today, it's not about the ordinance and the ability to, you know, to, uh, do something that offers some alternatives, but, uh, again, I think the citizenry recognizes, just like on the item we talked on two items ago, that we're, you know, working to do some things, but if we don't get a better handle on our ability to respond to some of these specific situations that are known to everybody that's here in this room, but certainly others, and to do it in a way that, we tell people we have an encampment team, but, you know, what is it that we're doing that then allows us to move forward to, you know, deal with some of these situations? So, again, I haven't talked to you recently about this, but I know I've got a community meeting tonight, and I got calls, uh, in the last two days. Uh, folks' frustration is, 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 is growing and their patience is, is wearing thin in some of these cases and, and even with our best efforts. And so I don't know what else we can do in some of these cases, but we need to, I think, do everything that we can to be responsive and be compassionate to the folks that are residing in some of these camps. But the fire situation is not tolerable for residents, for, you know, campers, homeless, whoever it is, uh, in, in, in these locations, and it poses a real threat, um, as it does along the Parkway as well, so. I don't know, Supervisor Kennedy, are you, you've, in the queue, so.
Well, while we're piling on, um, there's, there's also an encampment that I would like to elevate to the encampment team that's on county property. Uh, it's almost a District 5, it's in District 2, it's down at the East Stockton and Calvine, and, um, I, I'm just bringing it up now because it's, it's growing fast and it's gonna get worse, so I just wanted to elevate that to the encampment teams if they can put it on the rotation.
Well, and I'm glad you did, because that's an area where just immediately across the freeway in the city, last year, there was a very large...
Right, and that's what, that's what's happened.
And it's displaced it.
Yeah.
You know, so, no, I would, I would agree with you on that. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, and I won't, you know, I won't, I won't pile on, but just, just to mention, you know, it's something I think we should, uh, I brought this up in the context of a discussion about Alta Arden recently, um, about before we go out to these sites that we target for with our, uh, encampment teams, is to somehow set aside a certain amount of capacity at our existing shelters, and certainly bringing on more Safe Stay communities will allow us to do even more of that, but to really give us more latitude to, to say, look, we're offering you one of these kind of, in my opinion, really gold standard shelter model, and if you don't take it, you cannot continue camping. You know, you, we can't force you into it, but you cannot keep camping here. Um, I, I think that's something that we need to consider and maybe bake into some of these models, so we have more flexibility to be able to do that. And if I'm not mistaken, if we, if we make that offer, um, we do have more, obviously more latitude to be able to prevent people from camping in public places. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So you've all said quite a lot, which I think, um, makes it quite clear that this is a very complex and complicated and very difficult to solve issue. I can assure you that everyone is working very, very hard to try and address all of the issues that you are raising, um, but there are a number of things. First of all, regarding the Watt and Elder Creek, um, encampment, unfortunately, that, we had a meeting that had to be rescheduled, but we do have a meeting with many, many, everyone who's involved will be at that meeting a week from today, uh, excuse me, a week from yesterday on the 31st at 9:00 AM. So we will have a meeting where, uh, transportation and homeless and, you know, everyone who needs to be there will be there so that we can talk about strategies for that particular encampment. We can set aside shelter beds, but they're all full, as you know, and we haven't yet started any of the Safe Stay communities, so we don't have the desirable places for people to go yet. So when we clear a camp because of safety issues, fire issues, it does not surprise me that after a number of days, uh, they come back unless we do something specific to ensure that they can't. Um, and we are having those conversations about all of the camps, uh, that you raise. So we're working really hard to get these Safe Stay sites up, um, but I have to be clear, there are thousands of people in encampments out there, and we are, you know, working on hundreds of spaces, and we will continue to work on hundreds of spaces. There's a lot of people out there.
May I respond?
Sure.
And I don't disagree with that, um, Anne, but not every encampment is the same. I think what you're hearing is that there are certain particular encampments where there's a high risk, high probability, uh, personal safety is being compromised, and it's the personal safety of the people that are camping. And I'll give you a, a, a very specific example of the, the reason why at least the first district's not feeling like we're being heard by DOT is, you know, we've been putting out all kinds of, uh, suggestions, put some K-Rail, put some, you know, boulders, do something that's in your wheelhouse to assist, you know, Siobhan's team. Um, I understand, I get it. These folks in DOT, they're, they're engineers, they're planners, they didn't sign up to be social workers. I understand that. Um, and they looked at this very much through an engineering lens, and, um, I, I understand that that's what they do, but, um, I guess what I'm saying is, we keep on putting out alternatives for them to act on, um, and we're not getting even great responses as to why they don't want to or don't think it's a good idea or, and with no alternatives. And so, and to Dawn's point about fire, you know, that's just one kind of risk, but as the roads get wet during winter, as they do, I could very easily see it, that, uh, stretch of roadway, you know, a tragedy, uh, in the works where someone skids off the road and there's no barrier between, uh, travel lanes and people habitating where they shouldn't be. Um, and, you know, maybe, you know, I'll say it out loud, maybe it takes a tragedy. maybe it takes a tragedy. I hope it doesn't, but not every encampment is the same. And the Elder Creek Watt one, I think, is very distinctive, much like Alta Arden, because of that proximity of where people are living, close to a very high velocity travel lane. So again, hopeful that DOT would kind of rethink their engagement with all five of us when it comes to those types of particular situations.
You know, I would just note that the one along the Folsom Corridor and the Mayhew north-south is right proximate to light rail and to heavy rail, which are both in use and used, you know, throughout the course of most of any given day, and proximity to tracks, and how they have to get to, or how they do get to, either stores or out to the street or whatever. I mean, they, you know, clearly, they cross the tracks. And so, anyway, I know, again, people are working on this, but again, the five of us are the ones that, you know, field it front and center, and, you know, and certainly are responsible for making decisions that we make here each and every day that we're in session. And I just, I think it's important for us to convey some of the, you know, certainly the appreciation, but also the frustrations, because that's what's coming, we're channeling some of that from our constituencies, and, you know, and not without, obviously, knowledge of what you just said, Anne, of the complexity, and certainly some of the, you know, impediments. But there are also routes that, you know, can be taken, and I think we need to use the tools that are available to us in a way that's humane and compassionate, but also practical about, you know, because again, I don't know how much money we spent with the cleanup along South Watt, but I can't imagine that was cheap to do that, just in the cost, let alone, obviously displacement. Folks were displaced sometimes for only hours before they returned. And I think to what, you know, others have said, so I don't want to belabor it, but I think it, you know, it requires some focus and attention, and I'm glad you're gonna meet on the one particular location, but there are ones I think that, you know, to Phil's bottom-line point, not everyone is the same, and some of these are gonna...
Yes, and I understand completely, and we have, we're working on some things on Citrus Road right now, and we'll certainly look at the...
Calvine area, yeah, East Stockton, yeah. Otherwise, once that gets grown in there, it's tough, because then those folks are, you know, off of the roadway in areas that are difficult to access, and certainly during inclement weather, are very difficult to access. Okay, any other? I, that's, that is it. Then we won't return in session till, I just announced the board retreat. Maybe we could just give the specifics around access next time we come, will be November 3rd.
November 3rd at the Sacramento County Office of Education out at Mather.
Okay, we'll convene there. Public is welcome to join us.
Yes.
And then we will have a tour of the community campus after the retreat, so invite folks. And then our next meeting here is November 8th, correct? Okay, all right. With that, yeah, sure, go ahead, yeah.
The meeting, November 1st, County Council, it's the three of us, we'll be publicly noticed. So certainly, District 5 or District 2 are welcome to attend as well. I mean, I just wanted to make that very clear.
That's right.
In case, in case you're so inclined.
In case you have nothing to do.
In case you're so inclined.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good. We know we're always welcome. Thank you, very good. Okay. With that, nothing further coming for this board, thank you for the invitation, Mr. Desmond, and we will stand in adjournment.